We're gonna get rolling.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, December 6th, 2022, and we are here at the penultimate gathering of the Athens Clark County Commission and myself, Mayor Kelly Gertz, for calendar year 2022. We're gathered for three purposes tonight. We have a work session on three items. We have a special call session on one item, and then we have our regular business session following that. We're essentially compacting what would have been three meetings into two here in December. So we have a meeting a week from now on the 13th where we will have some consideration for a vote as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Manager Williams so he can introduce the first item regarding our ARPA affordable housing recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. And we've got staff here from Housing Community Development that's helped to manage that process, to deliver recommendations for ARPA funding as recommended by, through a process as recommended by your advisory group that you appointed. Andrew Saunders and his staff are here to present to you some recommendations that you'll be asked to vote on next Tuesday night, December 13.
Thank you. So Andrew Saunders, interim Director of Housing and Community Development. We're joined tonight by the ARPA team. Not all of them reside within Housing Community Development. We have Coral Rogers, Paige Seago, Cameron McLaughlin, and Alejandra Calva. So also supported by the Office of Inclusion and Geospatial Information Office. We're gonna talk to you tonight, hopefully quickly, about the recommendations for funding for the Affordable Housing Phase One as supported by ARPA. We're gonna go over the process and timeline that was used, how we came into these funds, and what's been done with them since. We'll review at a very high level the proposals and the funding recommendations, and then we'll talk about next steps. When we get into timeline, it's important to remember, of course, that this is all a outcome of the pandemic. So approximately one year to the day after COVID-19 was declared a global pandemic, the US Congress approved the American Rescue Plan Act. That included substantial local funding that went to governments of all kinds. Excuse me. Nearly a year after it was announced that those funds came, this body approved a pro forma that identified how a significant portion of those funds would be used to support a variety of initiatives, including affordable housing, behavioral health, workforce development, and youth development. At the time that that was done, there was a process that was outlined where there would be advisory committees, a strategic planning initiative begun, and then ultimately deployment of funding. When the advisory committee came together for this, they brought to you all's attention that construction for affordable housing can be both urgent and require a significant amount of time. And ultimately, they recommended that up to $5.7 million would be used to support affordable housing as a Phase One or these long lead time projects. Since then, this body has authorized a number of payments or allocations, including $1.7 million to the North Downtown Athens Project, $160,000 for the Strategic Planning Initiative, and then, most recently, another $4 million for the North Downtown Athens Project. When the Phase One concept came to you, there were a number of goals that were outlined, and you can see them listed here. Most notably, really, we're looking for projects that were ready to go, not projects that required months or years of planning, things that could be built in a hurry to help to alleviate the challenge of affordable housing, that they be tied to prior studies. There's quite a few of them listed up there. Housing and Community Development in our community has identified a number of census tracts that are particularly important for reinvestment, and that includes 6 and 9 in the Hancock Corridor, and 301 and 302 in the East Athens area. So particular attention was paid to that.
So where is 6 and 9 at?
Well, at the time that it was allocated, 6 and 9 were, they're still in the Hancock Corridor. So they go all the way from West Hancock down to West Broad Street, and then, I believe, all the way to Baxter. And then approximately, they include portions of like Rock Springs west over to Al.
So it's the west side of town?
More or less, in-town west side, but not in the Timothy region.
Okay, so then, I'm wondering then about 301 and 302, is that the east side of town, kind of, sort of?
It is in-town east side, what would be, you know, commonly referred to as East Athens, Vine Street, East Broad Street, that region. So, and the reason those tracts were picked is there are what's called neighborhood revitalization strategy areas, our NERSAs. So they come up in our CDBG and our home recommendations from time to time. And so ultimately, we are looking for projects that had some leverage and that would serve target populations as articulated by the US Treasury guidance and further reinforced through this body. So in summary, when we look at funding of the $11 million that was originally allocated, there's been a number of large allocations, plus a purchase order opened for legal guidance that's gonna be needed to both create the contract and encumber future projects and ensure this funding remains stable. And so there's just under $5.1 million available, and that's what we'll be speaking to tonight. And so with this, I'm gonna pass it off.
Inclusion Off.
The Inclusion Office and GIO distributed a survey throughout Athens Clark County. The survey got a little under 200 responses. It was promoted at food distribution, Athens Pride, and on social media. This data was not used for the RFP or for proposal evaluations. The Vision Committee did reference this survey while grading these proposals. We wanted to get community input so we could kinda understand what the housing situation is in Athens. You'll see here, the survey asks questions like what the resident, what current housing situation the residents are going through, what ARPA funds should be used for housing, and what housing priority, like what type of housing is prioritized through Athens Clark County. You'll notice on this dashboard that majority of the results are even when we talk about housing types, housing assistance, and the proximity to grocery stores, transit, and parks.
So the Treasury has some requirements to be used for affordable housing. Mainly, the goal is to promote long-term housing security through eligible activities like development of affordable housing, down payment assistance, rehabilitation and repair, and permanent supportive housing. And they also have, you have to make sure that this affordable housing is meant for people who are impacted or disproportionately impacted. And that means that it's low income, which is 185% or less of the federal poverty guideline, or 40% or less of the area median income. And then, of course, we can also do moderate income, 300% or less of federal poverty guidelines, or 65% or less of AMI, unless those residents live in a QCT. Then you can go up to 80% AMI, which is where we got these limits. They're also regulated by capital expenditures, so it has to be reasonable. It has to be addressing a harm or need that has been identified. And if it's over a million dollars, we also have to have additional explanation of why this expenditure is appropriate and compare it against other possible avenues we could have taken. And again, they, these responses must be reasonably designed to address individuals or classes that are impacted. Two main notes about the Treasury requirements for ARPA funds is that affordable housing is not subject to the Davis Bacon Act or environmental reviews, and affordability must be imposed through a covenant, land use restriction, or other enforceable legal requirements for at least 20 years. So in our process in creating this RFP, releasing it, and reviewing all of our applications, we did release this on June 24th earlier this year. We did a session where we had preliminary proposals. Those were due July 29th. And then staff reviewed all of those and gave each applicant some feedback, and they were allowed to refine their proposals, and those were due September 23rd. Then we went into the review process with staff and the Vision Committee, and we had our Vision Committee Proposal Review Meeting on November 7th. Staff had our meeting on November 16th, and then we compiled in those results together. And again, just the overall process of ARPA funds is we engage our advisory committee, we release an RFP for a strategic plan, which again, as we've already explained, this is a, we're kind of dual, doing a strategic plan and releasing these. So we're kind of at the review and MNC approval phase, and also while we're developing that strategic plan. Here's our Vision Committee and Staff Review Teams. Of course, the Vision Committee is a set committee of usually 10 people, but we actually only have nine now, someone moved out of town. And then, again, the ARPA four, we're able to review these along with some members of HCD. So we received a total of 11 preliminary proposals totaling $20.1 million. And then our final proposals, we received nine totaling $14.3 million.
The location of the final proposals received are indicated here on this map. To Commissioner Thornton's question regarding the NERSA location, you can see it pretty clearly outlined here on the map. And there is an interactive link here at the bottom, which should be in your packet, which you can visit if you wanna get a little closer.
Commissioner Murray's just brought it to my attention. Thank you.
So you can see, they did get a small boost if their application was within the NERSA areas. We had quite a few clustered there, as well as several sorta in the adjacent area. All of them were fairly close into town. And then at the bottom, you can see the full county map, just for reference. At this point, we'll move into a quick top-level review of each of the nine final applications received. The first one we're covering is 1165 Oglethorpe Avenue, which was a new construction application for a mix of two single-family and two multifamily units, and the total request here was $560,000. Next up, we have Acceptance Recovery Center. This organization submitted two proposals. The first one here is for Prince Avenue. It was a $251,000 request for two units with 10 bedrooms, and this would be rental housing for participants in their programs. I'm sorry?
Was that new construction?
That is, no, that would be a weatherization and rehabilitation project. And then, the second Acceptance Recovery Center proposal was for a rehabilitation project at their West Chester location. It was a request of $2 million, and it would be covering 18 units with 36 bedrooms.
All right, moving on, we have Athens Habitat for Humanity. This is a new construction, single-family owner-occupied housing. They requested a little bit under $3.3 million. Next up, we have Athens Community Counseling on Aging. This is a weatherization repair for single-family owner-occupied housing. They requested a little under $475,000. Next, we have one of Athens Land Trust's proposals for a weatherization and repair for single-family owner-occupied housing. They asked for a little bit under $1.8 million.
Athens Land Trust also submitted another application for new construction. This was for 15 homes in three different neighborhoods, and that was about $4.5 million request. East Athens Development Corporation, this was for a rental homes, new construction of two rental homes, and they requested $899,000. And Hopeful Inspiration submitted a project for a weatherization repair for owner-occupied homes in Spring Valley, Nottingham, and Forest Heights neighborhoods. And that included, they would do about 50 owner-occupied homes with those funds for $609,000.
So then, as my team spoke about, we had the Vision Committee and staff reviewing every single proposal of the nine. You can see on the second column from the left there what the Vision Committee scored each application out of 40 points with their ranking in parentheses. The next column is our staff score, again with the ranking. And all the way on the right, you can see the combined ranking, and that, again, combines Vision Committee plus staff score. And you can see there that the top four were Council on Aging, Habitat for Humanity, and the two Athens Land Trust projects. And now I'm gonna go into it a little bit more in detail. Specifically, this is how we're proposing to break out the $5,080,000. 1.5 million for Habitat for Humanity for their new construction project on Micah's Creek. 2.75 to the Athens Land Trust for their new construction, and $415,000 each for the Athens Land Trust for their repair weatherization projects, and another $415,000 to the Community Council on Aging for their repair projects. Specifically, for the Athens Area Habitat for Humanity project, again, this is a new construction project over on Micah's Creek. They originally requested $3.3 million to build 23 units, but we do have some concerns about the quote-unquote shovel readiness of the project. And so just in order for us to meet ARPA dictated deadlines, we're suggesting to award them 1.5 million. This would pretty much equate to them being able to construct 10 new single-family owner-occupied homes. Our second funding recommendation is to Athens Land Trust for their new construction projects. They originally requested 4.5 million to build 15 homes in three neighborhoods. Again, we have, we do have some concerns about the shovel readiness of their proposed Ruth Street project. And so we're suggesting that they focus on 10 new single-family owner-occupied homes for 2.75 million. We are also recommending that ALT receives $415,000 award to expand their Young Urban Builders Program to help repair some of those single-family owner-occupied homes, mostly in the, in those NERSAs. And we'll talk a little bit more about those recommendations there on the bottom about how we can help them develop that budget tier structure. Going into a home repair can cost $5,000 or $50,000 depending on when you go in, but we'll talk about that in a minute. That's a similar recommendation would make for Community Council on Aging. We're also recommending $415,000 for their repair and weatherization program. Theirs would be a little bit more focused on the older Athenians' homes.
So I guess my thought is the Community Council on Aging and the Land Trust are doing similar work. The difference is, the Community Council on Aging is targeting older residents. But yet and still, we have other groups that are not getting any money. We have two groups that probably could work together and save some money and put money in other pots. You know, I don't, I know what we're doing is, is needed, but if we keep trying to, everybody doing the same work and nobody collaborating, we're gonna spend extra money that we don't have to. And then you have other programs that are doing something very significantly different and just as important. I won't be here next week, but I don't even think I could support this because we're going down, to me, we're going down the same rabbit hole. The other concern that I have, if, 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 if I'm allowed to speak to it, on your surveys and your questionnaires, 196, affordable housing is a huge problem. 194 people responding does not even scratch the surface of the kind of response we should be getting. So I don't know, and I, and I don't know, when did you start those surveys?
It ended October 21st. I believe it started...
And, 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 and Manager Williams and I have talked about this, and so I'm not trying to put nobody on the spot on something different than I have already said. If we do not get out to the folk that we, that really need to be heard, I think you have one event on there. I know since August, I've been to four or five events. If we do not get out and get the right information, we're not gonna be able to do good work. And I think that this is already rolling, but I do believe there are other projects on here that either should be encouraged to work together and do something together, and those things that are unique, let those stand apart. But I don't see those kind of collaborations. I do not see that kind of input going in into our work. And Manager Blaine, I've said this before, so, but if we're not collaborating, asking people to collaborate, we're spending money that we don't necessarily have to spend, or we're not using it in the best way possible. So that, that is my point. I just have a problem with the Land Trust doing weatherization, this person doing weatherization, that, let's work together and use our money more effectively.
Sure, and I can say that as part of our RFP, we did encourage collaboration among entities. We saw some, some proposed recommendations, but to your point, this were very much just a one organization applying.
But that's our job. That's our job. When we, if we don't see it, let's make sure we push it. That's our job as staff and the government.
Just as we kind of move forward with, with our broader kind of pursuit of goals, and I think this is the kind of thing that falls much in the bucket of capacity building, right? It's one of those things where, you know, it takes two to tango. I mean, obviously, we can encourage collaboration to the greatest degree possible, but at some point, you know, entities are gonna have to engage with each other.
Or they don't get funded.
And, and, and I think we could probably build toward a model for that. I mean, I appreciate very much what you're saying. I think every community would like to see maximum levels of collaboration. I think there's no doubt.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm looking at the scoring summary table and noticing that East Athens Development Corporation's project was one of the highest-ranked projects by staff. It was number two. Yet, it was one of the lowest-ranked by the Citizen Committee, and it fell off the list and didn't get recommended, you know, I guess because of that disparity. Can you talk a little bit about that disparity?
Sure. So one of the biggest concerns that the Vision Committee had was that their proposal was only for two units compared to the other new construction projects that were proposing for funding that do hit at least 10. So that was their biggest concern. The cost per unit was also higher than the other proposals for new construction. I believe that was kind of their biggest feedback.
So does their cost per unit include the land cost, or is the land donated?
They already own the land.
What I would offer is, you know, we brought you very high-level summaries. Each one of these has their own flavor. With East Athens Development Corporation, they had some unique commitments that I think are reflected in staff scoring. One of those was a commitment to local procurement, and specifically, women and minority-owned business participation. They also, I believe, were one of the top proposals to include solar energy in their budget. And so the reality is, is that on a, oh, and I'm sorry, there's also some programmatic elements that can help to perhaps build wealth for the individuals that would be in those units. So, you know, the data wonk in me would love to break these down to like a dollar per square foot, but that's not very fair because each one of them is its own flavor.
Okay, so staff ranked it very high because of those additional programmatic elements, including the wealth-building piece of it. From what, from what I understand, they had like a savings program that might help.
So the, the, and the other important thing to remember is we did it a little bit differently here. So this body designated, at the recommendation of the advisory group, the Vision Committee to be that form of public input. This body also directed an accelerated timeline that was three months more aggressive than staff recommended. So when we see these flaws, we as staff agree, proper process takes time. But we've worked with the, the rules that were laid out, and we've executed on them. So the Vision Committee scored two different categories, and this is very unique because if you're used to their role in CDBG, they don't score. They make recommendations on priority. So they got to assign between zero and 20 points on priority at their full discretion. So one project could get 20 points, the next project could get 20 points, another one could get eight. It was just up to the individual members. They also scored, there was a self-assessment questionnaire around equity and inclusion, and they scored that as well. And that was up to 20 points. And so we did have a meeting with the Vision Committee. It is available on YouTube if you wanna go back and kind of take that really deep dive. And they, we did receive some revised scores following that dialogue, but when we meet with them, we as staff... with them, we as staff have to be very careful that we're not trying to influence them. We're just trying to give them the information and clarifications from the application. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Am I the next slide?
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have told you not.
So, on those four funding recommendations, we have additional recommendations for you all to consider. The first is, is we did provide in that, that discussion about capacity building, we had a question, would you like, you know, could you be prefunded or work on a reimbursement basis? Now, all of our affordable housing programs that we manage through Housing, Housing Community Development work on a reimbursement basis, so Home, CDBG, other similar projects. We did have some applicants that are recommended for funding, including the Land Trust and Habitat, say that they would prefer to work from a pre-funding basis. As we've reviewed their financials and the implications of pre-funding and the challenges that creates for us, staff do not recommend that. We recommend that they work on a monthly reimbursement, and we feel like that the financials are there to support it. The other thing that we'd like to recommend is that there be deadlines for groundbreaking and zoning. So, as you heard, particular to Mycus Creek, there's some issues that need to be resolved. Those were accounted for in the scoring, and yet, it was still the top scoring proposal. But realistically, looking at the original concept, shovel-ready, new inventory, we recommend that those be resolved within 180 days, or that this would be brought back to you for considerations. For rehab projects, and really, all of our projects that have a budget lower than was asked for, our protocol would be to go back to those individuals, those entities, and ask, get a revised scope that is mutually agreed. So, we've talked to you tonight on the new construction about how the 1.5 million dollars for Habitat would fund approximately 10 homes, and that the larger amount for the Land Trust would fund approximately 10 homes. We have ideas on how that might work, but we are not the agency that, that is responsible for that. And so, that needs to be a collaborative discussion of, if the Mayor and Commission award X, what does your scope look like? And then we vet that and say, yes, that's consistent with the original proposal, the budget makes sense, we're fine. Or, hey, it looks like you've changed a little bit, maybe the budget's getting a little out of whack, what could we change to become more consistent with the original proposal? We did allow for administrative costs, and this is an addition to funded staff. So, almost every one of these projects has a project manager, or a program coordinator, or somebody who would be doing the day-to-day. In addition to those kinds of things, entities have asked for administration and overhead, office space, supplies, and so on, and as common for nonprofits, they ask for 10% of their proposal. As we've looked at it, and especially considering that most of these projects have additional funding sources that are not on behalf of Athens Clark County, we would recommend that that be restricted to no more than 5%. That way, we're really deploying those ARPA dollars into construction. And then, as required by the Treasury, these investments will be protected with deed restrictions. And so, new construction has a minimum of 20 years affordability. On rehab, we will have a scaled process, so, right, if somebody comes into my grandma's house and does $3,000 of rehab work that's needed, it doesn't really make sense to go through the effort to do a full deed restriction, or a loan, or anything of that nature. However, if somebody comes into my granny's house and does $20,000, we want to ensure that those investments result in immediate affordability, and that I don't try to sell it, or, you know, leverage that in a way. So, it's, it's really meant to protect both the beneficiary and the investment. So, looking at next steps, this is on the agenda for a special call meeting on next Tuesday. If you all choose to approve awards at that time, we'll be refining those scopes in January and looking at contracting extending through May. Work would then begin in the summer, and then, of course, that ever-present reminder that per Treasury guidelines, all funds must be expended and work completed by December 36, 2026. All of the applications we've seen should be able to meet that without a problem. And so, at this point, we'll field any challenge, or questions you want.
Challenges.
Just having, having looked at this, I'm going to get everybody's questions. You know, one thing I did note is that, you know, you had a couple of projects that sort of, as, as we talked about a couple moments ago, you know, were, at least from the staff perspective, scored at 80 or above, you know, pretty high level. You know, those collectively would encumber about another million dollars. A check just moments ago, and if you do approve in the later business meeting, the allocation recommended by Athens Justice in Memory, we would retain about 1.6 million dollars of ARPA contingency. And of course, a lot of ARPA funds have been, I think understandably, directed toward the North Downtown project, given the scale of that project and the, the degree to which we want to see it come to fruition. So, just want to keep that in the back of your mind, because I very much support, you know, an additional million dollars going into affordable housing if we were able to get those very high-scoring projects i- in the gate. So, we've got a week to have that conversation, but just want to make that evident to everybody here in the room.
Just in companion comment with the mayor, so with the action to award these funds as presented tonight, without any additional contingency, then the affordable housing bucket of ARPA will be exhausted, so there will be no more funds there. And we are on the eve of, well, actually, we've already kicked off the, uh, first strategic planning for the housing affordability investment strategy. And so, that's another thing to consider, too, that you might use some funds here, but you may leave some, too, in case you find something at the end of that process that you find attractive.
And, of course, the other funding bucket we have is the SPOST 2020 referendum, and that has still somewhere in the ballpark of $4 million unallocated. And of course, that's, that has to be a, a public component of a project. You know, we can't fund a new private construction, even for a nonprofit, with those SPOST funds, but just know that that, that's money out there, that I think the process that you guys have set up in conjunction with our consultant will help us with, with some information that will inform. So, anyhow, I know there were a couple of questions.
I'll let somebody else go.
Thanks. Challenge accepted. Uh, our first question, y'all mentioned, I think it was Alejandra, the permanent supportive housing element, maybe it was, sorry, I forget who said it, but you mentioned permanent supportive housing as one of the things that we're looking for. I'm just curious, which, if any, of these proposals had a permanent supportive housing element? Because that's one of the things that is much needed in this community, and especially hard to fund.
So, permanent supportive housing, from a homeless service perspective, I wouldn't say that that was actually articulated as a goal of the funding. However, the two proposals from ARC to rehab some of their space that's currently used in addiction prevention, I think definitely aligns with the idea of permanent supportive housing, especially their alumni housing. These are people that have, as I understand it, matriculated through addiction program, are now on a path to a, a life after addiction, or sort of coping with addiction, and this is a place where they can reside while they get their teeth set beneath them.
Okay. And those are the only, the only ones that do that?
Yes.
Okay. I think this is maybe worth thinking about on this body as we figure out what to do moving forward. I'm also curious, you talked about the importance of them being shovel-ready, and the two new construction proj, I mean, all of the recommendations come in at least a bit under what the requested amount was, but the two new construction ones, recommendation is substantially less, it seems. I know we've talked a lot about trying to, you know, instead of spreading thin and casting wide, trying to really focus on being very effective on, you know, which projects we fund. So, could you help us understand, you know, why those amounts were selected, and if we were to move forward with those recommended amounts, you know, do these projects actually get completed and completed well and fully?
Sure. Let's, uh, let's take each one of those new constructions separately. So, the 1.5 million dollars for Habitat is for a project they've been developing called Mycus Creek over in East Athens. It's a fairly unique parcel. It has a variety of different road frontage, and it's very close to the Firefly Trail, which is a great opportunity here. As I understand it, and was represented in their proposal, they have secured some additional funding sources, both through estate allocation to affordable housing, and also through congressional directed spending. So, they have a good bit of momentum, and they already own the land. Our biggest concern here, and this was actually identified in our pre-review, so if you remember, this was a two-step application process. We know from prior development attempts that it has been very challenging to resolve an issue with the railroad in which you would use to create a, a full public right-of-way. We, we asked for clarification on that in the final application. Unfortunately, we did not get clarification on that. That does not mean that the project is not ready to go. And certainly, there's some players involved that can likely engage with the railroad more successfully than other prior applicants. But we didn't want to put all of our eggs in that basket, because there's a substantial amount of site development that needs to be done. You're talking full utilities, grading, stormwater, so on. Also, if that can't be resolved, they may have to pivot to another concept that doesn't have the scale or the price points that were requested in this. And so, really, it was a risk-mitigating factor to not go whole hog. On both of the new constructions, I would also like to point out that they have a, a proposed sales price. I believe it ranges between 100,000 and 140,000, which is excellent. So, there will be revenues generated to these entities that if they choose to, they can use to continue to make investments in these affordability. And that was also identified to them in their application, preliminary application of, hey, it'd be great if you made some clarifications on what happens, and unfortunately, neither entity did so. So, that kind of closes out Habitat. For the Land Trust, it really was a balance of, of the budget, right? So, they proposed 15 owner-occupied projects in three different locations around town. Once you made some allocation for Habitat, there just wasn't budget to support that. And so, what we really looked at is, well, what if you did two projects in town? And what we discovered is, you could do approximately 10 homes if you picked two of the three projects, even if you pivoted, as long as you had one of the three in there. And so, that made a nice round number that, that would likely work for that project. And we didn't want to come forward to you without a project that included some repair and weatherization. So, the main way that we fund repair and weatherization in our community is through CDBG, and there are a lot of strings attached. ARPA provides us a, a more direct process. So, for example, you don't have to do the full environmental assessments. There's a easier process, you don't have to, you don't, you're not obligated to get into discussion about loans for larger investments. So, really, by using some ARPA funds in this space, it allows for a more efficient approach to the work, and larger-scale work than what CDBG currently allows on the more easy path forward. Also, there was a discussion about, you know, do you do one weatherization, do you do two? Ultimately, it was the recommendation of the committee that they are different. So, one is low-income homeowner specifically within qualified census tracts, QCTs, which are similar to our nurseas. It's an expansion of existing program. The second is county-wide, but for income-qualified elderly citizens. And so, that means that if somebody is on the far west side, and they happen to be, you know, outside the loop, but in some older housing stock, and there's a leaking roof, here's an opportunity to address that without being bound by those locations. So, we felt like it was diverse enough to justify funding for each of them. That was really long, and I apologize.
It was really helpful, though, so thanks.
Other questions? All right, some, some food for thought. We will see everybody regarding this matter in voting context a week from tonight. All right, we are lining up next, I believe, the Prince Avenue Corridor Improvements. We have Diana Jackson from Jacobs in our SPOST office.
I've got John Walker and Jared Draper here to help us present the sub-project number one results for the Project 16 for Prince Avenue Corridor Improvements. We have a lot to discuss tonight, so I'm not going to read you the slides. We've got, again, we had six residents on the user group and four staff. We've got the user's charge and our initial project statement, and the corridor summary, again, 1.75 miles from Sunset to Pulaski. Sunset to North Millage intersection is state, um, state-owned, I guess, and then the rest of it from, from North Millage into Pulaski is local-owned. We've got six, five or six pages of history, okay? And then, it's all in your package, so we're, we've been through them all. All right? So, again, we had a 60-day road diet pilot project. It was, again, from the North Millage Avenue to Shaya, that to Pulaski Street, about a half-mile long. We, that incorporated us removing the lane markings, installing new, uh, new markings, the temporary buffers, otherwise known as dragon's teeth, right? And the turn wedges, flexible ballards. We did pre-imposed traffic studies, and we did public engagement. And so, that, in a nutshell, I'm going to turn it over to Jared to discuss the public engagement.
Thanks, Diana. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. All right, so, here to present engagement, we really want to start with our approach, and this is really to talk with not only the user group, to develop a plan on how we should be transparent and kind of engage the community, but also the Public Information Office as well as staff. We wanted to make sure there's a lot of mediums that we could kind of deploy the message about what was going on, provide visuals and explanations through an online story map. We use kind of on-demand materials with QR codes, and we hosted a few in-person events, as well as had three rounds of in-person and virtual focus groups to, to gain information from residents and business owners. Here's the timeline. You can see our story map actually went live on September 2nd with the online survey September 30th, and then it closed on November 23rd with a, a number of different focus groups tabling at Porch Fest, as well as tabling at the Chase Street Elementary School mixed in there. You can see the other mediums of QR codes, and flyers, and yard signs, as well as the Athens Clark County webpage and email lists. Here's some of the views that we had. As I mentioned, our online survey didn't start until September 30th, but because there was some good information that was given out early on, once the, the website, the story map were live, we got kind of a, a push for a number of views. It ended up being around 42 views per day with over 3,400 total during that kind of engagement period. Here's the actual survey participation from the 30th. We had 1,605 responses, and I will just say thank you to the communications team that, and others that kind of got the message out at the very end of the survey. You can see that spike with the number of responses there at the very end. Focus group participation, as I mentioned, we had three of those with both residents, as well as businesses and other entities along the corridor. 16 total people participated in those, and it was really good to get kind of firsthand comments and conversation for the, the pilot project. Public survey, mentioned that 1,605 responses, we had an 80% completion rate, so you didn't have to finish the entire thing, but we had 80% of folks that did. Six required questions, some optional, as well as some map-based questions where people were able to kind of pinpoint some of their, their thoughts. I did want to make sure that we mentioned that this was really focused on people's perception of safety, and not whether someone liked or disliked the pilot. We really wanted to emphasize the idea of safety and how people felt around, about safety along Prince Avenue. Some of the bigger themes Some of the bigger themes, we'll dive into a little bit more detail in a minute. I won't read every single one of these, but the idea of traffic being calmer and more predictable. There were a wide difference of opinions, and you'll see those as some of the survey responses, are kind of positive and negative. There was feelings of more safety and less safety depending on the user groups. There was a lot of feelings around the types of delineators that were used. There was some good response around pedestrians feeling more visible and enjoying the fact that some of their crossings were a lot shorter. And then there were some mixed feelings about turns, as well as visibility regarding on-street parking. I'll go through some of the specific questions and responses. With the 1,600 respondents, we asked them about how people experienced the actual corridor. I will note that someone was able to mark all of them. So if you walked and biked and used another-wheel device and drove or rode in the car, you can mark all of those different pieces as a respondent. You can see here how people felt like it impacted the neighborhood. Those that felt like they were aligned with residents or businesses along Prince Avenue, which accounted for 24% of the total, had some mixed feelings of, you know, some of them felt like it was worse, some of them felt like it was much better, some were just kind of in that middle ground. We also asked about people that had been involved in a collision or a near collision along the corridor. I thought that was really fascinating that 32% said that they had been in some type of collision prior, kind of, in their lifetime along Prince Avenue, in a variety of different ways. And so, that obviously influences how people feel. This is showing people how they felt safety was before and after the pilot, and I'll break this down because again, if you, you were able to mark, even if you only drove the corridor or only walked the corridor, you were able to mark in each one of these your perception of safety. And so, for those, all respondents, people felt like walking. We saw that all respondents before felt like it was safe, and then all respondents later felt like it was a little less safe. But if you just focus on those that experienced the pilot while they were walking, those numbers are flipped. You can see for biking, before and after, how that changed. You can see that only 25% of our respondents actually experienced it by biking, but those that did felt like it was much safer. And then, for driving, it was about the same for kind of all respondents because they made up the majority versus those that experienced by driving. We also just took a look at those numbers since they felt very equal. And then the perception in the first couple of weeks versus the last few weeks of driving, there was actually a little bit of an increase in people feeling it was more safe to drive as maybe, maybe that is something to say that they were getting used to the pilot. Here's a question about asking if you feel safer if there were other streets like this. And so, kind of the before and after, you can see that early on, it was kind of yes and no were parallel or kind of very close, and then after, it was more yeses than there were nos, and then a few more with an unsure kind of feeling. And then, this was a very interesting question. We asked kind of the general, if the pilot made you want to walk or bike more along Prince Avenue, and this was close to a 50/50 split with, remember, kind of, everyone experiencing that corridor in a variety of different ways. So I thought this was also good feedback. So, I mentioned that the survey allowed for map-based questions. We wanted to show you kind of what the inputs looked like. That top map kind of creates a heat map, was more density around the points that were given of where the pilot project has made Prince Avenue safer. And then on the bottom, were places that people felt like there could be change to make the pilot project more successful. Both of these, we had some outlier type of comments that were kind of included in the density of comments, but in general, there was a lot of good feedback both ways. I'll walk through some of the specifics kind of themes as we move down the corridor from west to east. I won't read all of these, but both, again, just like the rest of the survey, positive and negative around desire for left-turn signal at Millage, also the desire for the pilot to continue past Millage, concern about some conflicts at the Dunkin' Donuts entrance, and then the idea that lane reduction or narrow lanes may make drivers more aware of those bicyclists and pedestrians. As we move to the east, near the Cobb and Pope, having a 90-degree turn or the shorting crossing, shortened crossing was valuable for pedestrians. There are, because of the single lanes, some more backups along Prince. Turning on and off of Prince could feel more safe, but at the same time, there's concern about some sight distances. And some of the actual markings, because they were very large areas, could add visually, can make things complicated. Pope to Childs, again, there was some more concern about things being backed up, making turns a little bit more difficult for vehicles, crosswalks feeling safer, support for the permanent closure of the additional entrance at the gas station, mixed feelings about some of the visibility of the turns, and then the desire for more signage to warn folks about bikes. And then lastly, for the section from Childs to Pulaski, definitely the curb extension making that shortened crossing feel safer. However, narrow lanes could make the turn onto Prince from Pulaski very difficult, as well as turning into 100 Prince. There's some confusing merging at Pulaski for those that are going east. Again, there's the concern about backups, the support overwhelmingly for the new mid-block location being relocated, and then desire for more visibility at that mid-block. Lastly, I'll finish up before talking about the traffic operations and the data side of this. Just some of the focus group themes. Again, we met with these folks three different times. Thought it was really important to recognize that there were some great things, and they gave us some really good feedback early on and late into the project. I'll read a few of these that I thought were really important. Support for the pilot and possible permanent version increased over time, not from day one, but by the end of the pilot project in the third focus group. Business members, some that were kind of concerned before installation were supportive in our third focus group meeting. There was a comment that this is really the first of its kind in Athens, and so there was recognition of that. With the pilot, the street feels more people-oriented, it feels like an extension of downtown. Engagement felt appropriate, but they did want to make sure that we're representing both the positive and negative when it comes to transparency. And then lastly, that safety did not feel like, they did not feel like safety should be a partisan issue. So, with that, I'll turn it over to talk about some of the traffic study results.
Thank you, Jared. Again, I'm John Walker. Relative to the traffic study, it was very important for us to understand traffic conditions pre-road diet, post-road diet. So what were the traffic conditions before this road diet? What were they after? And the two really critical things that we wanted to look at was traffic volumes as well as speed, traffic speed, operating speed of vehicles. So, volume and speed. And we didn't want to just understand the location where the road diet is actually in place. And you can see here, the dots mean the three traffic signals, Millage, Barber, and Pulaski. But we also wanted to know, there were 17 other locations in the vicinity of where the road diet is. Because one of the things we thought about was, if we do this road diet, because you're going from four down to three, will traffic divert off of Prince Avenue and divert onto the adjacent roadways? Okay, so that was one of the questions that we really needed to understand, and so we did receive that data. And so, relative to volume, the two that are highlighting red are actually along Prince Avenue. And what you'll see here is traffic volumes did not go down. Traffic did not divert off Prince Avenue. In fact, if you look closely at these two locations, actually, traffic increased ever so slightly at two locations along Prince. One up near, well, down at the bottom is near Millage, and up towards the top is near Pulaski. And if you look at the other 15 locations, not much change really, not much change relative to volume. So that suggests traffic did not divert off of Prince and spill out into the adjacent roadways. Now, relative to speed, the actual operating speed of traffic traveling along Prince Avenue actually slightly decreased. And if you look right here, the average speed dropped from 31 miles per hour down to 30. So it's a one mile per hour reduction in average speed. We think, okay, we went from four down to three, okay, maybe we'll travel a little slower. And at the very bottom, it was a three mile per hour reduction in the average operating speed of vehicles traveling along the corridor, okay? Now, in addition to volume and speed, by the way, this is the summary, this just gives you a graphic, a visual, the location over near Millage and the location over near Pulaski. It shows you that the volume did in fact slightly tick up. The average operating speed actually went down slightly in both locations. Again, traffic did not divert off of Prince. Traffic volumes are a little bit slower. Okay. In addition to volume and speed, we wanted to understand travel time. How long did it take to actually travel through the corridor? Traveling eastbound through the entire corridor, westbound through the entire corridor? And this is in seconds, and just during the morning rush hour, the AM peak, that's around eight to nine, traffic is not that heavy. It actually is a little bit quicker. It's actually 2.5 seconds and 7.0 seconds faster with the road diet to get through the corridor, okay, today. But during the midday peak, when traffic goes up, during the PM peak, when traffic volumes go up, it actually does take a little bit longer, a little bit longer to travel through the corridor. So this is actually people in their car, traveling back and forth through the corridor during the morning, midday, PM peak rush hour, okay? So that's actually operating speed. How long, travel time, sorry, that's actually travel time. And the last thing we looked at was level of service. In traffic engineering, we look at level of service, and it's based on delay at signalized intersections.
Sorry. Is that previous slide?
Yes, sir.
That's in seconds?
Seconds, yes.
So it took seven more seconds?
Correct. During the midday peak, eastbound, it took seven seconds longer to travel eastbound during the lunch hour.
Okay, thank you.
And it takes 24 seconds longer to travel westbound through the corridor during the lunch hour.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I can pause, I just, so essentially, quicker during the morning, but it does take longer during the midday, it does take longer during the PM peak. Average delay per vehicle, this is signalized intersections, we grade it A, B, C, D like in school. This is very good level of service. Level of service is slightly worse from the pre to post, but ever so slightly. Eight out of nine are the same. There's only one level of service that goes from a C to a D. D is still very good. And so, basically, the summary is, yes, with the road diet, it does take a little bit longer to travel through the corridor. Yes, you're going to travel at a slightly slower speed. Yes, there's a little bit, slightly more delay at the signalized intersections, but traffic did not divert off of Prince Avenue and did not divert into the adjacent neighborhoods, into adjacent streets. Volume actually on Prince, actually slightly higher, don't know why, but it certainly didn't decrease, and traffic certainly did not divert off of Prince and spill out into the adjacent neighborhoods.
And when you say level of service, that's just speaking to level of service for motorists, right? So when you said there's that slight decrease in the level of service score...
Decrease in level of service means a slight increase in delay.
But just for motorists, so that's not factoring in the level of service for other users?
Not, this is vehicular, yes, sir, vehicular delay, not, you know, any other mode, right? Yes, sir.
All right, so, we're at the final few slides. So, the pilot project is made permanent. These are four things we would ask. Do tweak it, okay? Move the RRFBs. Transit says that they'll do away with the Prince and Pulaski stop because they feel like they don't need it. They will use the Taqueria del Sol stop or the Denny Tower stop. They are fine with removing that transit stop. We would put some RPMs, raise pavement markers along the route, along the edge, just to delineate the edge of the roadway travel width, and we would check, we would fix that bicycle box at Prince and Pulaski, pull it back a little bit. So we would also look to do some enhancements to the Ziegler zipper system as an interim buffer. Take that buffer and add the B module to it, which is the leading and lag edge, which would make it a lot smoother if a car should strike it. And we would, we would want to make those things because, I'll go into this next one, it'll help explain. The staff, in our review of how the Ziegler zippers did, they did very well for the pilot project, but for long-term, they want to look at a material that will require less maintenance, okay? So we're kind of contemplating right now maybe a concrete curb type of thing that's tapered on both edges, so if a car should strike it, or if a bicycle pedal should strike it, neither user should be as affected by it. We also recently learned that GDOT has removed the milling and paving from their corridor safety improvement project. There's lots of reasons why, and Ronnie and Stephen are here that could help answer it, but because of that, we want to, and because that would be part of the long-term safety for the whole corridor to mill and pave there, we want to try and start looking at developing a sub-project number two, which would again, for long-term safety improvements, look at the buffer material solution, milling and paving. There's a few places where we need to do some stormwater improvements, over by the Bottle Works and stuff at Barber Street, there's a big washout there by the Transit Center, the station there, and so we would want to look at that. There's some ADA and crosswalk improvements, especially if we're going to shorten at Hill and Cobb there. We want to make sure that the truncated domes are in the right places for the ADA use of those. And we would want to, we're going to hopefully work on that and do some engineering on that as a long-term solution. So again, the BAB that we would look at for, let me go back here, to the Ziegler zipper because it's going to take probably six to nine months or so to do that engineering. We would want to have something a little bit better in place. Again, we can reuse those modules in a different place later. So, if the pilot project is to be reversed, these are the added items. Again, we want to keep that new mid-block crossing, and so we would move those RRFBs to the new space. We would remove the new striping and re-stripe back, we'd remove the buffers and repair the asphalt, and then the cost to do that's about $220. We have a total of $3.8 million, $3.9 in our budget, and if we do, if you choose to make it a permanent, then we'll still have about $2.2 million left to do other things on Prince, let alone what's in the Squash 2020 budget. And here's our timeline. If we can work our way down to the bottom, the last three, we're at our work session right now. You guys will vote on it next week, and if we need to, if we're going to make it permanent, we'll get those installed by late summer. If we're going to reverse it, be early summer. And with that, did our best to go quick, so if there's any questions or comments?
All right, get comments. Commissioner Thorpe?
Thank you for the detail of the survey. I could follow that, it was, it was very detailed, thank you. My question is, and I know you've mentioned certain streets, Pope and Childs, Millage and this, has there been any impact now that we have more traffic now with the school district coming out of, onto Prince? You know, I've heard some horror stories there, but I know that probably wasn't identified in your survey where people are, but has there been any...
You mean at the new school district office?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, and I know that we, we worked with the school district and we worked with the university for their buses and stuff, met with them and talked with them.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
I wonder if that was the kind of cause of that slight uptick in traffic that was indicated in the chart? Maybe that there were some employees and users of that, that space, it had been kind of dormant for a while when people moved down the street?
And then also, she, I think someone mentioned about, like, by the time you did the second or the third focus group, maybe people got used to it or, you know, got more familiar. So maybe those were the up-and-down ticks too.
Right, and that's some of the stuff that we'd heard from both the residents and the business owners.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Jesse?
A couple of questions. First, is there going to be anything to provide better warning to inbound motorists to alert them of that merger that happens after Millage?
We would have to work with, you're talking about the, going eastbound, right? And so we'd have to work with GDOT on that, because anything we put up on that side of the intersection, we have to get their approval. And I think that's something that staff would, would continue to seek out with GDOT. We've got a good relationship with them, it's just they're, they're a little glacial in their answering to things.
But this budget doesn't currently include anything for that, so would we have to go back and vote in a future meeting to budget for that, or?
They have allocated some funds for that outer mag.
Right, I think we could probably work within that. I've had a $25,000 contingency, and it was just signage. That certainly could be within that contingency, yeah.
And then, my other question, you know, the Ziegler zipper adjustment, they look a little more like ramps. You know, our sidewalks are, you know, rigid 90-degree angles, right, to protect the user of the sidewalk, and I'm just wondering if you can elaborate a bit on like, the permanent design, how much is it going to provide a similarly protective barrier versus... is it going to provide a similarly protective barrier versus the kind of ramp-looking things that we see? Like the medians right now in the middle of Prince look like something to launch off of rather than avoid.
So I did not include a, because we haven't kind of finalized that, but it's going to, it'll be a tapered, so it won't, it'll be straight up and down, but it'll have a taper to it at the top. So if a tire does hit it, it may not be as disruptive to the tire, but it'll be very protective as a long-term buffer. Otherwise, I mean, we wouldn't, I mean, it'd be a curb.
What I observed in that visual is that the interior of that D unit is the same as the existing Ziegler zipper. That is, it's a, it's an edge that extends directly up from the roadbed, but the vehicular side of it kind of has that soft grip.
That's right. Oh, you're asking about not the concrete curb, but the zipper?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I like that the Ziegler zippers are highly disruptive if you run them over because we don't want people to run them over because if they run those over, then they might run a person over. And so I guess my hope is that we would have a rigid barrier, you know? I'm reluctant to be excited about anything that provides too much of an angle. I'll just throw that out there for the universe to consider.
This is, this picture does not really tell you the whole story, but it's curved on the majority of the side, but so the leading edge is still going to have a little bit of a curve, but it's all be flat-faced. So if the tire does hit the leading edge of it, it will be a little bit of ramp up, but it's all going to be flat-faced against the traffic, if that's what you mean. I can get you something else between now and next week, too.
Okay, so it's basically just at the corner when they're rounding, like you'd see at an ADA round, but then along the roadway, it's that sharp edge.
Yes. And I can get you something between now and, yeah, tomorrow probably, if you need...
And then is there going to be anything for the crossings changed? The pedestrian crossings? Because if you look at like those, we talked about that in the audit, but like if you look at the current yellow curbing at those crossings, you know, covered in tire marks from people running them over, and it'd be nice to maybe make those safer too, I guess, is my question.
I know we talked about it, but I don't think we'd addressed it yet.
Melissa?
Yeah, so I actually use these lanes many, several times a week on my commute to and from work, and I really, really appreciate the transformation. And even as a pedestrian crossing Prince Avenue, how much safer it's made it having just one lane in either direction to cross. So, you know, as a user, and I drive it every day almost, and I feel safer as a motorist driving it too because it's a slower commute. I always felt like traffic was too fast on Prince, and now that that end of Prince is very truly a part of downtown, it seems appropriate for a truly urban corridor to have this calming effect. But I do notice the Ziegler zippers that have been run over and knocked off and the nails or whatever they are, the bolts that are pulled off. So that's because they're of the temporary installation, that they're more likely to come out like that.
And what I should have pointed out is the third line and epoxy into the asphalt.
Okay, so they're not epoxy now?
But these ones will be epoxied in because we're going to be doing with the sub-project two, a paving project.
Okay.
So because we'll be taking them up, we can take them up and then mill and pave.
So they'd be, definitely be more permanent and not likely to pop up and go flying when a car hits them? And I mean, to me, the fact that we do see so many of them popped up, it tells me, it's just a testament to how reckless people drive. And, you know, I feel like we really do have a problem in this nation of people recklessly driving, and it's my hope that a project like this will wake people up to how terrible they're driving.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, due to how far we are from our schedule, I don't want to expect answers right now, but I will be making an email to follow up and talk more about it next Tuesday. But a lot of my issues are about this being equitable, enhancing the corridor for all modes of transportation. And I feel like the vehicle lanes in their narrowness have, even those of us who are trying, are being conscious of it, it's like threading a needle, whether you're turning or going straight and coming and going from some of the curb cuts. I do appreciate the elimination of the curb cuts that we saw on the audit, the ones that are close to the intersections, but those can be done whether we're doing this or not. But also the cost of the project, $1.7 million for less than half a mile of this 1.7-mile section that we're looking at. I'll get some more information that wasn't ready for how much money we've spent in risk management repairing people's vehicles.
So I did get an answer today?
Did you get that mail?
Yeah, I got an answer about 3:30 this afternoon. Safety and Risk, I wrote it down too, have received claim documentation from three individuals claiming damage. They have also provided claim forms to eight additional individuals who have not filed a claim yet. Of the three claims received, the liability is currently being assessed, so there's no incurred dollar amount at this time.
Okay. Well, that's part of the pilot, so we'll learn more. But it's curious to me that this configuration, one way or the other, is going to be there all the way till, you know, summer. So we're going to have that cost continuing with the dragon's teeth versus the permanent installation.
Right. It'd be interesting, and I didn't ask this question, I could follow up, is when did those occur?
Yeah.
And have they lessened over time?
Yeah. I was told while I was dining in that area that we've given up replacing them because they get knocked off so much. So I know that that's a constant thing that you guys are having to do.
Well, they, I think they've only replaced a few, they haven't replaced a bunch yet because I had to get more hardware.
Yeah.
Which arrived last week.
Understandable. And then also, can you guys clarify? It's my understanding that the contractor striped the lanes, not the width that you had wanted. Is it going to be a 10-foot lane or a 12-foot lane? And what is it now, the width of the vehicle lane?
11 was what it was. And it's just that the width of the stripe is too wide and so on the outside edge, so actually the width of the stripe being narrow would get it to the 11-foot.
So the goal is 11-foot wide vehicle lane, and the striping is eating up some of that versus us needing to go into the cycling lane or the buffer? Is that correct?
Right.
I appreciate you explaining that.
We wouldn't be changing the width of the buffer at all.
Right. So it's just that driving on the striping is what people are doing, but that's getting them that 11 feet.
Right. And it's only in a very short portion. It's like, it's like up to maybe, basically 100 Prince, from Pulaski to 100 Prince, and then it widens out. It's just the irregularity of the whole curb-to-curb width.
Yeah.
Remember when we discussed it, we talked about the constrained area and that, this is the constrained area.
Yeah. It's got, I think, the most variety in that section. So that clears up some of that, and then we'll do some more discussions on this next Tuesday. Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the whole presentation and sort of pull back a little bit. I think there's a lot of specifics in here on the technical issues and ideas for improvement and such. I just want to remark on, I think this is, it's a very transformative project in terms of how that part of the community now feels. I'm very heartened to see that there was not a significant change in the transportation times, which is something I was concerned about. And, but in the public data we have, it doesn't really identify the people who live there and are using on either side of that area of Prince and are using it regularly, are Clark County residents. So one of the things I'd like to do is to encourage people who live in the area to continue to communicate with us, whether or not this is something that they see is transformative in a positive way, or other suggestions they have for improvement, so we can, I can know more about the experience of living in that area now. I've had some people tell me who I know, but I need to hear it in my role as a commissioner as well. So I encourage people to reach out and let us know what it's like, whether they like the way it's changed that part of Prince Avenue, along those lines. Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, thank you. It was an awesome presentation. Just two questions, post-traffic and pre, well, post-traffic study and pre-traffic study, the volume, the data collected in April and October, was that one day, the whole month?
It was a 24-hour count over a single day, and it was like a Wednesday, I think, a Tuesday or a Wednesday. So they tried not to get, you know, Mondays or Fridays because that's not always, you know.
And the zipplers, you had mentioned, and sorry, I guess my mind went blank, but the zipplers, you said it's extra maintenance versus concrete curb or something like that, right?
So we're looking at, staff has been talking internally because, you know, the zippers are new to staff, and it was kind of just, hey, let's try this because it was an inexpensive way of altering the road without really altering the road? Okay, so they feel like, based on what we've learned from the pilot, that they would probably look to something that doesn't require as much long-term maintenance, which would be some sort of like tapered curb, okay? Does that answer your question?
Stafford? Good?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Edwards?
I just, I'm honored to be part of the commission here for this government that helped create our very first protected bicycle lane. So I think it's something to be proud of, you know, a place where all users can feel safe navigating our community. So thank you for your help making that a reality.
Thank you.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question and a comment on the, one of the recommended improvements, the adding raised pavement markers. What are the raised pavement markers exactly?
They're the, they're the little plastic reflective markers that are on the edges. You know, they help delineate at nighttime, especially.
Oh, like the stands?
Bike plans for Barber Street. And so what you'll have is Prince Avenue to connect to Barber Street, to connect to Newton Bridge Road, to connect to the Holland Youth Sports Complex, and in hopefully not too many more years, a bridge across from Newton Bridge Road to the Sandy Creek Nature Center. And so you're really seeing this multitude of utility for so many users, so excited about that. For Diana and team, I appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
All right. In just a few minutes, we've got a Classic Center Arena update. As you know, that's an always-evolving project as components of the Classic Center Arena come into focus. We've spoken recently about the stairwell and elevator that will carry people from the bridge that'll go across Hickory Street to the parking deck. And in recent times, the scale of the parking deck has prospectively grown, and so we want to hear from Classic Center about what a new iteration of that parking deck could look like. So Classic Center Director Paul Kramer is with us, and he's going to talk a little bit about that in, I understand, seven slots.
Seven slots. Seven slots.
Until the summers, or until they figure out the...
They're temporary till the final visit, and they'll be there, if this passes, they'll be there at the end of summer. If it doesn't pass, they're there till the beginning of summer.
If it passes, they're there till the end of summer, and then we get the concrete.
Thanks for being here. Good to see you. All right, everybody, we're rolling.
Are we moving forward, Mayor?
Friends, we're... Create Sub-Project Number Two, project concept.
Everybody, we're going to have to move forward with the work session, so we got Paul Kramer here. Paul, go right ahead.
Okay, well, just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to bring this forward. I think the mayor hit it on the head. We've talked about this parking deck for a long time, but I'm super excited to be able to bring you this latest rendition. And I do think that it's important that I let you know that now we have a developer who I think has gone above and beyond to help us solve the problems that we needed solved while moving this whole project forward at the same time. Oops. Back up. So our purpose tonight is just to really highlight the changes in the agenda report, present the revised schematic design, outline the financial breakdown if the developer were to move forward and develop this, or if we were to come in and finance our portion, review the IGA and the land components that go with that, and then open it up for any questions. The agenda item, really what you're looking at is the new schematic design, now at 1,000 spaces instead of 500 spaces, and now with 100% private funding option available to us. As you know, the developer came in and has a master plan developed. I think it's $350 million of new construction in and around the arena, which is exactly what you would hope might happen as you develop a public building like this. And then approve the IGA between ACC Gov. and the Classic Center Authority, which includes four different parcels of property. And then authorize the mayor and appropriate staff to execute the documents. On the bottom left, you see the property that we were talking about, shaded in pink, was originally 2.086 acres of land, now expanding that up to 3.065 acres and effectively allowing us to double the size of the deck. It's probably also important to say that we listened to you and we heard you, and you say you wanted more retail and that you wanted more space on top of this deck to be able to do some innovative things. We've incorporated that into the design, and this does comply with all of the zoning and codes that are out there currently. This gives you a look at if the developer were to develop this fully. I think there's just a couple of points here that I'd like to make. The developer is willing to step out and get this going in the timeframe that we need it to happen, and we are going to bid this out so there'll be an ad alternative so that we can build the bridge and the stair tower alone, or that we can build the rest of the deck. And they have chosen to go with Smallwood Reynolds and Perkins &amp; Will, our designer, which I think made this all actually be able to work. As you're looking down through that, there is sufficient income in there for them to be able to pay back their bond. And importantly, they're also paying a land lease. They're also putting in all of those traffic devices that we had wanted from the first study, including the ability to get bikes and pedestrians all the way to the other side of the river with that funicula idea, so that that pedestrian connection to the river and to the other trails that are already there are all built into this, which I think is really important. And then also important to us is that with the revenue that we would get from the parking deck and 25% of the TAD, special district, so forth, it would give us sufficient funding still to pay back that bond, number one, because we had revenue from this deck incorporated in that very first bond. It would give us the ability to pay the $1,585 an hour that we have talked about and be able to help us with that second bond as well. So I think there's a lot of great assets to this. If they wind up actually owning the whole deck, they will use a portion of it for the hotel, a portion of it for all their other development, but they fully expect to use this deck to service our arena folks as well. Probably very interesting to you as well, I just came from Savannah today, where they have 2,500 space parking decks for the support of their arena, which is only slightly larger than ours. And then we also, the mayor... And then, we also, the mayor had let me know about TFIya funding, which is available through the federal government, through the transportation, and we believe that because we are doing all of the traffic calming devices and the slip lanes and so forth, that we are a prime candidate, being so connected to our multimodal. To get this funding, it just takes time. Uh, so when we explained all that to our development partner, they said, "Let us go ahead and start building now. If you get the funding and you want to buy back, we'll allow you to come back and buy back, uh, at the percent that you're willing to invest back into this deck." So, in this case, it, to apply for the TFIya, it had to be under 49%, and we would be at 41%, which means that for us, we would get 410 spaces that we would actually own. You see, there are sufficient revenues to, uh, support that debt service. Debt service through TFIya funding is much more advantageous than what we would get otherwise. And then we still have the revenues to cover all of those same things, uh, that we had talked about for the last couple go-arounds. Here you see the four parcels of property that we're specifically talking about. At the top of the page, you've already conveyed, uh, the north end of, um, Hickory and Willow Street. That'll be the hotel site, and then you see the parking site, and then you see that they are actually looking at widening, uh, the pedestrian access going across, putting in the entertainment district. And then we had acquired those right-of-way through, um, and along the rail line, so this would, uh, convey that and the old, uh, Hickory roadway, that has kind of been out of commission for a while, in addition to that 2.8 acre track, uh, that we had talked about the last couple meetings. So, uh, I think, again, I just want to reiterate, I think that, um, this development partner, uh, is, uh, someone who is doing a lot of good for this whole area. Without them, we would not have 350-plus million dollars coming into this tax allocation district area. And with them, I think we're going to be able to do a lot of good, uh, not just for this area, but for the whole area, uh, that the TAD encompasses.
If you go back one slide, uh, Paul, if I might, uh, just make a distinction for you. The, the, the entertainment district air rights in the middle, that is over the very end of the transit multimodals, um, so, but it's elevated so that buses and fire trucks can still go below it.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's different, that's different than what we've, we've discussed up to this point.
You know, the other component that probably is worth noting, uh, on this graphic is that given the prospectively larger size of the parking deck, it means less space for other users, um, at, right there at the corner of Hickory and East Broad Street. And so, of course, that, you know, would, would have an impact on any future user, including the prospect of a judicial facility that's, that's been under at least some discussion for that site. Uh, but we know that the user group's looking at other sites too, um, but just want to make that very clear to everybody.
And one more thing, if I, if I may, the retail space, if we did buy back at 41%, we would have access to 41% of that retail space, which is significant, which, uh, I've said all along, the Classic Center wants to be a true partner with Athens-Clark County. So if you were to use those, uh, retail spaces for your purposes, uh, I've sort of factored that into the overall plan.
Questions from the group? Tim?
Just one quick one, uh, and, and what you brought up, Mayor. I mean, do we feel like that this would make it impossible for this to be a site for the Judicial Center, or do we feel like it's still possible there? I mean, I know it's hard to say, but I guess one, yeah.
It's not impossible, it's going to be more difficult, and I've asked staff to qualify that, and we'll provide that, some, um, feedback to that question this week.
Okay, and combined with that, um, would, would this option still give us the ability to say if we did go to the Judicial Center there, to have the parking spaces for the Judicial Center in this deck?
So the immediate answer is possibly we could negotiate leasing from the privately-held deck. Uh, if you want to take that further and preserve the right to purchase a part of the deck in the future, not unlike what the Classic Center is doing, that, they may be open to that, but that hasn't been broached at this point.
If I may, the other thing I've always said, and it still will ring true, during the day, during the week, I'd be happy to have you use what we have, if we were to buy back in and get the TFIya funding through.
Okay, appreciate that, and, and I will say just from, uh, sitting through, uh, some of the presentations in the meetings with, uh, with the development partner, I, I have been impressed with their, uh, willingness to really kind of work, uh, with us and trying to make something for the community, so.
Any other questions? All right, uh, Paul, thanks for staying at the table.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, so my plan is, I'm going to, uh, reconfigure, step up to the dais, and then, uh, we'll have a break after the special call session, so for anybody who's thinking about your, uh-
Break needs.
Break needs, of whatever variety they may be.
Not break knees.
Needs.
Needs, there's D in it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, multiple, multiple. All right, everyone, as noted early, we have a trifecta tonight, and so, uh, we've completed our work session. Uh, we're going to move on to the special called session, and then we'll have our regularly scheduled voting meeting right after that. But, uh, for a special called session, uh, do need a roll call from Clerk Spratlin.
Davenport?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Denson?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Barton?
Here.
Hamby?
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, I appreciate it. All right, uh, do need a motion to enter into special called session. So suspension of rules?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion for suspension of rules from Commissioner Myers, a second from Commissioner Hool, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't oppose.
All right, so, uh, opposition from Commissioner Wright, please record that, if you will, Clerk Spratlin. All right, um, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, begin, uh, with, uh, public input, and, uh, and then follow up with, uh, two items of new business, uh, now that we're under suspension of rules. So, uh, time for public input is now, and as is the case, now, and then for the future session, uh, any public input, uh, would be, uh, three minutes or less. Uh, Clerk Spratlin has a light on her desk, it will turn green when you begin speaking, it will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then it will turn red when the time is up. And, uh, so if anybody would like to step forward, please let us know your name, uh, place of residence, and, uh, you have three minutes. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening, my name's Jeremy, uh, Williams, I live at 1441 Grove Level Road. I've been a firefighter with ACC for just over 23 years, and I was also a charter member of the local 2795. I served as the president for over four years. In 2012, during my tenure as the local president, Ladder 7, which is housed at our Fire Station 7 on Barnett Shoals Road, was set to be closed down, and the county was going to cut three driver positions and three officer positions. The county manager at the time had thought this was a way to save money and cut the budget. However, this would have severely reduced response times to a significant portion of our population. There are three ladder companies in Athens-Clark County. Ladder 7, which was set to be cut, covers multiple districts, including Stations 3, 5, 6, 7, and Winterville. It serves about one-third of our population. Shutting down this ladder would have led to a significant delay in our response times. It would have doubled or tripled the amount of time to get a ladder company on scene. In the fire service, we've always said seconds matters because our lives matter. If Ladder 7 had closed, we would have put lives at risk. The local 2795 worked with community members to stop this dangerous reduction in fire protection. Today, Ladder 7 is still open. It's still proudly serving the citizens of the east side. While, while I'm proud of my role in helping keeping the Ladder 7 open, this became a very controversial issue, and the county manager at the time directed the fire chief to no longer speak with any union personnel and prohibited any union resources from being utilized in this county. From that point forward, I was silenced and prevented from advocating for public safety. I was told by multiple administrators that the manager's office and the county government would have nothing to do with our union, and our voices would be silenced. Because our union stood up for service delivery and safety in this community, we were silenced. I'm proud to be a firefighter and serve the citizens of ACC. I consider my brothers and sisters in the fire service public safety experts, and they're the advocates for you and your family. We're committed to delivering high-quality fire service, emergency service, that the residents of this county deserve and they expect. Title 25 will make sure that ACC firefighters would have a voice when it comes to public safety, no matter who was in charge. I ask for your vote to recognize and accept this resolution so we can serve this community to the absolute best and do it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. My name is Emily Thompson, and I have proudly served Athens-Clark County for 12 years as a firefighter, and currently serve as a community educator on fire and life safety. Today, I stand before you as president of the Professional Firefighters of Athens-Clark County. Your firefighters are public safety experts, and we are advocates for you and your family. We are committed to delivering high-quality fire and emergency medical services that the residents of Athens-Clark County expect and deserve. Title 25 gives the public safety experts, your firefighters, a voice in how these services are delivered in our community. Safety is our number-one priority. We will continually advocate for the highest quality services for our residents and visitors of our community. Title 25 fosters collaborative problem-solving, problem-solving which promotes workplace efficiency. Firefighters will have a structured and organized vehicle to bring innovative and cost-saving ideas to management, leading to increased transparency and efficiency. Title 25 promotes fairness and ensures a level playing field to help recruit and retain diverse and talented workforce in Athens-Clark County. It encourages equitable structure, which firefighters can voice their opinion and know that their voice is valued. This reduces attrition and helps retain experienced firefighters. Title 25 encourages leadership. The first land-granted university was established in Athens. We were innovators in unifying consolidated governments. Athens-Clark County has prided itself in being a leader in municipal governance. Passage of this ordinance demonstrates our community's continued leadership and aligns with the county's strategic plan goal areas. Your firefighters are asking you to adopt this resolution today. The healthiest workplaces are those in which employees are valued and respected. This resolution fosters this kind of work environment. Please vote in favor of this resolution and support all workers having a voice in Athens-Clark County. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Evening.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Carter. I live at 231 Nakuchi Avenue, Unit 1. Today is a good day, because it's not often that we get to be in this chamber to talk about unions, and even more to advocate for their ability, their, actually their statutory right to collectively bargain with their employer. You see all these firefighters here. These are the people who keep our community safe. They put their lives on the line every day. They put their mental health on the line. And they try their best to get home to their families. Being a worker alone should give you the right to say how your workplace operates, even more when the statute says that you have the right. And that's what the Firefighter Mediation Act says. I know there is a lot of trepidation, some misinformation about collective bargaining and what, and what unions are, and a lot of that comes out of management, your management. This is where you, as the executive body, have the power to tell this employer, Athens-Clark County, to work collaboratively with some of the finest workers that we have. And that is a privilege that I, I hope that all of you take the opportunity to participate in. You know, it's not, again, it's just, I, I'm, I'm taken aback of how we get to talk about collective bargaining as a policy. And it's something that all public workers should enjoy. Right now, the firefighters have that right. Some of us are working very hard to make sure that all public workers have that right. But just because firefighters have that right and others don't, does not mean that they should be stripped of that right. That's not how our system should work. I've been very encouraged by some of the conversations I've had with some of you. I know that many of you are members of the United Campus Workers of Georgia as supporting members. I'm here to speak on, on behalf of them as a member, and also as a union organizer with the EJCP Worker Center. Support our firefighters, support our workers. Grant, adopt the Mediation Act, so that you can work collaboratively. That's what collective bargaining is.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jess. Evening.
Shorten this a bit. My name is Irvin Aladeff, and, um, I'm a resident of Athens-Clark County and a business owner downtown for many, many years. I own Masada Leather, and, which was downtown for a number of years. And Wes Thompson, of, of Fire, of the Fire Department, called me a few weeks ago and said, "Irvin, do you mind speaking as a citizen of Athens regarding the Fire Department?" And he didn't have to ask me twice. They saved my store, and they're an incredible group of people, men and women, who have done courageous and heroic acts in this county for many years. I do not know of any department that deserves more encouragement, more support, and a seat at the table than this Fire Department and these, these people here. Uh, just an incredible group of people. Unfortunately, I had to meet them in a situation where my store was burning down in 1987, uh, caused by a, uh, someone that lit a match in an apartment next door. If it hadn't been for the Fire Department, the entire city, the entire block of, uh, of 200 of Clayton Street would be gone. The men and women that, that were part of the Fire Department got there. I got the horrible call at 3:00 in the morning, "You need to come downtown." The fire had spread, uh, you probably all know where Allgood is. There's a reason that Allgood doesn't have a roof, it's because that fire started there and spr- started to spread all over the city. We've got an incredible group of people here that do an unbelievable job supporting our city, and I can't think of anything more than, than this community getting around and giving them the right to have the ability to get to the table, to have a seat at the table, to discuss their own futures, their own health, and all of the things that they do for the community. So I support Title 25 as a citizen and as a business owner and as a building owner downtown, and would like to see the commission do everything they can to support our firefighters, so.
Thank you, Irvin.
Evening.
Hello. I'm Bryant Barnes. Live on 1035 Barnett Shoals Road, Apartment 446. I'm here as one of the co-chairs of the United Campus Workers of Georgia, the UGA chapter. And I'm here first in solidarity with the firefighters, but also I want to talk a little bit about collective bargaining and what that is. It's ultimately the surest protection of workers' rights in their workplaces. In short, it's democracy in the workplace. Many times in conversations about collective bargaining, public sector workers are left out. A lot of this is based on arguments that as public servants, it will be an undue burden on local governments. This is ultimately just kind of a declaration that those who serve the public are not worthy of having their voices heard in their workplaces and that they are worthy of exploitation without recourse. It's all the more egregious when those public servants are literally putting their health, their safety, and their lives on the line to serve us. So I'd like to address some of the primary concerns about this resolution and this ordinance. The idea that collective bargaining is complicated and adversarial. First off, all bargaining, whether it's individual or collective, is complicated. It is often adversarial. But collective bargaining simply counter-racts the power imbalance between individual employees and their employers. I don't think that this is a bad thing. Second objection is that unions are somehow more political than ordinary citizens. Again, unions are just collections of citizens with shared interests coming together to more effectively advocate their interests. It is simply democracy. A union would be no more political than any other public servant or citizen, whether they be someone like myself or any of the people here on the commission or the mayor or the manager, expressing their opposition or their support to any measure. And then the final conclusion, or the final argument, is that this is somehow a special privilege. Again, that is not an argument against recognizing and giving collective bargaining rights to the firefighters. That is an argument that all public workers, all workers, should have collective bargaining rights. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bryant. Good, Jess. Good evening.
Hey. My name is Sarah Garing. I live at 140 Griffith Street. Do I need to give a public comment card for every time I come up to public comment today? Or can I give you just one at the end?
One's good, and just keep giving us your name.
Okay. So I am here, I don't know any of these people or any of the firefighters. I'm going to take these folks' word that they're all really good people and they do really good work, but they could be terrible, honestly, and I would still be here saying the same thing. They don't deserve a union because they are heroic or because they are good people. They deserve a union because they are workers and they're asking for it. I can understand why the city manager's office would like for there not to be a union and would like to not have to do collective bargaining. It's very complicated. It's hard to come to an agreement about things. It takes time. Time is money. Economically, it's difficult. I don't deny that, but there are many things that we should not do for economic expedience, such as, for instance, using prisoners as slave labor, which, no matter how much good it might do for the county government and for the taxpayers, giving them a good deal, it simply must be done to uphold the principles of liberal democracy. There's no way in good conscience to deny a union to workers who want it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else this evening? All right. Thank you all. Evening.
Evening. Broderick Flanagan, 215 Gressom Street. I'm the chair of the Board of Directors with Economic Justice Coalition Organization founded in the early 2000s by the late Dr. Ray McNair and Ms. Nanda Lloyd, our fearless executive director. She couldn't be here this evening. But I definitely want to speak to some of these issues. It's about building worker solidarity and worker power and coalition of workers in Athens. And we at Economic Justice Coalition just believe that all workers deserve a say in their working conditions. And to deny these workers an opportunity to exercise these rights because it would be unfair to other public workers is just like saying that we can't put, you know, funding towards affordable housing because we're not able to build enough houses for everyone. You have to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere, and by passing this resolution and recognizing this unit, it will be a start to address and secure economic stability for many families in Athens. And we see what happens when low-wage workers, what happens to low-wage workers when rent increases happen and when the cost of living is constantly rising. You know, you put families in a precarious situation of housing and food insecurity. And we know those things are directly related to labor and your working conditions. We as a community don't act. We run the risk of increasing the number of families that are experiencing these types of issues. Now, I've experienced loss due to fire, and I've witnessed many families over the last few months experience loss due to fires. And condolences to those families. The work these men and women do for the city is invaluable. The rigor and training and the mental trauma of witnessing fire fatalities is something I don't know personally, yet I've heard of some accounts and the trauma transfer that some of these firefighters often have to manage. It would be wise for us as a community to take advantage of this opportunity to protect these workers and to secure their ability to collectively bargain for better working conditions, for safe working conditions. So let this be an example for all workers in our community to come together in solidarity in the private sector to learn how to use the National Labor Relations Act and to secure their economic freedom when rent and other costs of living are constantly putting Athenians in crisis situations. I hope that you take heed to these things. I hope you take these things into consideration, and thank you for allowing us to come and speak to this issue this evening.
Thank you, Broderick. All right. Moving behind the rail, I'd entertain a motion regarding the first item, which is the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in support of employee labor unions.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Denson. Go ahead, Commissioner Hul.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a long road to get here, and we've got a long road to go, no matter how tonight goes. I really want to thank everyone in the room who showed up. It's a cold rainy day, there's a big election happening, there's a lot of reasons to be a lot of other places, so thanks for being here. To me, this is really quite simple. Do we believe in worker empowerment? Is that one of our values as a government and a community? Do we believe in the principles of our democracy enough to apply them to our workplace? And do we see value in our workers being invited into the conversation that everyone else inside and even outside this community is invited into? If things continue with the status quo, there is a barrier our workers experience to be able to express their voice in public and to us. And this resolution and the ordinance that comes in conjunction with it are opportunities for us to take steps to, as some of the speakers spoke to, correct that inherent imbalance of power. That's not because anyone on this body or in management is doing anything wrong, it's just a fact of the way things are structured. We as a government engage with collections of citizens all the time. We call them corporations, and we tend to only engage with the people at the top of them. This is an opportunity for us to engage with a different collection of citizens, the workers, the people who are on the front lines every day, taking risks, showing up through COVID, showing up in dangerous scenarios, showing up when they have problems at home, showing up to work overtime when we're short-staffed. I believe that all the fear that surrounds the possible outcomes of taking this step is much larger than the reality we'll face if we take this step. I think the truth is that while it will be complicated to have those conversations and while opening the door for other workers in our government to be able to do similar things to what the firefighters can do, although without the ability to collectively bargain, that we will see over time that that provides a workplace where people thrive more than to survive, where people feel empowered, and where our recruitment and retention challenges are lessened because we will be uniquely positioning ourselves as an employer in the state of Georgia and in the South as a region who treats our workers this way. That's not to poo-poo the real concerns that I've heard from management and others about some of where this can lead. I just think that the benefits far outweigh the costs, and I hope that my colleagues will support us taking the step tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Denson, a second. Are there additional comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'll just speak to both of these items kind of together here. Yeah, I also do think this is kind of a simple vote. It really comes down to, do we believe that employees here in Georgia, in Athens-Clark County, deserve the right to organize and to collectively bargain? That they intimately know their working situations better than anybody else could, and therefore it helps this entire community to have them sitting at the table when decisions are being made? And I do believe, I believe that it is a right that all workers should have the ability to organize and to have collective bargaining. Unfortunately, in the state of Georgia, we cannot give that right to any workers outside of firefighters because of the Firefighter Mediation Act enacted by the great Governor Jimmy Carter many years ago that has not been utilized very often in the state of Georgia that gives that power. And we just simply have to take this step to enact that power locally. And so I believe that we should. Now, I've heard the argument also, which I know was talked about, that this could be unfair to other employees who don't have this right. And I desperately wish that we could enact this for all employees. But I think that the metaphor actually brought up about affordable housing is actually a very good metaphor, actually. I mean, yeah, at this time, we can't provide affordable housing to everyone. That doesn't mean we don't start somewhere and start building it now. And I think it's the exact same thing, that what we are building here is a culture of workers' rights and worker empowerment, that we can start and build in that first block with the firefighters here. And while there might be, you know, some growing pains working through this if we decide to enact it, I believe the benefits will spill over past just the firefighters themselves. We talk about recruitment a lot here, behind the rail constantly, especially in our public safety workers. I'll tell you this, if you have some firefighters looking to possibly move and take up another job somewhere or go in and start somewhere, having a fire department that has unionized that's going to give those workers more power and probably know that they're going to be treated better, that they're going to have better compensation as they move forward throughout their career, it's going to be an enticing thing to come here to Athens-Clark County to work as a firefighter. So I think that is another big benefit. And, you know, one thing we need to think about here, too, is we've been talking a lot about expanding some of the responsibilities and the expectations of our firefighters when it comes to emergency medical response. And they already do that so much, actually responding oftentimes before an ambulance can get there. I've had to call 911 for an accident I've seen, and guess who was there? Firefighters were there right after the police, before the ambulance was.
Commissioner, would you like additional time?
If I could.
Yes. Is that okay by common consent?
I'm almost done. So with that, I think that there's these expanded, and I think it's very much needed that we have the firefighters to understand those roles, to be sitting at those tables, helping management and us to understand the work that's behind that and be able to make more informed decisions. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, firefighters do have a very unique job. They have helped my house, saved my house, put out a fire at my house before, and I'm greatly indebted to them for that. But it is very rare. If you look through the Georgia Code, you don't see the word "cancer" having to be defined under many jobs, employment situations, but it is for this job. They have some very unique risks and threats that they experience that nobody else that works for Athens-Clark County has to experience. And so I think this is a fantastic first step that we can be taking to give our workers the ability to collectively do collective bargaining and organize. So I am excited to be able to take this vote here.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any others? Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. Let me first thank everyone for coming out tonight. I've really learned from all this comment, and I appreciate all that red out there, and I appreciate the work of the firefighters across the county. It's essential and it's valued. I initially fully supported recognition of the firefighters' union in the ordinance that Commissioner Hul drafted for a vote in the attached resolution, and my name was on it. But at this point, and after considerable deliberate and very independent thought, I have too many concerns to proceed tonight. Added work to overworked staff without added resources, people, and budgeted dollars, the creation of unbalanced power and representation for one group of ACC employees over the rest, lack of clarity about future commission support of these items, including budgetary support, the need for the local union to build its credibility, and the need for more carefully refined wording in the resolution. These are all concerns that might eventually be addressed in a satisfactory way, and I would really hope that is the case. But right now, my preference is to be more deliberate and detail-focused so that we better anticipate and prepare for various outcomes that may result from passing such an ordinance or resolution. I've talked to and continue to communicate with the mayor and the manager about ways to continue giving our employees more opportunities to voice their ideas and concerns, and I look forward to working with our new commissioners on just this as we start the new year.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Link?
Yeah. I also want to thank the firefighters and everybody who came out tonight to support this, and I want to thank Commissioner Hul for really doing the lion's share and pushing this through, and the firefighters who reached out to us specifically, Emily and Wes. It is a real honor and a privilege to see something like this move forward. I had no idea we had the ability, as a local government, to recognize this kind of union in our community. I'm the descendant of four generations of Pittsburgh steelworkers. My mother was the rep, the organizing rep for her nurses' union at Greater Southeast General Hospital in Washington, DC for many years. I'm a member of the United Campus Workers. Unions are in my blood, and I'm very proud to support this. I know it's going to be difficult, and I understand this idea of disparity amongst other employees. Unfortunately, the state of Georgia only gives us the ability to recognize the firefighters. And firefighters are a very unique, in a very unique position, and I think my colleagues have articulated that well. There are inherent dangers to simply putting on the gear of a firefighter. I can recall several firefighters from Athens-Clark County seeing their obituaries in the paper just in recent years. And I do believe that, you know, if there is disparity between the firefighters and other employees, that there is some cause for that in the very unique dangers that this occupation faces. So I am proud to support it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Wright?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll say something real quick. So I'd just like to point out, I am supportive of the resolution and of the ordinance for a lot of various reasons. One of the reasons is just kind of 25 years ago, when I did something here in this community and ran for office, I supported the Police Benevolent Association also being able to unionize. And there was a headline on a paper. I will send it around to you if you're interested. I kept it. But yeah, it says nowhere in the paper. But I'm trying to be consistent. I understand, I understood then, and I understand now, that, you know, it's easy enough for us, as Commissioner Myers said, to go and talk to the mayor and to talk to the manager about communicating and about being able to get some things done. But I think the point of the resolution and the ordinance tonight is I understand, I understood then, and I understand now, that, you know, it's easy enough for us, as Commissioner Myers said, to go and talk to the mayor and to talk to the manager about communicating and about being able to get some things done. But I think the point of the resolution and the ordinance tonight is to say that it's also important for employees, and the firefighters in particular, since they have a constitutional, Georgia constitutional right to be able to ask us for this, to be able to have that communication as well. So that's, you know, that's why I'm supporting it tonight. I do have a little bit of Union blood in me, and my dad was in the Teamsters. So, you know, he did all right, and the Teamsters treated him right. But at any rate, then, just wanted to add my two cents' work to this conversation. I think the communication lines not only should work for us, but for others who are asking for that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I want to thank the firefighters. It's amazing that there's this many of you here, because I know every available spot in all the fire stations are also being manned right now, too. So I really appreciate you taking your time off to be down here on this cause. And I don't want the fact that I don't support this to diminish the support that I have for your work and what you do tirelessly to and for the community. I think that this body has shown our appreciation for all of our public safety employees and units equally during this pandemic, and we will continue to support you. I do want, it's important to know that the executive body of this unified government is elected officials. Whether you live in Athens-Clark County or not, as our employee, we are here to hear what you have to say. If the chain of command is not working for you, for your personnel issues, your budget issues, you need to let us know. Because the manager and the department heads, and fire department head management, they're beholden to us. And so we are here to hear from you. You might not send us an email, but you can call us. We're here to hear from you. And if that hasn't been happening, and there's things that you have wanted that hasn't come to us, we're the final word on the budget, you need to let us know. If something that comes to us from the budget, through the manager, through the manager and the mayor, doesn't have something that's important to you, you need to let us know, and we appreciate that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
I actually and intentionally signed the affidavit to at least let your voice be heard on the agenda, because everybody's voice needs to be heard, no matter what we feel I was very concerned that there were issues with the firefighter. I've been on this commission four years now. We have had issues and conversations about our police department, we've had issues and conversations about our sheriff's department, we've had issues and conversations about EMS and corrections, we've had conversations about even public health. This is the first time I have heard anything from the firefighters. I get you all mixed up with them firefights. And I'm literally embarrassed that you did not know that you could come and have a voice with us. And so you have to take, what is it, use Title 25 to get your voice heard. If a union is good for the firefighters, a union is good for every employee. Every employee should be able to have their voice heard. I don't know where the gap is, but I'm totally embarrassed. We have members on this commission that are union people. They've never brought no issue to us. We've had retreats, we've had workshops. Our own folk didn't tell us that there was a problem. Now, I'm not going to vote for this resolution tonight, but I am going to ask the mayor to move this issue to GOC or any committee that he chooses and meet with you guys and educate us. I think Grodrak mentioned the National Labor Act. I don't know nothing about no National Labor Act. I got to get educated. You got to educate me if you want my vote. Trust you? I do. I trust y'all to be the most... Somebody even talked about, they know it's going to be complicated, they know it's going to be difficult. You know why it's going to be complicated and difficult? Because some of us don't know what to expect, and it's not articulated. We need to have all the issues on the table. None of you should feel so disrespected that your voice is not heard. And if there's a problem, I think Allison said it correctly, we are the ones who get the brunt. If you're getting stopped at another office, find a way to send us some smoke signals, let us know what's going on, and we can figure it out. But I'm very embarrassed that y'all are unhappy enough and not even had the opportunity to talk to us. It's embarrassing as a commissioner. I'm always open. Anybody who knows me, they know they can call on me. So, you know, I'm not going to pass this resolution, but I do, I'm not going to support this resolution tonight, but I want to promise each and every one of you, if I knew you by your name, where you live at, I would tell you the same thing. I am willing, I'm going to stand with you, we're going to fix this, but we're not going to just fix it for you guys. We're going to fix it for all Clark County employees. That's where I stand.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to respond to a little bit of what's been discussed here. I think, you know, first, if the concern is what other departments can do that the firefighters could if we passed the ordinance, we had some people speak here from UCWGA, the United Campus Workers of Georgia. They are a public sector employee union, and they don't have the right to collectively bargain, but they still have the ability to achieve a lot of things that they could not otherwise by being a union. They also haven't had much of an opportunity to engage in a very effective way with the administration of the university, as I understand it. What this resolution does, because this first vote is on the resolution, I'd like to appoint my colleagues to Section 4, which says, "The manager shall develop a policy that must be approved by the commission to establish a procedure for proactive communications related to receiving input on wages, hours, and other employment conditions," et cetera. So I'm sure everybody here has had an opportunity to read this, it's been in everybody's inboxes for months. We don't have the ability, under state law, to do for every department and every worker what we can do for the firefighters tonight with the ordinance that we're voting on after this resolution. This resolution is the opportunity for us to take things as far as we possibly can to level the playing field, and I believe that it sets things up in a very measured way. I believe that, you know, this doesn't make anything happen overnight. It sets clear steps out for the manager's office to then come back to us with a policy for us to approve. It also says that we would have to then pass subsequent resolutions recognizing other unions when they're formed. So there's lots of steps. I don't think we need to drag this out and send it to committee or anything. I think the presence of people in the room tonight, as well as over the course of many years before tonight, talking about labor generally speaks enough for us to take this small step tonight, which the resolution does. I'd also like to speak to this chain of command thing. I'm hearing people put the onus on workers to take risks, to come to us, to risk disciplinary action, which is very real, if they break the chain of command and come to us. Why haven't we heard from them? Because it's a fireable offense. So, I mean, here they are, you know, what more do we need? You know, make them come to more committees and see how long until the people who show up a lot suddenly get at-will terminated? I mean, I just, to me, and to say that this is the first time we've heard from people, I mean, I don't know, I've been hearing from these folks for a year, so, you know, and as I understand it, they've reached out to everybody on this party repeatedly. So I would appreciate it if, at the very least, we could be honest with each other about our concerns, instead of pretending like we haven't had this conversation for years.
See if anybody else has not spoken. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I got to respond.
Commissioner Edwards, I apologize for pronouncing your hand.
It's fine.
Best job I ever had was a union job as a member of the Washington Teachers Union. And I remember I got called in to the principal's office one day, and there was a parent there who was upset at my teaching methods and threatened to sue me. And as part of my membership with the American Federation of Teachers, I knew that I had the protection of a union. And I had the freedom to stand up right in that moment and say, "This meeting's over. I want to call my shop representative." And it was the first time in my working career that I felt like I had the dignity of my job, provided by a brotherhood and sisterhood as a member of a union. And so I'm a union person, and I support the resolution.
Fall, Commissioner Thornton?
I was just going to mention a couple of things. I've done a little, I've done a little bit of research, because, again, I think if there's a problem with staff, any staff, we should fix it. And it was brought to my attention, an enactment called the Public Employee Relations Act. And there are 32 other states that has something very similar, and it is in their budget in these states. I think that if we are talking about people feeling secure in their job and treated with respect and value, that is for every employee, I still would suggest that we look into programs or, you know, programs or laws like the Public Employee Relations Acts, and let's take care of all of our employees. Now, I don't know where I was when we talked about the unions over a year ago. I wasn't at that meeting. This was brought to our attention, I know, this past summer, and again, it just was not on my radar at that time. And I surely did not expect an ordinance that we would vote on when we, as this commission, have never had a retreat, we have never had a workshop, we have never discussed this. I am sure that the firefighters and some of the commissioners are a lot more educated than I am on what it's going to take to make this successful. I'm just saying, I need to be brought up to speed on what I'm signing off on. I have signed off on several things out of a knee-jerk reaction because it's, we got to do it. And when we do it, we have collateral damage. And there's nothing wrong with collateral damage, because, you know, you win some, you lose some. But when you keep making the same mistakes over and over again, that's a choice. We can't be making mistakes over and over again when people's lives, our budget, this community is affected. I've gone along with a lot of things here that maybe I shouldn't have because I didn't get enough information, I didn't get the pros and the cons. So, no, I'm not going to sign on, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend that this has been a conversation for over a year. It was the meeting, I guess, I just wasn't there. I support the firefighters, and I stand with you, but if you were having problems, other staff are having problems, and we need to fix it all at one time.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Commissioner Denzil?
Thanks. I'll be brief. One thing, I just want to make clarity, that we do these things all the time where there is a state law, and it simply requires the local government, this body, to vote to enact that state law. We did this, what, last year, when it was little things like to allow people to deliver alcohol, like Grubhub and stuff. That's what we're doing here. Georgia, the state of Georgia, already passed this before I was born, it's been a law for that long, and all we have to do as a local government is say, "Yep, they can do that." And I don't think it's, I have no fear that it is going to be a mistake for me to trust these firefighters, that they know the best about what they need to do for their jobs, and that they can advocate for themselves the better than anybody else can. Somebody asked me about this, like, why is this going on? If you had a, you shouldn't have to do this unless there's problems. No. You can have the best HR department, the best management in the world, it's never going to replace the ability for workers to advocate for themselves and to actually speak for themselves. Never. So all this comes down to, y'all, this is what it's come down to. Are we going to support them? They're here asking us to. They have good reason to. The state government has already cleared the way for us to do so. Are we going to support these fantastic people that literally put their lives on the line every single time to do their job? It's simple. If we stand with them, then we will vote with them.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right.
I just want to reply just really briefly here and reiterate what Commissioner Thornton has said, is we have not had a public discussion on this. We spent a lot of time in the, our committees. I spent the last three months talking about gas blowers and noise. This ordinance, which I made, the resolution and the ordinance, which may in the end be the best things in the world, they have repercussions in what happens every day, in what people have to do in their jobs. And we have to make sure we have everything in place and think about things carefully. We have other people who do incredible things. So, I mean, the firefighters, you guys are wonderful, but you know what? Our police department is really wonderful, and they risk their lives, and our solid waste workers are really wonderful, and they're out there in dangerous conditions as well. So I don't, I want to think deliberately about this, I want us to be able to discuss this as a body, and let me reiterate that this is the first time we have discussed this together as a body. And in the end, I might proceed with everything just like it's here, but just like later on this evening, when we look at details on our accessory dwelling units, there are pieces of this resolution and such that might need some tweaking, and they haven't had that public discussion, they haven't had the kind of discussion we have on leaf blowers. And I think this is a more significant change to what's going on with our government. So thank you all for being here. I hope we continue to have this, and I am finished with what I have to say.
I haven't heard from Commissioner Davenport yet. Go ahead, sir.
Call in a question.
Second.
On favor, calling a question?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposition from Commissioner Hul, please record that, if you will. All right, we're going to do a roll call.
He has his hand up.
I'm not familiar on the call to question whether or not.
It goes straight to vote.
Let me back. And this is on the resolution?
And this is on the resolution, which is item one, under due business.
So what do we vote on?
We're going to do the resolution, and then the second item is the ordinance. First item's the resolution, second item's the ordinance, and so we'll do roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Hul as the primary motion maker.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Lane?
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
Denzil?
Yes.
Five yes, four no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we now move on to item two, the ordinance. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance adoption of the Firefighters' Mediation Act.
Is there a second?
I'm going to read it, Mr. Mayor.
Let me get a second, then I'll have you read it.
I'm going to second it, but I've got a point of order to ask the attorney.
Second from Commissioner Hamby, and go ahead and read the ordinance, and then we'll cover the point of order.
In order to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, Part II, Special Related Laws, Title III, Public Safety, Chapter 3, 7, Fire, to create a new Section 3-711, Title Firefighters' Mediation Act, and for other purposes. Firefighters' Mediation Act, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Question, point of order.
Mr. Attorney, with an ordinance change, it's my understanding we'll need six votes to pass an ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, just to be perfectly clear, you know, six votes to pass at night, the mayor has a chance to review it and can always veto it. If the mayor vetoes the ordinance, it takes seven votes to overturn a veto.
Right.
Commissioner Hul, I'm just going to send it back to you there.
All right, go ahead. It's a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamby. Yeah, you know, I don't have much to add that we didn't already speak to. What I was going to say before we called the question was actually in reference to the resolution, which did pass, so I'm appreciative of that. So, now the substance of this is the ordinance for the firefighters, for the Firefighters' Mediation Act. Having passed that resolution, in case it makes everyone in the room a bit more comfortable, Section 4 of that resolution says, "The manager shall develop a policy that must be approved by the commission prior to implementation to establish a procedure for proactive communications related to receiving input on wages, hours, and other employment conditions affecting public employees represented by the local 2795 and any future employee organizations or unions that may be subsequently designated by the commission with the authority to provide input on behalf of ACCGAV employees. The policy shall include a timeframe under which the manager's office will seek to engage with such employee organizations or unions, and shall define the manner of engagement." A lot of the concern I heard expressed from colleagues tonight was about having more time to have a conversation on this matter. And having approved that resolution narrowly, we have set in motion the opportunity to have that conversation. That conversation now will happen. That might go through committee and then come to us, it might be at a work session and then come before this, but we're going to have that conversation to talk about how we can do what we can to extend as much as possible the right to organize to all workers of this government. So, now the question before us is, do we recognize the state law and act upon it to recognize the first and only current union that we're aware of, of ACCGAV employees, to get the ball rolling with a living example of real people who have already been here for many years and are clearly asking us to do so? So, I hope that we will, having approved the resolution, find it within ourselves to also have the requisite number of votes to approve the ordinance. Thank you.
Since we have been kicked, you've adopted the resolution this evening. It hasn't been approved yet. The mayor has 10 days to consider it, under anything, but I just don't only have a, since this has come up, y'all have adopted it, the commission has.
Well, if you don't mind, Mayor, and Commissioner Hul makes some great points there about the resolution, but I want to be clear, if we don't have six votes tonight, it kind of stops in some ways because the second step of that ordinance thing is the meat and bones of that resolution. So, Commissioner Hul, I might ask you if you would amend your motion to maybe put this on hold or send it to the committee, like make a motion, send it to the committee, like Commissioner Thornton was asking for, so that we have an opportunity to make sure we have at least six people, and we probably need seven at the end of the day, in agreement with us here on this. I'm just pointing out what I see unfolding.
Good going, Commissioner. Hul.
Yeah, I'm not interested in amending the motion, in that I feel like we've had, I know everybody's acting like this is the first time that we're talking about this, but I'll point everybody to the approved in March ARPO language, where under our Business Development and Workforce Support, we talked about nonprofit programming designed to assist workers in labor organizing for improved working conditions and/or higher wages. That's one of numerous conversations we've had about other matters, where we've talked about employee organizing in reference to other matters, maybe not this specifically. The general discussion around labor has been happening among this body many, many times. The reason why we haven't had this specific discussion on this specific proposal is because after months and months of asking for people to collaborate, it took me a long time to get the requisite number of people to get us to have this discussion today. And so, you know, if people in the room really want to have the discussion, if that's really what we want, then approving this tonight is allowing us to continue to have the discussion, and not approving it is basically saying you don't. Because, you know, that's how we got here. I don't really know, again, I would just ask for us to be honest with ourselves about why we do and do not approve of or disapprove of the things before us, instead of pretending like we haven't had this conversation, because we have.
Commissioner Myers, then Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something logistically here, because we just passed this resolution. And in the resolution, Section 2, am I correct, someone else looking at it, it does say, "The manager or the manager's designee shall open communication with local 2795 within 60 business days of passage of this resolution to receive input on wages, hours, and other employment conditions." So, even if we do not pass the ordinance, we are also, in this resolution, directing, this doesn't have anything about collective bargaining, but it does direct the manager to meet with the firefighters' union within 60 days. Am I correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Myers. The resolution currently sets up the firefighters' union to be treated the same way any other theoretical future union would be treated, where they have the ability to have conversation according to whatever policy the manager's office directs. But the ordinance is what takes it a step further and also exercises state law to give them the power of collective bargaining.
May I follow up that question? Yes. And then Section 4 of that says, "The manager shall create a policy to establish proactive communication with local 2795." And so, I'm a little confused here. Is this, this is one of the things on Section 2, it says you're going to have communication with 275, and then in Section 4, it says, "shall create a policy to establish proactive communication." But either way, that's the resolution we passed, so the manager will be meeting, if this resolution goes through, would be meeting with the firefighters' union.
It has gone through.
It, well, it hasn't been.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
So, it would still, if this stays on the books, and we have directed the manager in this direction, it doesn't matter about the firefighters' mediation act, if I understand this correctly.
Yeah, the way the two sections interact, Section 2 gives the manager's office two months essentially to open conversation, and Section 4 directs the manager to create a policy that we would then have an opportunity to discuss around how that communication would go with that body or any other. So, you know, ideally, we would have a policy before us within 60 days that would hopefully, you know, be approved of by this body, that would then, you know, set in motion the framework for how that conversation with local 2795 would happen. But absent the policy being finalized within 60 days, the manager's office would just still engage in conversation without a policy dictating how they do so.
And just as Chair, Attorney Drake, you know, this is all subject to my signature, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or your failure to act. If you don't do anything within 10 days, it becomes law without your signature.
Resolution does.
The resolution, resolution ordinance are the same. Under the charter, the mayor has authority to veto a resolution or ordinance.
Okay. Just want to make it very clear.
I move to hold the consideration of this ordinance until the next voting meeting in January, till the January voting meeting.
Would you be comfortable doing?
There's a substitute motion for a hold. Is there a second to move to the substitute motion? All right, substitute dies for lack of a second.
Hang on, I don't know if it's going to be like a second or not. I just want us to think through this, because if the votes aren't there for this ordinance, then maybe holding it is the best option to do something with it. So, I'll second it.
All right, there's now motion to hold.
And that still allows for, if the mayor does sign the resolution, for those actions to take place, and if not, then we'll have an opportunity to discuss overriding that veto, which will take seven votes.
So, to clarify, is this a hold to a date certain, or just a hold to lay on the table?
Till the January, hold until the January voting meeting.
Currently, we have essentially skeleton agenda in January. Do you want to hold till the February meeting, just as a functional matter?
We could also hold till the meeting next week. I think, I think holding.
I mean, January, that gives a month to have some more conversation about the contours of this ordinance. And I'll speak to it. We have a second. I'll speak to it as the motion maker. Some folks need some more time to think about, think this over. 30 days. And we're also going to have some new members on this body who can consider this matter as part of the budget-making process coming forward, so.
Did you have a comment on your second?
No, I've made my comments.
My comment?
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Myers' earlier questions were satisfied.
Yes, they're satisfied, in that, I'll reiterate, though, that even if the ordinance is not passed and this resolution goes forward, there would be communication with the firefighters' union. The way this is written, so, yes, yeah.
I would definitely support holding it till January. And just the debate and confusion we're having right here now, I am very convinced I've made the right decision. If we're confused, the people watching got to be just as confused. So, holding it until January would be fine.
Make sure nobody else is interested in taking the floor. Go ahead, Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, I just, I hope that we're not conflating confusion with nervousness and indecisiveness, because that's a bit what this seems like to me. I don't see what's confusing here. However, you know, I won't be supporting the motion to hold, but I will be glad to have this conversation again whenever we have the opportunity. And I intend to continue to support trying to see this through in whatever way possible.
I just want to, just let me get Attorney Drake, and then I want to recognize Manager Williams.
Well, just look at the rules of the commission. It just says that, "When a subject is before the commission with consideration for final disposition, no motion shall be received, but one to adjourn, two to lay on the table, three to pass out with no objection, four to the previous question, five to postpone indefinitely, six to postpone to a date certain, seven to commiserate, eight to amend." So, I think what we really want to do here is postpone to a date certain.
Yes.
And I'm agreeable with that. And I will say this, you know, I'm not looking at it as a nervousness. I know some do need some more information, that's fine, I want to respect that. There's no nervousness on some of our parts, because I'd be ready to support the ordinance. But I'm being realistic in counting, you know, the votes. If five to four pass the resolution, we need six votes to pass an ordinance, the votes need to be there. And if helping allow more time gives more understanding of things, then that's something we should do, Commissioner Hul, so that we get, so that we do what the folks here are asking us to do. Thank you.
All right, I want to recognize Manager Williams, that I have a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this has been characterized as sort of a management versus employee, and that's, I think, indicative of what we're doing here. And I want to say that I think that we do value our employees across all departments, and this elected body has made some recent considerable enhancements in compensation benefits and working conditions, and I can extol those. But the one I want to point out in reference to a statement that was made tonight is that employees such as firefighters serve, they have protections under our personnel system, including due process and terminations, and not in terms of that will, as was stated tonight. In fact, I know that you, many of you, all of you have conversations with employees. I mean, that's just, that's how it happens. I've seen employee names on your cellphones when they pop up when we're in a meeting. Nobody's been terminated at will. So, I just wanted to dispel that notion.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to say something in regards to that, because I've had many times, and I've got some texts to show that, you know, when you first became manager, that you didn't appreciate me talking to some employees about some things. And I just want to make that clear. The communications, the communication works everywhere, Manager Williams, and that's not, you know, I've heard on several occasions, "Not to talk to commissioners." So, I'm just bringing it up. I wasn't going to broach that subject, but since you mentioned it, I had to say it.
Mr. Chair, maybe we could just speak to the motion to hold.
I am speaking to the motion. I'm speaking to Manager Williams' comments.
I get it, I get it, I get it. Just as parliamentary procedure.
Yeah, I'm not interested in a text debate or otherwise regarding anybody's electronic communication. You know, what I really want to do is zero in on the substance of the two questions on the floor today.
It was on the substance.
So, we've got a handful of comments, and just want to say, I very much appreciate everybody who came out tonight, especially those who spoke at the podium. Every so often, I have to speak at a mic in a public meeting that is not in this space, and it makes me nervous when I have to do that. So, I appreciate everybody who is willing to come up and speak so fervently about this, and about the ability of employees to have a dignified place, and a place where their human needs, their financial needs, and their health and safety needs are satisfied. And I'm speaking also as somebody who, for two decades, was a member of the National Education Association and the Georgia Association of Educators, and a proud member, and utilized their professional services in that capacity. I had an opportunity to really be part of multiple large public sector organizations. This is the third in a row, and held both line staff and leadership positions in all of those. One of the phenomenon in large organizations is that everybody is looking around at everybody else's experience. It's simply the nature, whether you work at a university or a local government, whether you work in the public sector or the private sector, everybody's conscious of how everybody else is situated. So, when I worked in two different public school systems in succession, I was conscious of what the experience of the paraprofessionals was, and the guidance counselors, and social workers, and the bus drivers, and the cafeteria workers, and those in administration, and the school suspension teacher. And I think a healthy organization is doing everything it can to create a strong platform for everyone. And, of course, the members of this body have been part of that for a number of years now, and I very much appreciate that effort. And it's not been an easy effort, because we've entered into an entirely new pay scale format. We have also been able to allocate funds for both public safety workers and other municipal employees to see very significant pay raises. And we're in the midst of some conversations right now about additional benefits improvements on top of the additional time off that was just approved this last year. That's really where I want to see the bulk of this conversation to continue. And so, in the new year, I'm very glad to assign to committee question of employee engagement and benefits broadly. I want to see that be a broad-based phenomenon, because I have experienced the fracturing and atomization that can happen when you don't have the broad conversations, but you have narrow conversations. So, I am going to veto the resolution, and I would, in fact, veto the ordinance had it passed. And I just want to make that explicitly clear, so that everybody knows that. So, I do want to go ahead and move to the vote that is on the floor. So, we've got a motion and a second, and so I'm going to ask for a roll call from Clerk Spratlin.
To hold the motion?
The motion is the substitute motion to hold till date certain of January.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
No?
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Six yes, three no.
All right, six to hold till January. All right. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn special call session.
I move to adjourn the special call session.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Thornton to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, time is 7:51. Go ahead and have a break until 8:05, and we'll resume with our monthly business meeting at 8:05.
Welcome everyone to our regular business meeting of Tuesday, December 6, 2022. We will begin as last time with a roll call.
Devin Porter.
Here.
Here.
Right.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Hool.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we are going to begin with approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, November 1st, Tuesday, November 15th, and the November non-voting meetings. I hear a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve?
Mayor, before we do, I wanted to make a parliamentary inquiry, I guess, to see if, asking Mr. Attorney if we could, if I could possibly do a vote to reconsider from the meeting that we just came out of.
What would you be wanting to reconsider?
To reconsider both items. To...
Reconsider the motion to postpone.
Yeah. And also the resolution.
Oh.
And wanting to therefore just hold both items together since they go together.
Let me read the rule to you. Motion to reconsider, this is from the Rules of the Commission. Subsection A, Section 13, motion to reconsider subsection A. Before the minutes of the preceding meeting of the commission shall be read or approved, read or approved without reading, any member of the prevailing side on a matter previously disposed of may move for reconsideration of any matter therein contained except such as has already been subject of a motion to reconsider. Subsection B, motions for reconsideration matters we made and voted on no later at the meeting following the meeting at which the matter was decided and shall be made before the minutes of said previous meeting are approved. However, actions on the amendment to a pending matter may be reconsidered at any time before final action on the ordinance, resolution, or other matter to which the amendment relates. So, the second matter which has been tabled, or postponed to January, to me is a pending matter because there hasn't been a final decision. So y'all can make that motion reconsider at any time before final action. Now, and Ms. Jean and I also discussed this because you brought this up to me in the hall, you know, she says this body's always interpreted that the motion of reconsideration has to be made before the minutes are read at the next regular commission meeting. I'm not sure that's how I read it here, but she said that's how it's always been interpreted by this body. Is that right, Ms. Jean? So I would say with respect to the first matter, you can make that motion, she would say, based on past practice, it needs to be made, for the one that passed the resolution, it needs to be made at the next regular meeting before the minutes are being read. That's what Ms. Jean is saying. It's not sure how I'm reading this, but she says how it's always been applied. It's a little confusing because it does say, "and shall be made before the minutes of said previous meeting are approved." I could interpret that so you could do it at this meeting here. It's the next meeting, it should be done now. But I'm gonna go with past what our practice is at this body. But with the other matters, what's been tabled, it says it can be done at any time to reconsider. Another thing, I'm not sure, I guess your reconsiderance, you want to put it all further. So I guess that's appropriate, that's how you could, you know.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that January's gonna be a very tough time with new commissioners coming on immediately. And I'd like to go ahead and just, yeah, so I guess for at least that matter then, on the ordinance, I will make motion to reconsider.
All right, so the motion from Commissioner Denson to reconsider the ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, second from Commissioner Link. All right, and then we need a vote on that matter.
Yes, exactly.
Commissioner Denson has made the motion. Commissioner Link has seconded reconsideration. If at all in favor of reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Commissioners Davenport and Wright opposed to reconsideration. But given majority, motion for reconsideration is affirmed. And so Commissioner Denson, would you like to make a new motion regarding the matter?
I would. I would like to go ahead and hold this till the date of our April 2023 meeting, which, I don't get the exact date. So till April 4th is my motion. Does that seem correct?
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, not sure. All right.
All right, motion to hold the ordinance.
The ordinance, right.
Till April 4th. Motion's from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor of holding until April 4th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Wright's opposed to holding the ordinance, please note. All right.
And just for clarification, then, for the resolution, then you believe that would have to be done at the January meeting, correct? Okay, thank you. So then, that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, now we'll return to approval of those minutes.
Let me say, I'm acting consistently what the Clerk has told me is always been practiced at this body.
I guess ruling as what would be our parliamentarian here, right?
Well...
Well, Kelly would be, yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, you know, except the collective reading of Clerk Spratlin and Attorney Drake.
Okay.
Appreciate that. I had never had the experience of reconsideration within a separate meeting that was not the meeting at which the minutes were approved. Although I had once had the experience of reconsideration within the same meeting that the item occurred, but of course, we're not in the same meeting, we're in a separate meeting. So, unique evening. Everybody enjoy that moment. All right, I believe earlier Commissioner Hool had made a motion for approval of the minutes that I identified. Is there a second for approval of those minutes?
Second.
All right, got a second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thanks, everyone. Madam Clerk, is there any written communication this evening?
No.
All right, no written communication tonight. All right, we have several, several opportunities for public input, my friends. We have an opportunity on the consent agenda. We have an opportunity on old and new business. There are separate opportunities on each of the four planning and zoning items. And then at the end of the meeting, there's an opportunity for input from the public on any item not on tonight's agenda. Generally speaking, rules of public input are the same regardless of the setting. Public input takes the place of a three-minute block of time. There's a light on Clerk Spratlin's desk. It will turn green when it is time for you to begin, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when that three minutes has expired. So, consent agenda items tonight are items 1 through 20. And congratulations to you at your agenda-setting meeting, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Myers, for being so expeditious in shifting items to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to any of these consent agenda items tonight, items 1 through 20?
Mr. Hill.
All right.
Hi, I'm Alan Jones, 195 Xavier. I'm gonna speak on a few items tonight, so I figure this'll get me out of here a little bit early. First one on the consent agenda is the Macon Highway Boat Launch. I just want to thank you all for approving that. The residents of that area are going to like it, the people of the town will like it. As the founder of Athens Paddlers, which now has over 1,000 local kayakers in this town, we're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to taking Ovita and Willie and hopefully her family back out kayaking again for that one. And also want to say that I liked the discussion on Prince Avenue. I am a cyclist and I have used that quite a bit more since it's become safe. Tim, you probably want to use Boulevard to get the first part and avoid Prince and it's...
Coming from the other side of town.
It's much better. But anyway. Also, want to thank you for tonight voting on the multi-use path on Timothy Road. We've been working on that for quite a long time. I want to thank Commissioner Hamby for the Macon Highway Boat Ramp and for the multi-use path. He's been very involved. Thank you for the work that you've done with District 10 over the years. Hope you do good with your new District 10. Also notice your HRC score came out for the municipal equity index, and you're up by a significant amount thanks to the Non-Discrimination Ordinance and Human Relations Committee. Thank you for that. Thank you for your continued work at bringing that score up higher each year. There's still a lot to be done. I look forward to working with the new commissioners coming on to bring that score up even higher. And other than that, those of you that will not be around next month, thank you for your service. And I'm sure you'll be around, just in different chairs. So Merry Christmas, or whatever holiday you celebrate, and thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Would anyone else like to speak to the consent agenda? Again, those are items 1 through 20 on the agenda in front of you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Brooks, and I'm kind of going off the agenda. I didn't anticipate this would be as long as it has been. So I'm going to speak on the new development on 1165 Overthorpe Avenue.
Ms. Brooks, that is at the, toward the end of the evening. Yes, ma'am.
So I have to wait.
Apologize.
Mayor, could we make an exception for, because of the hour?
But by consent of the body, would you accept resident input on zoning items? All right, Ms. Brooks, come on up.
Yes.
The body has recognized that, given the lateness of the hour.
Okay, is it okay that my crew comes with me? Because I've got a couple of people that are here who would like to speak as well, or you just guys...
How many of your crew?
We have two other people that would like to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
We've got three minutes.
May I move to amend the agenda to consider item...
Yeah.
30 after the consent agenda?
All right.
Yeah.
Would everybody accept consideration of this?
Well, hang on a minute, hang on. If we're gonna do it for one, we've got to do it for all of the zoning items. So if the amendment could be made to, after consent agenda, to just move straight to public, or just straight to public hearing.
Would the body accept moving zoning items following consent agenda?
You see, to be flexible when people have left already and are coming back later. If somebody comes back.
Prospect.
There's some people who left because it was gonna be a while.
But I would be happy to amend the agenda to have the zoning items. I do want a motion for that, just to make it official for the record.
Yep.
Motion to amend the agenda for zoning items to follow consent.
May I amend my motion to say, a motion to take public input on the zoning items only, and then we'll still do our deliberation at the end? Does that address your concern, Commissioner Wright?
No, our concern is people leaving. That may come back later.
But then they'd still have that opportunity because we'd still be considering the item later and could take public input again.
I mean, I'm also trying to be mindful of staff to, I mean, you know, if we could just get moving on all this.
So be explicit about the motion?
Move, motion to accept public input on the zoning and planning items after approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Hool to accept public input on planning and zoning items following consent. Second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are gonna consider our consent agenda. I'll call you up in just a minute, okay?
Okay.
All right.
We get mixed up on content.
All right. So items 1 through 20 are consent. Is there anybody else who would like to provide input on those items, 1 through 20? All right, seeing none, I'd like to ask the commission, is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
One for a question. It's number nine.
All right, gonna remove number nine for discussion.
Or, sorry, my mistake. Number 11, not number nine.
All right, number 11.
Oh, yeah.
Remove for discussion.
I'd like to remove number seven.
All right, and number seven. All right, any others that any commissioner would like to remove for discussion? All right, so I would entertain a motion for adoption or approval of items 1 through 6, 8, 9, 10, and 12 through 20.
Some moved.
Wait, not nine, right?
Not nine, not seven.
No, not 11 and not seven.
Oh, not 11.
Not 11 and not seven, thank you.
I'm being banned later.
Approval of consent agenda, not seven and 11.
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Denson. Is there any ordinance to read, Attorney Drake?
There are three ordinances, items 1, 2, and 3. Item 1, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to revenue generally and for other lawful purposes. Item 2, an ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for bio-solids, hauling, and disposal, and for other purposes. Item 10, an ordinance to amend the Transportation Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax 2018 Program Budget, so as to provide additional funding for Project Number 05 of Coney Rivers Greenway Program and for other purposes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're gonna go ahead and call for public input on any planning and zoning item. Come on up, please, ma'am. Ms. Brooks?
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Brooks, and I live at 155 Landor Drive, and that's in the Forest Heights community. There's a new subdivision that's being built on 1165 Overthorpe. And we have found out that the staff has suggested that there is a street that goes directly from Overthorpe through the community onto Landor. That actually impacts our street in Forest Heights. So we have had many discussions with the developers, and they have come up with a great design that takes that street away. So I am here to just reinforce what the developers are doing. They have actually really sat down, and we've had discussions. I had discussion with the commissioner, our commissioner, and we've had awesome discussions about how to effectively join this community with ours. And they, like I said, they come up with a great plan. And so I'm just here to say, I hope that you guys will go with the new development plan, and that you will also see that we, on Landor, get kind of a buffer that allows us to maintain the whole nostalgia feeling of Forest Heights. The name of Forest Heights means a lot. It's a very lush place that has trees, and the neighborhood is just a really nice neighborhood. And so we would still like to continue to have that same feeling, even with the new development coming. There are a lot of people in our neighborhood who want this new development. They are so excited about Hendershot's. I'll be honest, I'm not one. But I know change, I can't stop change, but I hope that change, the change that comes can work with the community as well as the new development, and that we can work together to make everything work well for everyone. And so I'm just requesting that that street does not get put in from Landor, from Overthorpe to Landor. I'm also requesting that you guys really consider keeping a nice buffer between our residential area and the neighborhood, because our street on, the Landor Street is a street that, it's a small street, but it's a well-used street. People love to jog there, they love to stroll their kids. We have kids that go from the school, and they come back and forth, you know, they go to school, going home and going to school. They use Landor as a major hub to use the road, they use the road all the time. So to protect our community as well as the new community that's coming through, I just ask that you guys continue to look at the planning and go with the developers. And I thank you for just hearing me out.
Thank you, Susan. Would anyone else like to speak to item 30? This is 1165 Ogglethorpe.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I live on the other side of the, sorry, my name's Robert Kelleher. I live at 135 Breckenridge Lane, which is on the other side of this development adjacent on the west side of it. Lived there for about 16 years. All of these Breckenridge Lane residents, Justin and Susan who are speaking, have lived there, and another neighbor of ours, have lived there since before the rezoning in 2013, I believe it was. And we're asking for the commission to require that the buffer between our properties and this development be at least as substantial as the one approved by the commission around the time of that rezoning, with the fence and the rows of bushes and trees. I would hope to have a higher fence. I think we're talking about a five or six-foot-high fence, which is not really much of a privacy fence. Headlights from cars in that business area would be shining in the upper floors of our houses on Breckenridge, while it takes, you know, five or 10 years for those trees to fill in their density. I have no objection to this development. I'm a big fan of Seth Hendershot and his business ventures for many years, and will surely patronize his café. I see there's, I think, gonna be a dog park as well, certainly be frequenting that. My concern is that as folks who invested in this historic decades-old neighborhood, and some of us have raised families here, I have a wife and three kids that have grown up there, we would like to keep the residential feel of our neighborhood community separate, not in distance, but in aesthetic, the way Susan was talking about, from that new business district. We just want to ensure that these new businesses and the families can coexist with the least amount of disruption and also be, you know, mutually beneficial, as we will certainly happily be spending our money there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else like to speak to the Ogglethorpe program?
Hi, I'm Justin Sanders. I live at 125 Breckenridge Lane. So my backyard, almost like Rob's, is backing up to the western edge of this development. And I just want to reiterate what Rob said and say that I also support this development, and I also support the commissioner-defined option, which Commissioners Hool and Denson are proposing tonight, which add in the fence and the planted buffer to the western edge of the zoning. And I'd just like to point out that when the commission rezoned this back in 2013, that was a part of the binding site plan, and we just asked to have an equivalent buffer applied in this new rezoning. And as Rob said, a higher fence would be preferable. There is, if you look at the plan, the Breckenridge residents essentially get the road that goes to the front to the back of the property, and there's a daycare that's also on the Breckenridge side. So it's mostly car traffic, it's not residential backyards or anything like that. So there's a lot of public traffic that passes, and a higher fence would be better for providing the privacy, again, while the trees that are on the commissioner-defined option grow into their full height. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Would anyone else like to speak to item 30, 1165 Ogglethorpe? Good evening.
Hello, I'm Fred Smith. I live at 3, well, actually, 425 Realmont Road. So that's in Forest Heights on the backside. But I'm here to speak in favor of this development. It's unlike a development that we had a lot of concerns with that's nearby before. And I think this one has taken in considerations of the people in both of these existing neighborhoods, and I think both neighborhoods are pleased with the way this is being done. And so I want to say that I'm in favor of this. And of course, we all know there's a great need for affordable housing, and so a big part of this is housing. We need housing, whether it's full or not. So I support that. And while I'm here, I also want to speak, if possible, on item 33. Can I do that? Is that proper for me to make comments on that one then?
Yeah, as long as you're speaking about a zoning item, go right ahead.
Okay, all right. I just think that we need to make sure that we move very carefully when we make these type of changes, because if we don't, again, we will get and have seen maybe intended or unintended consequences. I do a lot of work over in East Athens, and it's been almost like a free-for-all for developers, and it has had, and it is having a negative impact on existing property owners. So I think we need to be very careful when we make those type of changes that we don't become, you know, not against developers doing certain development, that we don't make that more of something that they would look forward to as a way to make money and build units in people's backyards. So I think we need to be very carefully on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, anyone else here to speak to item 30 on Ogglethorpe?
Mr. Mayor, quick point of clarification. Are we able to speak later when you are deliberating the zoning so that we can be here to answer the questions?
We'd certainly be glad to get questions. You know, I'd prefer not to bifurcate the public input into two sections, but certainly, as is always the case, if commissioners have questions about the components, I'm always glad to call up designers or...
Okay, we'll stick around then.
Okay.
Okay, I will go ahead and speak.
Okay.
If that's okay. All right. My name's Josh Coons with Coons Environmental Design, and I live at 205 Clover Street here in Athens, and I'm working with the applicant who will speak after me. Given the duration at this point in tonight's meeting, I'm gonna skip a little bit of the intro that we had prepared. We presented the meeting at the agenda-setting, or the project at the agenda-setting meeting. We're happy to speak to that later when you deliberate this. I think what we'd like to talk about is the CDO options that have been presented. I think what we'd like to talk about is the CDO options that have been presented. We have been working with the neighborhood and we certainly understand their concerns with respect to the buffer on the western property line, the future multi-use trail that we know is coming down the line and the crosswalk that we discussed at the last meeting. First, with regard to the buffer, we did leave the planning commission meeting with a scenario for fencing and/or vegetation as one of those recommendations because it's not exactly required. Fence, we thought at the time would be the most effective way to alleviate the residents' concerns for headlight intrusion and pedestrian cut-through. The vegetative component, if it's going to be required, and we certainly understand the intent and the request to do so, we would just like that to be a little bit more clearly defined. Specifically, evergreen plants are typically referred to when they're planted by height. The CDO refers to it by caliper and the caliper reference can be actually really large for an evergreen plant and specifically larger than what would normally be required in the buffer planting. Specifically, Section 925 AG requires that the parking lot screening, that we have a component that is required on the property already, be 36 inches at the time of planting. So, there's a little bit of a disparity there that we'd just like to clear up if the planting's going to be required so that we can make sure that we have some consistency. Additionally, we would just request that the spacing of those plants be clarified as well. Typically, industry standards, we would plant at two-thirds of a plant's mature width. That could range anywhere from six to eight feet to 10 to 12 feet, depending on which species. We're happy to work with the native species that were referenced. We just want to make sure that we have something on the table that planning can use to look at this later. So, for the second component, the future multi-use pathway that the city will install at a later date, we'll be more than happy to provide the land necessary to accommodate that. There is a portion of the frontage where we'll need to donate some of our land to make the necessary right-of-way and we're happy to make that happen as noted previously. For the crosswalk, as we stated in the agenda setting meeting, we're more than happy to contribute to the cost of the crosswalk, cost of the crosswalk, excuse me, for the upgrades noted in the CDO. We would just request that we have some means to ensure that the project can obtain certificates of occupancy if for some reason the crosswalk upgrades would be delayed at no fault to the project. We'd be happy to pitch in the money, we just got to make sure that there's some mechanism there that if transportation or who knows what happens...
Thanks, Josh.
We'd be able to... Sorry, thank you. Denson, red light.
Good evening. I'm Matt Hall, 825 Hill Street, and I'm one of the owners and developers of the project. And I just wanted to say a few words about our vision here. What we're trying to do is mixed-income housing with five units permanently affordable to 80% AMI families, mixed-age housing with seven units restricted to older Athenians in the rear cottage court closer to Landor Drive. And then critically important to us, owner-occupied business spaces, the Hendershot space and the Destined Inc. daycare space. We have MOUs with both of those, with Seth Hendershot and with Dr. Maddox and her sister, giving them the option to purchase those spaces. So, we'll build them and it specifies that we'll sell it to them at cost plus a small percentage of what it costs us, which is financially foolish. Nobody does that in commercial real estate development because there's a lot more money to be made in continuing to own the project and siphon off a lot of the value of their business over the years. And that's why Ike and Jane closed. As we all know, their rent went way, way up when it was time to renew their 10-year lease. And so, the promise we've made to both of our commercial partners on this project is that that won't happen to them. They can buy the space and own it and have a fixed-rate mortgage, pay it down in 20 years instead of having the rent be three times as high, they'll have the mortgage paid off and they'll own the space and all the value of their business will accrue to them and their families. And that's just something that is important to me and Joe to do to create shared opportunity for these wonderful local businesses. So, that's what we're trying to do and we'll be here later to answer questions. I also wanted to, I spoke with Dr. Twana Smith-Maddox earlier. She has an 8:00 AM flight. She was here but was unable to stick around, but she just wanted to, you've heard from her before and she wanted me to give her apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else here to speak to item 30?
I just had a quick question. I wasn't going to speak to item 30, I was going to speak more to 33 since we're...
So, we're, the Commissioner amended the agenda to take planning and zoning item as a component following the...
Just that one item.
Agenda setting. So, we're going to be looking at all four planning and zoning items in sequence and so, we're just wrapping up 30 now.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak to item 30, Oglethorpe Avenue? All right, I'm going to move on to item 31, 3321, 3331 Lexington Road. Anyone else here to speak to 3331 Lexington Road?
Hi, good evening. My name is Matt Simms with Gonzales Strength and Associates out of Birmingham, 1550 Woods of River Chase Drive, Hoover. I'm the civil engineer on the project representing Whataburger and Shaver Construction, more so to be a voice of any questions that come up as y'all begin your discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else here to speak to Lexington Road? All right, seeing none, is there anyone else here to speak to item 33 that regards modification, excuse me, 32 regarding modifications of CGE and I zones regarding research and development uses? Is there anyone else here to speak to 33, which is regarding accessory dwelling units? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kathy Harv and I'm afraid you guys are going to be seeing a lot more of me now because my community is in crisis. In 2009, I never thought I was going to be able to buy a house, but I took advantage of that dip in the market. As a professional housing advocate doing nonprofit work married to a self-employed graphic designer, the only way we could have bought a house was because we bought a duplex. And 75% of that rental income counted towards our qualifying income to buy. 2016, I moved to Athens because I have a lot of friends here, they're musicians and artists. Consequently, that means they're also bartenders and cooks. Some of them wrote to you yesterday. Now, they're talking about leaving. The reason I came to Athens, they're all talking about leaving. They need help. They need housing. Sensible infill, like accessory dwelling units, ought to be a no-brainer. I've heard some of the deliberations. I want to remind everyone, short-term rentals are already allowed to be built. They're already built. They already make noise. They already take up parking. They already are feeding corporate profiteers. The, sorry, I thought I had all night to sit there and plan out this. Now, I have to make it up. Anyhow, noise is a secondary concern when we're talking about a basic human need. You know, this is Athens and we all like to talk a lot about our ideas, but I want to remind you also that the planning commission had more time than you will ever have to look at this in great detail and they voted humanously to pass something along to you. So, I just wanted to say that, speaking as a fellow former elected official, don't make it more complicated than it needs to be. Do it now. You can always fix it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is anyone else here to speak to item 33 regarding accessory dwelling units? Evening.
Hello again. Thank you for being here and especially so late. And I too thought I was watching from home and it's like, oh, wait. Luckily, I looked pretty close. My name is Alice Kinman. I live at 457 Sunset Drive. And as you know, because I spoke to you before, I had the honor to chair the Mayor's Working Group on Inclusionary Housing that brought forward the proposal that's before you tonight. I really listened very carefully to your discussion at the agenda setting meeting and I thought it was very thoughtful. I heard three main concerns, parking, traffic, and short-term rentals. Regarding parking, I do think that Melissa Link's Commissioner-defined option does a lot to alleviate those concerns, so I fully support that if that's the way you want to go. Regarding traffic, I just have to say, one of the best ways to ensure that we're going to have a lot more traffic on our roads throughout the county is to make it impossible for large segments of our workforce to live closer to their jobs. That's, you know, Athens is going to keep growing as an employment center, we hope, and you know, as long as we all agree with that, we're going to have more traffic. And we have other ways to address those issues. Regarding short-term rentals, that to me is the most close to home and I totally understand concerns that these text amendments will, you know, maybe create a rapid influx of short-term rentals. And actually piggybacking off the person who just spoke, the fact is that our current ordinance already allows people to build short-term rentals in the backyards of their single-family homes. They're called guesthouses. They are the same as ADUs without a stove. So, essentially, what we're doing with our current laws is we are permitting people to build short-term rentals and we're forbidding them to build long-term rentals. To me, that is so completely out of sync with our community's needs and goals that are already in the comprehensive plan and in fact, values that I really don't, I really don't understand why this is a difficult step to take. I'll just finish by saying that I think that what's being proposed here, these are small, fairly minor text amendments. Essentially, they allow stoves in guesthouses that are already permitted by right. This is a good way to put our foot in the door, to open up more housing options for a larger range of incomes of our citizens. So, thank you very much. Look forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you, Alice. Evening.
Good evening. Robert Flanagan, 215 Gressom Street. Wanted to just speak briefly to item 33 about accessory dwellings. I think it would be important for us to explore many types of housing. I understand the concern that many people in the neighborhood may have, but I just also want to remind people that in 2016 or around that time, when we were talking about infill housing, I was trying to urge the then-commission to pass something that would protect neighborhoods that are zoned multifamily because those ordinances then applied to multifamily zones. And that's one of the issues that what we're seeing that's happening now in East Athens that's exacerbating certain pressures because certain things are allowed in a multifamily zone. Those big out-of-scale houses that you see over there by the racetrack, the half a million dollar houses that are putting pressure on Little Oak Street and those other streets like adjacent to that, those developments. I think Melissa Link, Allison Wright, and Mike Hamby were there on the commission when I was coming to speak about that, how we need to open up that ordinance and to alleviate some of those pressures. But now, like Ms. Kinman was saying, we need to explore these different types of options because we're in crisis mode. And again, I understand, like in certain neighborhoods, people may not want certain types of development, but I think there are ways that we can come to a compromise, you know, with some of those neighbors and thinking about the people who are being displaced and/or unhoused right now. And it's just, you know, I think it's important for us to really consider these options that we have in front of us to create more types of housing and housing options.
Thanks, Robert. All right, speaking to item 33.
Hi, my name is Heather Fletcher and I live at 136 Sylvia Circle. I'll keep this short since I was more verbose in the email I sent to everyone yesterday and today. I'm in favor of this proposal. It's like Alice Kinman said, you're adding a stove to something that's already allowed by rights. People do them illegally, they close their permit and add a stove later. So, the impact, the perceived impact of this is very negligible because guesthouses already exist as part of our code. As a local real estate broker, we need more housing and we need housing people can actually afford to live in. My philosophy on affordable housing is that you can control it from a rental aspect. You can't really control it from a for-sale aspect unless you are a land trust or have it to effort humanity. So, by having more rentals, eventually people living in a single person in a two-bedroom house might say, oh, maybe I'll go live in this one-bedroom house in an in-town neighborhood. Well, now you freed up a two-bedroom house. A couple living in a three-bedroom house might say, we like each other enough to move into a one-bedroom, so we'll do the same and we need more housing. And this is a very easy, low-hanging piece of fruit to accomplish that goal. So, I urge you all to vote for this, specifically for the Commission-defined option. I do think one bedroom is enough when you're stacking these units behind other houses and that's all I have, so thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Heather. All right, speaking to item 33. Be good, Judd.
Hi there, Lucy Harrison. I live at 116 Colonial Drive. I also moved here in 2016, had real trouble finding a place to rent. It literally got to the point where I thought I was going to have to move into a hotel in order to accept my dream job up here in Athens. I did eventually find something. After looking for three months, I found something two weeks before I had to move. I'm now a homeowner, I'm in a homeowner and a house that's too big for me. I would love to be able to build an auxiliary dwelling behind that house and free up the five bedrooms that are currently just going to be me and when my daughter moves out in a year, it'll be just me and my cat in that house. So, that would be a fantastic option for me to be able to build that dwelling and have it. I understand absolutely the concerns about the short-term rentals. I think that's a separate issue. I think these auxiliary units are going to be long-term rentals. I think that that's how they should be perceived and with the owners of the house right there on property, it's going to cut down also on the partying that goes on, being unable to find the actual owner of a house late at night when you need them to be quiet, say, can you get your guests to? That's what's going on in my neighborhood right now. There are whole houses that are being rented out and having parties and nobody can find the owner to track them down. If the owner's right there, that would alleviate that. So, I'm 100% in favor of this. I hope that you will consider it and I hope that, I know that you're also going to be looking at those short-term rentals, which I think honestly are a far, far bigger issue for this community when it comes to availability of housing, taking up affordable housing from other residents who could use it and having a negative impact on communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else speaking to 33?
My name's Jeb Bradbury. I live at 124 Thompson Circle. If affordable housing is what you're trying to do, what you're going to enact tonight is going to do the exact opposite. Homebuyers will be competing with investors. And when I say investors, these investors are going to be coming from out of town, Atlanta, China, Real Estate Trust, and they're going to be building accessory dwellings in your neighborhoods, Beechwood, Green Acres, Cedar Creek, University Heights, Timothy Road, just pick a neighborhood, any neighborhood, and that's what's going to happen. I have a client that owns about 50 houses, all of them inside the loop and single-family. When I told him about this, he was the happiest guy in town. He said, every one of my properties is going to increase in value, about $50,000 because I've got a building right behind it. Two and a half million dollar windfall for him, he's the happiest guy in town. So, y'all need to know that what you're trying to do, you're going to create the exact opposite of what you're trying to do. One thing I would suggest would be, I mean, we've got student housing projects that are going up, you know, on Broad Street, Lexington Road, Harris Street. When these come online, a lot of these students are going to move out of some of these neighborhoods and it's going to create housing. You're creating your own down here on the north side of town at 900 bedrooms that's going to put a lot more affordable housing into town. So, I just think that it's something that y'all need to understand that a first-time homebuyer bidding against an investor is going to lose every time. And that's a bad deal for people who are trying to buy a house for the first time in Athens, Clark County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeb. Is anyone else here to speak to item 33?
Hi, I'm back to speak on ADUs. I'm Matt Hall, 825 Hill Street. And like Commissioner Kinman, I'm a member of the Mayor's Inclusionary Zoning Working Group that studied this and drafted the proposed ordinance. Inclusionary Zoning Working Group that studied this and drafted the proposed ordinance. And I just wanted to address one thing in particular. I've heard people say in the community on Facebook and stuff like that, that, you know, maybe we ought to, the comp plan is going to get revised in 2023, and maybe we ought to kick this can down the road a year, do the comp plan thing, and then think about if ADUs make sense. So let me clarify something. This proposal is an implementation of policies that y'all have already adopted in a comp plan. The 2018 comp plan says we need ADUs in Athens, Clark County. You already have approved that. This body has already determined that we need ADUs. And this is a common theme. State law requires us to update our comprehensive plan every five years. Big cities have big planning departments, and they not only update their comp plan, they then implement the changes in zoning ordinances. Our department has some more staffing concerns and has never really had that practice. So, this simply implements our existing policies that y'all have already adopted. 2018 comp plan said we need to do this. Mayor Gertz appointed a committee in 2019 of the Planning Commission that generated a recommendation, and then the inclusionary zoning work happened immediately after that. I'm going to quote to you from the 2018 comprehensive plan. It says that Athens should pursue the allowance of in-law suites and studios, that we should promote infill housing, and I quote, "We should create quality housing for older adults using innovative techniques like accessory dwelling units." So it's already a policy that the county has adopted. And not only are there all these statements of policy, page 59 of the 2018 comp plan specifically provides a timeline for developing and adopting ADU standards, and it says that that needs to happen in 2021 and 2022. So here we are. And interesting historical note, the five-year earlier comp plan in 2013 said exactly the same stuff. We need to adopt ADUs and smaller units and infill housing. It said we need to do that, and it provided a timeline. It said we should implement that from 2014 to 2018. Previous commissions have kicked this can down the road for 10 years. I didn't even look back at the 2007 comp plan. It may be in there, too. But for at least 10, maybe more years, we've had commissions that unfortunately just deferred this decision and didn't enact it. And my opinion is that we cannot keep kicking the can down the road. Athens, Clark County needs this stuff. People need housing. If this had been adopted, you might wonder how many of these are going to get built. Mr. Griffin in the Planning Department told our group that 75 guest houses without stoves get approved every year in Athens, Clark County. That's how many are getting built now without stoves. So at least that many would probably be built with stoves, and maybe more. Once you legalize ADUs that people can have families live in, it's more likely that even more would get built, so.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak to 33?
Hey there. David Hyde, 190 Endale Avenue. I think Matt summed it up. We needed to get this ADU started. It's been way too long. As a builder and homeowner in an area with multifamily, we need some tools to work with. I don't think we have many tools that are at our disposal. And this makes, you know, it can be done very well, so I don't understand why we need to keep stepping back. We need to actually push this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, David. Anyone else here to speak to item 33?
Sarah Garing, 140 Griffith Street. This is the bare minimum, the baby-step bare minimum that this body can take in enacting the comprehensive plans of the past, moving us towards an even halfway adequate supply of housing. I was shocked. I didn't say anything about this at the Planning Commission meeting where we looked at it, because it seemed very common sense to me, and I was shocked to hear the opposition that came forth in the agenda-setting session, which is why I'm here today. Maybe I shouldn't have been surprised. I understand that there might be a great fear that if you take any action, any real action, that you could be blamed for it. Whereas if you continue to do nothing, the diffuse, the consequences of inaction will remain diffuse and spread out to people's neighbors and out-of-towners and tourists and developers and the state and the president and the government generally. We have been treating the need for convenient on-street parking as more important than the need for housing. You can build a house for a rich person, one of those giant, single-family homes. You can build those anywhere, pretty much anywhere, without asking anyone's permission, just because you want to. But when it comes to making a house for a middle-class or a poor person, we got to make sure everyone has a chance to complain about that. We have to send it on for more comment. We have to kick it down the road. We have to really make sure that everybody has a chance to complain, and we have every chance to deny those people the chance to live in Athens. Homebuyers are already competing with investors. I'm just going to read some things from the SEC filings from the largest single-family rental investor and largest apartment building developer in the country. We can be adversely affected by overbuilding or high vacancy rates of homes in our markets, which could result in excess supply of homes and reduce occupancy and rental rates. This could, continued development could increase the supply of housing and create competition for rentals. This could cause us to need to do rent decreases even. These are the SEC filings of the largest investors and developers in this country. The last thing that I will say since I'm running out of time is that the 800-square-feet requirement is fine generally, but I think the one-bedroom requirement is unnecessarily restrictive. Like, you won't be able to have an office. No one's going to have three-bedroom student houses on 800 square feet. Just let people live in 800 square feet, and I don't think it's going to be the problem that you think it is. Please don't be ruled by fear. Please do something that makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, is anyone else here to speak to item 33 before we return to our old and new business? All right, thanks, everyone, for entertaining a deviation from our normal public input process. Hope everybody enjoyed that. We are going to return to old and new business. And so that includes items 7, 11, and, wait for it, 21 through 29. 7, 11, and 21 through 29. So would anyone like to speak to either 7 or 11 or 21 through 29?
Good evening, Mayor Gertz and commissioners. I'm Teresa Friedlander, 115 Middleton Place, and I'm going to be very brief and just say thank you to Commissioners Hamby and Hul for putting forward your commissioner-defined option for the Timothy Road, Mitchell Bridge project. We appreciate your help and your support, and I hope that everyone will join you in approving this. And also, I want to say thank you to Commissioners Edwards, Denson, and Link for your service, and I wish you all very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Good evening.
Joey Carter. I live at 231 Nekushe Avenue, Unit 1, and here to speak on item 24, recommendation from the Justice in Memory Committee. Hattie had to leave. She wanted, she was here to speak, and so I wanted to convey a couple of things. We have a long way to go for reparations, but the steps that have been taken here for Lenin Town, for the residents, have been huge. UGA hasn't come to the table, but many of y'all have. And Commissioner Edwards, a long time ago, we went toe-to-toe over this, but you showed some statesmanship and really advocated for this, and I want to say thank you, both from Hattie and from me. Commissioner Hamby, you have really helped Hattie along the way to navigate these steps. That's huge, because the reason, one of the reasons that, really the main reason that black communities have never been able to get justice is because the people in power have never really shown them how to navigate the system. Again, we got a long way to go. So, please support this recommendation. It is a small step to borrow Sarah's term. These are baby, small steps, but they're good steps. So, thank you, and please support this. This is what needs to be passed on to the new commission, to the new commissioners, and we'll continue to see progress with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, is anyone else here to speak to old or new business? Again, that's 7, 11, and 21 through 28. 7, 11, and 21 through 28.
Hello again, Robert Flanagan, 215 Gressom Street. I recently also want to speak in support of the Lenin Town recommendation or the Justice in Memory Team recommendation. I recently just found out that my great-grandfather, I think it is, actually had property over in the Bottoms, which was another urban renewal project. And I'm looking forward to the city government's response in expanding some of this work that Ms. Hattie, Mr. Crook, Ms. Geneva, and others have embarked on, and Joey, as well, and others who have supported. And the work that the commission has done to make sure it gets recognized. I want to echo some of the sentiments that Joey spoke about. I know we've come and criticized a lot, and we speak in certain ways to the commission because y'all are elected officials, you know, that's part of the territory. But I do appreciate some of the work around that, and I'm looking forward to continuing conversations in that vein, and to the commissioners who are rolling off. Yeah, it's been a ride, it's been a journey. I think we've both been learning together, and, you know, I wish you the best in your next endeavors.
Thank you, Robert. Is anyone else here to speak to old or new business? Again, that's item 7, 11, and 21 through 28. All right, we'll come for a commission discussion. All right, I believe the first item that was removed from the consent agenda for discussion was item 7, the Resolution in Support of Democracy in Nonpartisan Election Administration. Fitting topic for discussion today, given the hard work that our election staff and poll workers have been underway with. So Commissioner Denson, and you, floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this just formalizes, you know, our support for our election workers, all the way down from Director Sosby to fantastic individuals who work the polls when we need them to, including my wonderful wife, who hopefully is home by now. And, you know, we've really, over the first, the last two years, actually kind of counted up, and I might be missing one, but I believe that they've held at least 10 elections in the last 24 months. Since, and this doesn't count, like, early voting and everything for all those things, too. So it's very amazing, the work that they do and they pull it off. Our democracy would not run without these folks, and they're really the lifeblood that does this. And, you know, I know we've supported them with wage increases recently and multiple budget amendments to ensure that that office is well-stocked, and I believe that this just, again, formalizes our support and says that we will be there with them every step of the way, moving forward, too. So I make a motion for us to pass this.
Second. I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Hul for adoption of the resolution, item number 7. Any further discussion from the body? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going to move forward to item number 11, which is the SPOS 2020. No, not non-state on. No, there was just a misunderstanding about which item was under discussion. So Commissioner Hul, entertain a motion regarding number 11, and then any comments that you have.
I'll make a motion to approve, and then I have a question.
All right. Is there a second for?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Hul and second from Commissioner Myers. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. We had some email exchanges, and I really appreciate staff's thorough responses, as always, to our many questions, and I had kind of some follow-up ones. And basically, where we landed was, you know, there's been discussion about how to potentially incorporate a mural onto the side of this building. And I had raised up, you know, is there a way that we can get the ACAC, the Cultural Affairs Commission, to look at using some of their funding, which is so far mostly unspent, to, you know, pursue getting a mural? And I'm just curious if there's any amendment to the language of an approval tonight that we would need to do to get that ball rolling, or is that just something staff already intends to do regardless?
In regards, Commissioner, to your first question, yes. I think that'd be the most appropriate. I believe ACAC does have some unused funds that could be used for this if they would want to do that, and we would welcome their participation there. So tonight, you're being asked to approve the proposed project concept, authorize us to go to the bid and award phase, and declare that the portion of the construction budgets are appropriate for public art elements to be included. So we'll already be working with ACAC, and if you would like to add some, you know, some direction there that you would, the body would like to see a mural, and we will follow up along those lines with ACAC.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to amend my motion then, if I may, to include direction to the manager to engage with ACAC on exploring a mural at the community center.
Is that suitable for you to second, or?
Yes, it is. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mayor, just for folks that are watching, I'm sorry that I've devolved to acronyms, but the Athens Cultural Affairs Commission is who we mean by ACAC.
Long adherents to the acronyms here in this room. All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, so that dispenses with what was initially on the consent agenda. We're moving on, excuse me, to originally planned old business, item 21, and it's the Atlanta Highway Corridor Improvements Project, which also involves Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy Road project concepts, and there's a commission-defined option.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve the commission-defined option.
Yes, sir.
Yes, all right. Motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Hul.
Just one quick comment. I just want to make, point y'all's attention to the commission-defined option must have Tier 1, Number 3. It's moving the path over to the southern side instead of the northern side, and throughout the document, there's references to the northern side, but just keep in mind that what's being approved tonight is on the southern side, away from the homes that don't have much of a yard.
Thanks for that correction. I appreciate it. Second, or Commissioner Hul, any further comments?
Yeah, I want to thank staff and Commissioner Hamby for partnering to get this in the shape that it's in. I really want to thank the user group, who spent a lot of time considering it, and the many public commentators who have weighed in as well. Another change that is made on here, on the Mitchell Bridge side, is that we're starting the sidewalk from West Chester, and where there isn't already sidewalk, putting in multi-use width path to Ben Burton Park, and then making that first bridge safer to get over. So from there, that opens the door for the many more considerations we'll have to do in the coming years to try to have a connected path all the way to Atlanta Highway. And I just wanted to invite the manager to clarify, and we had this discussion in a meeting about this, what the steps will be for the user groups and the different SPOS projects moving forward in terms of, this came from an Atlanta Highway SPOS project, and now we're moving forward with T-SPOS 2023 projects for Atlanta Highway, and then Mitchell Bridge and Timothy Road separately, and so kind of how that's going to look from here after tonight.
And I'm trying to remember our conversation, and I think what we said is we didn't want to have multiple groups working in the same corridor, so that ultimately, we'll have, you know, one user group with these various sources of funding that are making recommendations, so there's, I guess, optimal coordination and prioritization being recommended to you.
Yes, as I recall, it was to dissolve the current user group and take the remaining funds for Atlanta Highway, and when we form a user group for the T-SPOS 2023 Atlanta Highway, then the funds from the 2018 that are left over would be considered in conjunction with the 2023 funds. the 2018 that are left over would be considered in conjunction with the 2023 funds. And then that separate user group for Timothy and Mitchell Bridge would see forward this project essentially after this point.
And to explain that, I think it's clear with the commission and what you're voting on tonight, you have significant investment in this facility. And so the T-SPOLOST 2023 is naturally going to be a continuation. And so that's why, you know, the path's been set. Your direction will be heard tonight. And then, yes, I would advocate for a single user group to kind of go forward with the design. And I do, I do want to just hearken back while I've got the mic to what Commissioner Hamby said. I think it's really important, especially for folks that are watching and trying to keep up with this, but the images that are in the agenda item do not reflect the CDO and this portion that Commissioner Hamby, and that's what he was saying. So we didn't, you know, after meeting with the commissioners and understanding what they wanted, we have time to go back and recast these conceptual plans, but we will, following whatever direction you give us tonight, and then we'll have the right representation graphically.
Just one more point, if I could. I think we have this concept and then probably at some point next year, we'll have the preliminary plans that reflect what we can and cannot afford and go from there.
Absolutely.
That need to be, that will be voted on at that time.
Further comments on this agenda item? All right, appreciate you, Commissioner Hamby and you, Commissioner Hul. I mean, really just looking at the tiering, this makes a lot of sense in terms of sequence and I appreciate you teeing that up because I think it's going to be more usable for residents and users of that corridor. So I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to move on to item 22. And Commissioner Davenport, this being in your district, I know you wanted to make a motion regarding this, so I'm going to give you that opportunity now.
Yes, and I'd like to thank Judd and the fabulous Jean Spratlin for helping me with the right wordage. I'd like to put 22, item number 22, on, I would like to table it indefinitely. And when the appropriate time comes to bring it back, put it back on the agenda because it's still going through the process through the city of Winterville and Winterville. They will be addressing this issue possibly in January, but there's no definite time of when that process will be finalized. As of yesterday, the, it just, the main project just went through the planning and zoning in the city of Winterville and they unanimously denied it. So it is uncertain where it's going to be in the future. So I'd like to hold it, well, I'd like to put it, table it until further notice.
Postponing.
All right, motion from Commissioner Davenport to kind of postpone indefinitely pending action in Winterville that'll be required for this to come to fruition.
Second.
All right, second for Commissioner Hamby. Any further input? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I need to clarify something I've said so we're all on the same page. So there is a T-SPOLOST 2018 Atlanta Highway Committee, or project, and there's a 2023 T-SPOLOST Atlanta Highway. There's also now in 23, a new Timothy Mitchell Bridge road specific. Okay, so just to be clear, we're not going to have two Atlanta Highway user groups. We'll have one Atlanta Highway group and we will have one Timothy Mitchell Bridge user group, so just so y'all understand.
The project that we approved tonight will be seen forward, all those prioritizations by the Timothy Mitchell Bridge user group. And then the money that's left over from the 2018 Atlanta Highway will be considered in conjunction with the T-SPOLOST 2022 money by the Atlanta Highway user group.
Yes, thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. All right, item 23, this is the Athens Clark County Extension Agent for the Community Garden Program that we discussed several months ago. Commissioner Link, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I've been considering this more deeply and, you know, considering how important this program is, the fact that we have line item budget funding for it. I don't see a lot of substance to this proposal. And the fact that it's only impacting two gardens, which aren't even technically community gardens, they're gardens at community centers. I really would like to see this go out for an RFP to have other organizations take a shot at it because there are other groups out there that already have the infrastructure for this kind of program and are already working with youth in gardening.
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
So motion is to direct staff to craft an RFP for community garden programming.
Yes.
Direct manager.
Direct the manager, excuse me.
Yes.
Direct the manager.
It's a long way.
Motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Hamby, follow up?
I do, I think, I think what Commissioner Link was saying is good. You know, having it go through an RFP process, when it doesn't go through an RFP process, you kind of think there's a sole source that doesn't offer the same sort of services or product. Here we have, you know, some organizations that do offer this product or this service for community gardens. And I think it's just only fair for us to do it. I know we don't necessarily have to do it with ARPA dollars, but in this sort of situation, I think we ought to, just to, just to make sure we're hitting on all cylinders and getting the best, I guess, best service and go from there. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, providing this opportunity makes sense to me. Just typically when we send out RFPs, government bodies are not able to apply. And so would this RFP, as you're envisioning it, Commissioners Link and Hamby, also allow space for, you know, this proposal essentially or anything similar to also be put in the mix?
I would think so. I mean, I'd like to see the Cooperative Extension apply. I just want to see what they're actually proposing because there's not really much here.
Do we need to capture in the motion something to that effect since that's kind of an atypical way of doing an RFP?
Do we need to specify that it's open to government entities?
So that, I think it's understood the RFP would be open to public, private, nonprofit entities.
Yep.
And that's in the record and on this recording?
Are there any for-profit community gardens?
Further input, Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, but I guess, I mean, I guess I had a pretty clear idea of it because we'll be sitting through the retreat, the presentation, and we discussed this for a while. And I guess, I'm just, this is one of the things that I think we've been kicking this around for a year and a half or so? Yeah, a year and a half.
Budget prep of 21.
Yeah. And I, I guess I'm not crazy about just kicking this around even longer and then putting this on staff to have to create RFP and go through that whole process whenever we have... Yeah, I agree, this might be like, not like, I don't know, actually, I don't think, actually, I don't think this is a bad proposal. One thing I like to see this expanded, and I brought this up during the retreat when we discussed this and had the presentation, was I really saw this as being a bit of a, like we have the county arborist as almost seeing being like a county gardener position that would work not only to take care of those community gardens, but also would ensure and find ways for us to put edible plants and trees in our parks and our public spaces, increase the amount of those kind of, and vegetables and stuff, and expanding out the gardens and being able to offer these services to other people and organizations who are wanting to create community gardens. And that's what was explained, I thought, to us at the retreat. And I guess I am not crazy about putting this off for, geez, I don't know, with the capacity of staff, another six to 12 months and then, which way then we do this all over again. I think this is a pretty good proposal. I think it makes a lot of sense for the Cooperative Extension to be doing this. And actually, I think it's kind of a creative idea of creating this agent position and doing that way. Yeah. So I'm not, I'm, I don't think I'm really supporting the, I would like to see us move forward. I really would. Actually, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for us to go ahead and accept this and I'll see, there's a second.
All right, substitute motion for approval of this as presented. Second from Commissioner Hul. Commissioner Myers, you had some input?
Yeah, I have some input. I was quiet during our discussion of this when I was serving as mayor pro temp and thought, though, that this had some valid, I thought it was a substantial program and that it would have two years and then it could see, we could see where it goes from there in terms of it moving forward or not. I would like to ask a question because I understand there was a lot of desire to get other applications, other programs from nonprofits in here. If we were to put this out for an RFP, what would a reasonable turnaround time be without, without it being a total rush job, just to putting it in the hopper of things to get
You could develop an RFP document in two, three weeks. You want it out, I think, at least 30 days so that there's transparency and people are aware of the opportunity and aware of how to engage in what we're looking for. And then there's, you know, a couple of weeks to evaluate the responses and then bring it back to the commission. So you're probably looking at 90, 120 days.
120 days, so that's, what are we talking, four months? Or we pass planting time by then? For another year, so.
You could plant pumpkins in the summer.
So, no, I'm just, you know, just considering whether or not, I mean, I would, I would support having a vote on this. If it doesn't pass, I would push it, you know, I would also support there being an RFP on it.
Commissioner Thornton?
My question is to staff, putting this through a RFP. And a lot of things that don't happen or you feel as though we're pushing y'all because maybe it might be short. How much pressure or how much energy putting this out? The worst thing that could happen is you put it out, you do what we ask you to do and then something happens and then you'll say, well, that's what you asked us for. So I'm asking you, manager, how much, or do you have the staff to invest in RFP and the time?
Well, given, given some time and not, you know, like, doing it tomorrow would, you know, push aside things that somebody else is working on. I think we could commit to 90, 120 days and I want to be consistent. I mean, if you do want to gauge outside interest in providing the service, we would always recommend an RFP, both for transparency, fairness, and, you know, so.
Right.
If you do want to engage an outside entity to deliver these services, I definitely would recommend an RFP and we would make it happen. But it would probably be that timeline that I share with you.
Let me get Commissioner Wright, who's not spoken yet, and then turn back to those who have.
Yeah, I'm supportive of Commissioner Link's motion that she put in, the presentation, it was $33,000 in deer fencing to protect these gardens. Come on, I mean, I think that having gardens developed in properties that already have fencing established or enhancing what has already been fenced versus almost as much as a salary going to fencing. But the other part, as I recall, when this money was set aside during the ARPA, it was for youth development. And so I think the RFP should have that sort of priority to the engaging community garden outreach. And so I'm for us doing that and just as a, on the timeline, you guys, this one is, the goal is to have the position filled by May 2023. So this thing isn't moving lightning fast either. So, let's, I agree that we could cast the net out, give it that youth development priority or not, but I think that we do need to recast the, and then we can see who steps forward for that.
Commissioner Hul, I've not heard from you and then I'll return to Commissioner Hamby.
Question and a comment. Question for staff. Who in staff would do the RFP and what are the associated costs, dollars or staff capacity if we do an RFP?
I don't know. I'll have to find. I'll have to assign that to somebody. I don't know. I mean, we could, we could ask Cooperative Extension, you know, they are, that's why we defaulted to them because they are, you know, we considered leisure services at one point, but then for folks that actually teach others how to grow things, it was clearly with Cooperative Extension. So that's who we've defaulted to. I can, I can gauge their availability to do it. Otherwise, you know, we can try and put together a general RFP for folks to respond to and, you know, make it a priority.
Well, appreciate the honest answer there. I do hope that maybe the people or department overseeing the RFP would not be the Cooperative Extension, just so they'd have the opportunity to apply, or that it's set up in some way where what's before us can be kind of thrown into the mix. But, you know, this is all coming from, I would prefer to move forward with the agenda item before us tonight. I'm just kind of reading the room on the seeming lack of support to do so. And so I want to see this project move forward somehow and therefore I'll be voting on whichever motion ends up surviving the floor. But I do think we should take seriously the amount of time staff has already put into it, into this and the limits to how far this money can really go. And also to take seriously the opportunity here for us to be meaningfully collaborating with UGA on something where they're helping us foot part of the bill. And so for those reasons, I'd like to see us move forward on this tonight with the substitute motion, but if that does fail, I'll be supporting the other one as well.
Back to Commissioner Hamby.
Sure, I'll just, Commissioner Wright hit on what I was going to mention about item, vaccine issues, item number 12. Wouldn't be filled until May of 2023 anyway. We'll still have time for pumpkins, but something else, I don't know. I'm not the gardener.
All right, everybody ready to proceed? We'll begin with the substitute motion. All right, we're going to begin with substitute motion with Commissioner Denson.
Yes.
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Four yes, six no.
All right, we'll return.
Original motion.
We'll return to the original motion, which was from Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
None yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item 24, the recommendation from the Athens Justice and Memory Project. I entertain a motion regarding this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby.
And I'll be brief in my comments, I appreciate that. Just want to just acknowledge the hard work that Hattie Whitehead has put into the Athens Justice and Memory Project and the other committee members as well, with the mayor being part of that. They, we did look at it and y'all have seen the work that we've produced and I think having the Justice and Memory Project give us some direction and guidance on what we can do to help with housing and also down payment assistance, I think, are very worthwhile projects. So I look forward to this moving along and going from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, I definitely would support this. I actually talked to Hattie a little bit about this and I think, and I always struggle with when we, when we attach money to projects, it doesn't, the word doesn't get where sometimes it needs to go. Hattie has proven that she is boots on the ground, she does the work. She has already committed that if this passes, how she's going to reach out to those communities that are not necessarily in the loop. And that's dedication and, and it's meaningful. It's not many people who, who really get, there's not a lot of people that really get into the weeds. Hattie's proven that. I'm sure this is going to be a, anybody who has to deal with Hattie, they have, there'd probably be a live wire there, but she's committed and she's shown that and she still does the work and she does not, she doesn't really look for the accolades, but she deserves every one she gets. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I wanted to ask a question of clarification and also to emphasize that this agenda item that we're voting on is not only allocating 1.25 million to affordable housing preservation via home repairs and down payment, but also, and this is very exciting, to the build-out of an Athens Clark County Center for Racial Justice and Black Futures. And that's, you know, that's a big step in that area. That's a new direction that we're going in as a community and I'm really excited and proud to be a part of that. I do want to ask, just for clarifications purpose or what's to be a part of that. I do want to ask just for clarification's purpose or what's, what the next step is. We're, we're accepting the recommendation to allocate the money in these two areas, and then we're designated 1.25 towards the affordable housing preservation. What is the next, which, which makes me think that that's, that's the one we're ready to spend. We're putting it aside for the, the Memory and Justice Center, but we're going to designate it to move forward. What's the next step on that?
Well, and to be clear, so accepting a recommendation in and of itself, they have recommended that you allocate, but tonight you're only allocating for the affordable housing and down payment assistance. So there, that, you'd have to come back at a subsequent meeting and allocate the funds for the.
But the word is designated here. So we're accepting the recommendation to allocate. We're so, but we're actually designating the actual money. So the rest of the money would need to be designated then in our next year's budget.
At a future point.
Or a future point.
Right. And, and there's more details, you know, that should be forthcoming. So you know what you're, but to answer your question on affordable housing, so it, it would appear that the recommendation is to put these funds into the community. And as you know, we don't provide that currently, that direct service. So there would be third party entities that would receive the funds. And just like our previous conversation, we would, staff is going to develop a process and concept, which would be an RFP. And we would come back to y'all to allocate those funds and improve going forward with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hu.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the, the Lindentown Resolution, many moons ago, talked a lot about recognition and redress, as has the community about many matters, the below Baldwin folks, for example. I'm excited to see us finally take an action step with regards to redress after a bit of recognition. And when I think of redress, I think of the money that we're putting where our mouth is going toward the rectifying of the harm done. I don't think of it going toward administrative overhead, for example. So I know we had a bit of back and forth in our last meeting about that, and we've had some kind of email correspondence since. And you've clarified, staff has clarified that there's no administrative overhead, overhead from this money going to ACC Gov. staff, but they anticipate some would go to whatever sub recipients through the RFP. And there's maybe ways to mitigate how much. And so kind of my two parter, my first is my, is a comment that I hope that the RFP that goes out bears in mind the spirit of what got us here and considers redress in the way we're, you know, thinking about who to target for award, who's going to actually get paid to do the work. But then secondly is just the question of what, what steps does staff anticipate taking? If you can just share what you've shared via email with us in terms of, you know, mitigating those overhead costs.
And I'm sorry because my computer's not working tonight. But what I remember, well, what I would say to you is that I think that that is a very noble intent to spend it all. But the nonprofits are going to have to have some for administration. It's, it's just, somebody has to do the work and they have to pay for it if they're going to do a good job. And, and I'm going to tell you, when you do rehab, which is a good thing, it's pretty intrusive in somebody's, you know, house and, and they need assistance, you know. So we can put some parameters on that, you know. I think, you know, CDBG would allow anywhere, I think, from 10 to 20% of overhead. Other programs have 10% of overhead. I know most recently we talked about 5% of overhead, but we'll just have to look at, you know, what some of those are. For instance, if you do, if, if somebody's doing rehab and they're, they're giving out, you know, 30 $5,000 projects on people's homes, I mean, that's going to take, somebody has to get paid to do that. So the work will get done. You know, it's just.
I was waiting for him to do acknowledge.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Commissioner Myers was kind of going in the direction that you and I talked about today. So I don't want people to think that, oh, Hattie's just a wonderful person. I think that you explained to me how the process would work. And so it's not just, you know, she's boots on the ground and she's great, but that you're going to, it, it will still flow through HCD. It would probably go the same route that a normal RFP would go. But I do think that Hattie wants to be a part of the discussions on what the RFPs look like. And I would highly suggest to work with, you know, just to work with staff. So I don't, you know, I think that her involvement from the community is important and that HCD is going to provide the technical skills to, to roll this out. So it's not like, like she's managing it. It is, it will go through the process. Is, did I say that correctly?
She'll be involved.
We'll run the process like we do any of our typical, and one that you, are we voting on next week on affordable housing. That's the model that we do, once you give us the direction to do that. I will note that attorneys advise, you know, when we talk about redress, that this will have to be open to, to, to all citizens.
Oh, yeah. We, we did, we did discuss that. And I think that she has skin in the game and she wants this to be successful. But I didn't want, and, and because she has skin in the game, I didn't want people to think, I just like Hattie. It's just that she's, she's just doing the work. And, but it will go through, it won't be nothing new as far as your, the work that you provide from a staff position.
No, I mean, Lindentown is advisory group. They made a recommendation. You'll be voting on that shortly. And then you'll hand that off to staff to execute faithfully the direction.
Yeah. And just as a committee process question, you know, my anticipation would be that we would show to Athens Justice and Memory Committee members, you know, here's what we're doing. Keep them in the loop. But of course, you know, they've made this recommendation that we have in front of us. And I think it'll be faithfully followed by staff, you know, and I know that will be the case. Further input? I just want to thank everybody for being on this journey together. It's, it's an important one. And as a couple of folks have alluded to, you know, it, it is the case that, you know, when managing redress, that there's no way to unturn a screw. There's no way to untie a knot. But it is those same forces of marginalization that underpaid residents for their homes more than 50 years ago, that made life more challenging for components of this community during COVID. And so we were really talking about a thematic bent of many, many decades. And, and so the funds that we have in front of us are able to lessen the impact of COVID. But the impact of COVID was, of course, part of a long, long, long thread. So I appreciate everybody.
Kelly, one more thing. I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Gertz. One more thing. Because this is ARPA money, there will be some flexibility. It's not like CDG money and any of the other funds that we get from the federal. There, there will be some flexibility.
So specifically, and you heard this from Andrew Saunders in our work session tonight, some of the environmental reviews, for example, that would have to happen with home renovations and some of the total volume per project caps that are challenging for CDBG recipients or sub recipients, you know, homeowners don't, aren't carried with ARPA funds. So these are easier funds to use, I guess, is, is the way I would frame it. Yes. Yes. Have you read that ordinance before we go?
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 operating, operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding from the American Rescue Plan, ARP, coronavirus, state and local physical, physical recovery funds for affordable housing preservation programs and for other purposes.
All right. With a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Thornton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none. Appreciate your work, everyone. Motion carries. There will be a reception with members of the Athens Justice and Memory Project this Friday at 6:00 PM at the Linden House. Now that this is passed, I want to make you aware of that. Thank you, everyone. All right. Moving on to item 25. This is the 2023 Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, annual function.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton. Any commentary, Commissioner Hamby?
No, sir.
Any, Commissioner Thornton?
No.
All right. Any for members of the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item 26. This is the candidate site selection for SPOS 2011, Project 22. I know we had a conversation about this in the past. Entertained a motion.
I'll move to approve the site selection criteria. No second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Myers. Any follow up, Commissioner Link?
Um, no, I just, I wish the committee luck in, in going through these candidate sites. I think we had a lot of discussion about this during the agenda session and I hope they take a tart.
Commissioner Myers, any?
Yeah. I am looking at this list of recommended candidate sites at the end, and I want to make sure I understand correctly because in the site selection committee, which I chair, I thought we had been told that the parcel 18, the health department, had been removed, that that wasn't in consideration because the public health department said they didn't want to go anywhere. Is that, does anyone know anything about that?
I, I will have to ask about that.
Okay. The, the other thing, just on this, and I'd like to just follow up. I know that I've had some informal discussions with Manager Williams about reaching, getting some sort of document to reach out to some of these parcel owners that says what this is and isn't now that this is public. And I'd like to, if you see if you have any update or thoughts on that at this point.
Sure. Sure. So a part of the concern was that the way the process is currently run, when candidate sites are identified, the property owners aren't notified. And some folks, school district included, were concerned about that. And I do think that we can improve that to, at this stage, give a heads up to say, look, no action needed on your part, but just so that you're aware. Here's a project and we're in this process. And if you have any questions, please call. Now, I, I think this question came up several months ago, a couple of months ago, and I sent out a, a response about why staff felt like, why we did what we did at that time. And one of those reasons was so that property owners wouldn't take theirs off the table until we had a chance to talk about it and what it could be. And so staff's kind of caught in between notifying the commissioner a very public way of sites that we're looking at with not attempting to negotiate with 10 property owners on the front end. So that, that's what, it's, it's, I would just, you know, assure you that it's not because we're trying to be secretive and surprise people. It's just, you know, I mean, property negotiations are pretty sensitive and ordinarily protected by executive session. So it's unusual that we go to these lengths when we do candidate selections. So what's your, what's your, if you, you know, the public health in, in case, case in point, if you're going to remove them at this point because they said they don't want to, then there's no more discussion. Yeah.
I, I thought I had been told that.
Yeah. And, and you may be, but, but as an example, I guess what I'm saying. So yes, we can improve the conversation. It may result in folks taking their properties out quicker. And so we'll have less. But I think it is warranted. I would not want to just find out, you know, in the paper or wherever that my property was being considered. So I think it's a good point.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, also the case when we present 10 items, 10 parcels for public comment, as we did for this project and which we'll be doing soon again for the Eastside Library. So.
All right. Any further input?
Well, Kelly, if I might, I did get a response. Sorry. I'll go when you want to, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
So staff response was they didn't believe that the health department site was officially removed, but there was an indication from the health board that they weren't interested in abandoning their property. So we can follow up with an official.
Because, of course, there are several steps yet to go.
Okay.
Yes. All right. Motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item 27. This is the revised Office of Operational Analysis Description Committee Structure and Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Denson. Any input, Commissioner Hamby?
No, I think the committee that put this together looked at it with, with a good lens and trying to come up with something that, that might help us move forward with a, with a, with an office that maintains its independence, but also, also is able to get some of the audits done in a, in a creative and, and, and sort of pinpoint sort of way as far as, as far as asking deliberate questions instead of broad based questions. So, so we may see a different, different approach with the auditor's office as, as this moves forward and, and more quicker and helping us address some issues. Thank you.
Follow up, Commissioner Denson?
Yeah, I would just agree with Commissioner Hamby. I think the committee did good work in getting this and bringing a lot of clarification that I think we all know is needed in this job, all the way down to clarifying the need for certification. Yeah, the scope of, of the work they're going to be doing and the makeup of the audit committee. I think this is going to really benefit this community. And, and yeah, if we pass this, Mayor, could you give an update on what, the timeline of potentially hiring?
Yeah. My, my desire really would be kind of based on affirmative action tonight to get a posting for the lead auditor position on the street as quickly as possible, based on the, the language and substance of this, and anticipate simultaneously assembling that committee. And I'd like to involve the committee in the interview process in January into February. Probably want to have the posting on the street for somewhere around six weeks to ensure that we get broad net out there.
It's exciting. Good.
And I'm going to have Attorney Drake read the ordinance, just so that procedure is done. And then I've got a couple more questions.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to auditor and for the lawful purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. Commissioner Wright?
Okay. Nevermind. He helped me find where I was looking for. Thank you.
Clarity breeds. Commissioner Hu?
Thank you. This is a big one. A lot of work went into it. So thanks for the many people who've put that work in. I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure who they're for. The first is, could someone elaborate? I, I know, you know, number eight on the list gets to this a little bit, but the relationship between this office and the Public Safety Community Oversight Board?
That's, that's a good question. Appreciate that very much. Probably aware, Commissioner, that right now the Public Safety Oversight Board is really sort of assembling their request of this body for the volume of work that's going to be necessary to staff that function. That's going to flow from PSCOB to government operations and then to this full body, ideally in time for our budget cycle. So the anticipation is to talk to everybody who's a, interviewed candidate for the office and just make clear, you know, there's adjacent activity that's in process. And one of the things that may be a responsibility of your office is oversight of that function. Does that help a little bit?
That does, yeah. And then the, you know, this office is going to be overseeing the auditing of departments, offices, boards, activities, and agencies, of which we have many. And to date, my understanding has been that the audit committee has kind of selected which ones to take on a year by year basis. And there's usually only, you know, two or three at a time. Could you clarify who will be determining which ones of those get audited and when under this new structure?
So similar to in the past, just with slightly different committee structure, that there will be a committee that will be working with the auditor and the committee will be making a recommendation to this body for work, for an annual work plan. And it's always the case that in any organization's annual work plan, there's some things that may bleed over from 2023 to 2024. But the desire is for the full commission to affirm that work plan as, as just an annual function.
Okay. And so the only work of the auditor's office would be work that's generated through that process? Or is there also, so there's no auditor going into other matters beyond what's part of that plan?
That's right. This, this isn't, this position is not intended to, and I think the language indicates this isn't a, an independent investigator who randomly wakes up on a Tuesday and thinks, you know, we need to spend some time in public utilities, or next Tuesday we need to spend some time in the clerk of court's office. This, this person. This person whose work program will be directed by this body.
Thank you. And then, my last question is, I see that there's two positions being conceived of here with a potential third after those two are filled. Could someone just help share with me the rationale for how that number of positions seemed adequate for this amount of work?
So, it was recognized that historically, and we benefited a lot by having Laura Welch from HR work with us, so we could take a snapshot of the office, really going back thirty years. And there were some periods of time when it was a staff of two, sometimes with a part-timer, sometimes with an intern. The bulk of the time, there were three people in the office, and so, we at least wanted somebody to get their feet wet with a single subordinate, and then build the prospect in, the affirmative prospect, not a tentative prospect, but an affirmative one, that should it be decided, yeah, really, the substance of the work is going to require a three-person office, that we would move forward with that, but really let that new, newly designated auditor sort of make that determination.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and Attorney Drake read the ordinance, appreciate that, Attorney Drake. We do have an item of new business, we have to do this under suspension of rules, I'd entertain a motion for suspension of rules.
Second.
Got a, yeah, it was jumbling, I think there was a motion to my right, was that from Commissioner Denson?
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor of suspension of rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, rules are suspended. And so, this is simply a resolution regarding qualifying fees for the special election for District Two that will be held on March 21st.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. Any follow-up commentary?
No, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
Ready to fill this seat.
All right, Commissioner Link?
I'll be recusing myself from this vote, since I intend to run for this seat.
Yep, all right. The motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. Any further input from the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusals?
Recuse.
Okay, all right. So, Commissioner Link's reticent on that item. Moving on, you have in front of you a number of prospective appointments to various boards, authorities, and commissions. Ask for a motion regarding this item.
Approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, there's a second from Commissioner Hamby. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, very briefly, I want to thank everybody who applied for these positions. We always have a bumper crop of great community people who are willing to serve, and so, tonight we are reappointing William Smith to a two-year term on the Athens Clark County Industrial Development Authority, appointing Algernon AC to a five-year term on the library board, Stephanie Hall to a five-year term on the library board, Rainey Lynch to a five-year term on the library board, Kathleen Carter to a partial term on the library board expiring 12/31/25, and Justin Bray to a partial term on the library board expiring 12/31/26. Also appointing Melissa Darden to a six-year term on the Clark County Board of Health, and Chenda Beatty to a six-year term on the Clark County Board of Health, appointing Darius Binion to a partial term on the Human Relations Commission expiring 4/30/26, and Sally Kimmel Shepherd to a partial term on the Vision Committee expiring 6/30/24. So, thanks again to all those folks, and as is always the case, my office will be reaching out to everybody who applied for those positions, whether they were selected or not. All right, now is the time when we're moving on to discussion of the planning and zoning items on our agenda, given that we already had public input, and of course, several folks are here, so we appreciate them being in the room. So, item thirty regards 1165 Oglethorpe Avenue, this is, of course, District Six. Commissioner Hoo, I'd entertain-
...the, I think, around this being a good project to move forward on. I did just have a couple of questions, I noted that the applicant had some concerns around very specific details in the language of this. I do want to thank Commissioners Denson and Edwards for seeing us over the finish line while I was in the hospital for the past few days, so-
You've got the bill in the mail.
So, just to clarify, I believe there were questions around the language regarding plantings, and specifically, the size of them being about height rather than caliper and spacing, so I don't know if someone on staff can speak to, if there's a meaningful way to respond to that concern, an adjustment to the language that would achieve the same outcome, and then, also, if staff could speak to that question around certificates of occupancy being issued, even if the crosswalk happens after all the other construction is complete.
I will do my best, thank you, Commissioner. The two questions came up, first with the buffer and planting sizes. There is a standard within the ordinance for parking lot plantings, that you put them in, and they're three feet tall by the time you put them in. This is a commission-defined option, you certainly have the flexibility to make those buffer plantings larger. It is a little bit uncommon for evergreen plantings of this nature to be called out by DBH instead of height, but something potentially equivalent, if you're looking for something more mature, I would recommend that you call it out, that those plantings be installed at six to eight feet. I mean, that's a significant plant, and that's large, but from an equivalency standpoint to a two-inch caliper, I mean, you're talking about, these are plants that are either in very large containers, or they are field-grown and dug and planted with root balls. So, I mean, that's a decision ultimately that's got to be made as part of the CDO, but it is typically a height issue, you could certainly call out a height anywhere. There's nothing magic about six to eight feet versus three, it's just two that are fairly standard in the industry.
Okay, and then, since the word dense is fairly vague, is there anything we need to do to speak to spacing, or is that not an issue in the language?
I think it gets into the, I mean, if you simply left it a densely planted, and that was the conditional language, then it becomes, you know, an issue that we're going to review at time of plan review, to make a determination if they're dense.
Okay.
You know, there's something to be said for leaving a little bit of room with these plants, especially if they're put in in conjunction with a fence. If it's just a planting in an area where there is no fence included with it, you're going to want them a little more dense to stop the pass-through, but again, ultimately a decision that you all would make, and then, and we could help you with language.
So, Commissioner Hoo, would you like to amend your motion to call out evergreen plants that are in the six to eight-foot range and dense as-
Yes, I think I'd like to amend it to replace, these plantings shall be all, shall all be of at least two-inch caliper, to say these plantings shall all be of six to eight feet in height. And does that, does that achieve the, that?
Based on the two-inch caliper, I think that achieves a similar, at time of planting size.
Okay, so we'll, so we'll make that change, and then-
The other one-
If we leave the, just the word dense in there, you know, staff has professionals, experts in trees, who I think can determine what a sensible density is that's viable for the plantings, right, without us having to dig into that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just leave that in there then. And then, I just had basically two questions for the applicant, if I may.
Yes.
One is, if this achieves their, if this sufficiently addresses their concern, and then also, some residents have reached out to me seeking clarity, specifically on the plantings along Landor Drive, and so, if you could just maybe share on the record what the plan is for plantings along Landor Drive, which is different from the Breckenridge Buffer, and that's it.
Sure. So, Josh is the expert on plants, we talked about this earlier today, and my understanding is that six-foot plants are about $400 for the plant, eight hundred or so installed, and on a 600-foot fence line, the spacing is going to be determinative, but that may be $40,000 worth of trees, depending on what dense means, which certainly, we're trying to do affordable housing, we'll have to pass those costs along to the people that buy these houses, so, we're willing to do what y'all think is important, but three-foot trees is more like a $75 tree, a couple hundred dollars installed, and, you know, in two years, it's six feet tall. But we're certainly willing to work with whatever parameters the commission is comfortable with. And in terms of spacing, I believe Josh had said that if these trees wind up typically at about 20 feet wide when they're mature, you like to plant them for tree health at two-thirds of that, so at about a 13-foot spacing, just so they have the root space they need to grow up fast and be healthy. So, that might be one way to address the vagueness that Commissioner Hoo referred to about what dense means, if you just said two-thirds of mature width, we could work with that.
Okay, it sounds to me like that is probably a level of detail that y'all could work out using this language without us having to amend the motion for that, so.
No, let's include the two-thirds.
The two-thirds, okay.
That's just what it is, yeah.
Okay, so-
And then, you know-
Well, I want to make sure that Commissioner Hoo's questions are taken care of by the applicant, and then I'll turn to Commissioner Edwards to ask some additional-
Sure, is the only other question you had about plantings on Landor?
Yes.
Okay, so, we had been, in consultation with Park King, who runs the Blueberry Festival in Forest Heights, he had suggested that we do a dense hedge of blueberry bushes on Landor Drive frontage, so that passersby can pick free blueberries, and we thought that would tie in nicely with the vibe in Forest Heights, so that was the intention on that front.
Okay. So, do you have a recommendation for language to achieve this density question?
Yeah, spaced at two-thirds the mature height.
Wait, wait.
Mature width. Because we're going to be planting them horizontally in the earth, right? Okay, yeah.
Space at two-thirds, so spaced at two-thirds of the mature width?
This is not a hydroponic project.
Yes.
This has gotten a bit more detailed than I-
The Hanging Gardens of Landor.
A bit more detailed than I'd like to be, but I'm glad that we're here. And then, I know that they had a question about the CO's certificates of occupancy, if the crosswalk gets delayed, is that a concern that you could address, Brad?
I mean, this one's, it's a little bit different based on the nature of the CDO language. I mean, generally, with these types of infrastructure improvements that are identified as a condition of an approval, it's contingent on the developer to pay for it, and it's contingent on the developer to install it, and so, there's not a concern about timing with it. I mean, in this case, because there was a specific dollar amount, the language in the condition really doesn't specifically indicate, is this something to be installed up to that amount by the developer, or is the developer contributing the amount that's within the condition? And I think there's a little bit, if it's the latter, I think just the thing that needs to be understood is that if this ultimately is a $33,000 pedestrian crosswalk improvement required to be put in, county's going to pay the additional $10,000, and, you know, that's the nature of the condition, but just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I've understood that. Reading through the correspondence to date, I think I feel comfortable with it as is. So, I guess, if I may, I'll just read the amended language aloud, and I'll send this in an email, so you can copy paste it, Mr. Dean. There was also a typo, so I removed that, so, the first condition, I'm amending my motion to change the first condition to read. "The developer shall provide a 10-foot buffer where possible with regard to building setbacks and stormwater requirements, provided, however, that such buffer shall not be less than five feet along the western property line. This buffer shall consist of a five-foot privacy fence and a dense row of tall evergreen tree plantings of native species such as little gem magnolia, arborvitae-
Arborvida.
Arborvida, there you go, and eastern red cedar. These plantings shall be all of at least six to eight feet in height and spaced at two-thirds of their mature width."
All right, is that language suitable, Commissioner Denson, as second, or?
Sure is.
All right, other input on this item? Commissioner Wright?
My question is for the attorney. I always get a little leery of commission-defined options on planning things. Explain to me how this isn't a quid pro quo, when we're saying, I'll pass your thing if you do this, I mean, this is money that we're putting, putting, you've always said, if they come up with the idea, it's fine, but, I mean, they obviously have to say yes to this, in leery of-
I think, I think what the discussion Brad and I had about this, if you have something that relates to something that's typical in a zoning action, like dealing with buffers, and, then, I don't think we have a problem. It's when you're dealing with actually monetary consideration, you know, I mean, would you agree with that, Brad? This is something normal in zoning actions, where government buyers are concerned and want more, a larger buffer, or either certain dense plantings.
So, it's refined-
I think this is more restricted to an area that is commonly regulated with respect to land use matters. Versus when we were talking about requiring the developer just to pay out money as a concession of, you know, providing affordable housing, that's not something, that's something we put in harness now, and it's not something that's typically done as a condition of zoning actions. Would you agree with that?
And just as a sort of historical note, you know, what's not been uncommon is to have a designated planting plan, sometimes it's got a graphical attachment, and here we just have sort of a verbal component rather than the graphics.
Okay, and then, even with this crosswalk not being, like, it's in the area, but it's not even a sidewalk associated with directly, I mean, I understand the desires behind all this, I just wanted to be clear, because it seemed like it was a little scope creep on that.
I mean, it is not in the direct frontage.
Yeah.
It doesn't give me as much concern, because I think it still would be utilized by people to get to and from the commercial element of this project, or for the people in this project to go across the street. If we were asking for the intersection at Oglethorpe and Hawthorne Avenue to be redone as part of this, and they pay for that much, that's a problem. I think this is close enough to justify the improvement in Oglethorpe Avenue, I've just, it's a little bit unique in that we have set a specific dollar amount on it, versus just saying, this needs to be done, and you need to pay for it as part of your project completion.
Okay, well, that helps me, and I think it can help others understand how these come forward.
Yeah, I appreciate Brad pointing out, that was really the concern I pointed out, not just the fact, I want the commission to understand that anything above this $28,000 figure, the government's going to pay based on the approval list. That's all, I just want everybody to be, Brad made that clear.
And we've also addressed the timeline, this isn't going to hold anything up if that takes longer with all of its checkpoints. Okay, all right.
And I think part of the rationale here, it doesn't directly front, but everyone's understood that the school is likely to be overflow parking, especially for the commercial elements in the after hours, and they'll use that crossing, and work needs to be done by staff in conjunction with the school district to figure out the most optimal way to achieve this condition around the crossing, and if that involves, you know, doing more than's currently thought of, you know, that's the result of decisions that this body has made, kind of independent of the application.
So, the school district has agreed for overflow parking, because that's not typically something they agree to?
I don't know, it's a public parking lot, and it happens frequently, so, yeah.
Anyway, they-
All right, any other input on this item?
I'll just say something real quick, Mr. Mayor. You know, thanks to my colleagues for working together on this one, you know, I think it's great that we're pushing for a raised crosswalk here, serving the school and this development. I think that's a really exciting step we're taking with our infrastructure here, it's the superior design for pedestrian safety, for children's safety. I went over a raised crosswalk coming here on Baldwin Street and Sanford Drive, that huge raised crosswalk right there in UGA campus, so, thanks staff for working together with us and making this happen.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Hoo, he's read the language, Commissioner Denson, second, we've got the ordinance read from Attorney Drake, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to item thirty-one, this is the amendment to the special use in the CG at 3321 and 3331 Lexington Road. Can I hear a motion regarding that item?
Sure, so moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Wright?
I see.
Got a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wright, any further input?
No, I'm just moving it forward.
All right, ready to eat a burger. Commissioner Myers?
I'm fine.
All right, also ready, some fries.
Need to read the ordinance.
Need to read the ordinance?
I'm not sure I read the last one, Mr. Mayor. Did I?
You did.
Okay. I'm, my mind, I'm getting tired, I'm trying to read-
Spend that kind of night, I got it.
I'm sorry. Oh, thirty-one. "An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special use approval in the CGA Commercial General Airport Overlake District for an approximate 1.20 acre parcel of land located at 3321 and 3331 Lexington Road and for other purposes."
All right, question from Commissioner Denson.
I just had a quick question, I mean, we might have all seen in Atlanta the lines wrapping down the highway for the water burger that was built over there, and we've had that same experience at times on Prince Avenue, other places, and I guess I'm curious, like, this is just like, if we can get some information from staff about enforcement around that, whenever that kind of happens, and we're having roadways blocked because of drive-through backup, just something I've seen happen more and more often lately, so, nothing we need to get feedback on tonight, but just in the future. Just something I've seen happen more and more often lately, so nothing we need to get feedback on tonight to just in the future.
It's a phenomenon, it's real. Commissioner Edwards?
I, thank you, Commissioner Denson. And it happens too at Raising Canes on Baxter. I mean, you've got people driving in from, you know, Sandersville, Moultrie, coming to get fried chicken out of Athens, Georgia, you know, on Baxter Street. So, you know, I don't like this drive-through design. You know, I wish Whataburger all their success. I don't know if they sell veggie burger, I love veggie burgers, black bean burgers, but I can't support this. I don't think it's the right kind of design we need to be bringing to our community in this area. Thank you.
Any further input? Attorney, or Madam Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Fries?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton? Go on.
Yes or no?
Yes or no? I'm voting no for a different reason. I just do not feel comfortable voting for a project in District Two and we don't have representation. No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Devonport?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Oh, Link.
Link.
Still on yet.
Link?
I'm a yes.
All right, seven yes, two no, motion carries. All right. Item 32 regards Chapter Nine of the Code. Brad talked about this at the last meeting, research and development uses. I'd entertain a motion regarding this text amendment.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton. If you could read the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, to various sections of the Code. Do you want me to read them all at once?
Please.
Separately. Okay, the first one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to definitions and for other lawful purposes. That relates Section 9-2-1. The next one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to commercial districts, commercial C districts and for other law purposes. That relates to Section 9-10-2. And the final one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to commercial C districts and for other lawful purposes. And that relates to Section 9-11-12.
All right. So I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby for approval of those modifications, second from Commissioner Thornton. Any input? No, sir.
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to item 33. This is a request for the Athens Clark County Unified Government for amendment to Chapter Nine of the Code of Ordinances regarding accessory dwelling units. Entertain a motion from the body.
I have a text amendment or a CDO I'd like to propose.
I just wanted to clarify what we do that, because there's five ordinances here.
Yes.
Commissioner Links, do you want me to read them all first?
Please.
All right. The first one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to definitions and for other lawful purposes. The next one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to agricultural residential AR district and for other lawful purposes. The next one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to single-family residential R5 district and for other lawful purposes. Next one, fourth one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to commercial C districts and for other lawful purposes. And the last one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to general regulations and for other lawful purposes. And this is the one that Commissioner Link wishes to submit a CDO on.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody here knows that I support ADUs. I was one of the ones who, I think I seconded Commissioner Denson's motion to assure that this ADU text amendment was brought forward before the full land use planning process because I do feel like it's low-hanging fruit. And I do feel like, you know, most property owners should have the right to build a small unit in their backyard should grandma need to come live with them or grandma need to move into an ADA accessible unit in the backyard and have family or caregivers move into the property that might remain in the family. You know, those are ideal situations. There is this idea that these ADUs could provide vast amounts of affordable housing. I'm not sure that's a very rational projection considering that just building one in and of itself would probably cost about $150,000. But I do believe we need to limit these to one bedroom. I understand that there are places throughout the county where two and even three-bedroom ADUs might be perfectly, perfectly acceptable, perfectly logical, offer no disturbance whatsoever to surrounding properties. But, we have two neighborhoods in our community that 20 years ago were targeted for student housing. Historically, black neighborhoods in Hancock and East Athens, and they were traditionally single-family neighborhoods that were zoned multifamily and they have become overrun with student housing. And the number-one concerns I get from constituents tend to come from Hancock regarding parking and student house noise complaints from this community. And, you know, I did have a constituent, an elderly lady, who was unable to leave her home in the last year of her life because she no longer had access to the driveway that led to her backyard, to her back door so she could get out and she had stairs down the front, so she couldn't. It was very difficult for her to get down the stairs. This neighborhood's overrun with student housing. All you need to do is do a search around the tax map and see how many properties are owned by LLCs. And it's also a neighborhood, much like East Athens, where you have very small lots, very narrow lots. A lot of the properties don't have driveways and that's, you know, that also is the case in other in-town neighborhoods like Rock Springs. I drove up Waddell today and encountered seven properties with no driveways out of about 15 or so homes. My street and Boulevard, four of the houses immediately on my end of the street don't have driveways. So parking is an issue and we can entertain this fantasy that, you know, people are not going, they're going to give up their cars. You know, even if it's student housing, these students aren't going to have cars. They do have cars, they all have cars. So I'm going to, I'm going to propose this text amendment or this CDO.
Second.
Can I say it out loud, what it is?
Everybody vying by unanimous consent, given, Commissioner Link, a little more time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thirty seconds.
First of all, this CDO, it makes ADUs accessible to more property owners by not including them in the overall 800 square feet of existing accessory structures. Right now, if you have an existing shed or something, you'd have to demolish that shed in order to get the 800-square-foot ADU. So this would mean that you don't have to put in that extra expense to demolish your shed. Second thing it does is it limits these to one bedroom. And the third thing it does is it assures that there are the already required two parking spaces on site. So homes that have the two parking spaces would be allowed to build these one-bedroom ADUs.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, I've got a second from Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Edwards, follow-up?
I, I think this is a fine compromise. It's something I'm willing to go along with. I think it advances the cause and, you know, something struck me today that I heard that Mr. Brad in the Planning Department, he, Mr. Brad.
Brad.
That's good, sounds good, doesn't it, yeah? So, he told us that there's about 75 of these cottages that get approved every year already that don't have the 220 volt for a stove. There's already 75 of them getting built. So, I mean, that's a significant amount of housing that's coming online annually. That's about 800 square feet. Smaller footprint, lower cost. For me, it's increasing supply of housing will bring down demand and bring down some prices, increase opportunities for folks to live in the community. So, a lot of areas, I've lived in town, these already exist. You see cottages around, I mean, all over Five Points, there's these carriage houses, cottages over driveways, over the garages. A lot of the older areas, older neighborhoods closer to the Old Navy School, there's a lot of these cottages around there where the servicemen were housed. So, I think this will be a good step for us and I'm looking forward to support it. And wrapping up this debate as quick as we can so we get home at a reasonable hour and, you know, have some good feelings.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I appreciate and agree with a lot of the frustrations and the things that Commissioner Link is seeing. I hope that we can move through this topic and not take personally when we disagree with each other and not feel that, I don't think we're going to be changing anybody's minds, especially at this point in time. If we don't support this, I don't support this. I've given my reasons, I'm not going to sit and debate it with you guys, but it'd be great if you'd just let us have our opinion and not tell us what we think or don't think, or right or wrong, or misinterpret it. I'd appreciate it. So I just wanted to get that out before we went around and let everybody speak what they think. Thanks. Oh, and just to be clear on the point of order, you listed the definitions, the AR district, the single-family. We're voting on all of this at once?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I will be supporting this and I appreciate the discussion pro and against that we've all been having and hope we can continue to have that respectful conversation. I think that we are moving forward here with something that, until tonight, I didn't realize that it was very specifically listed in the comprehensive plan. I guess that shows, that's one document I haven't read through carefully. But for being passed right now, so that gets us right on time here. I have received several emails from people over in my district and there's a lot of misinformation out there in the public. I have a lot of people who are reaching out to me thinking that it's single-family and you can't have anything in your yard, not realizing you can't build anything else besides that one thing, that you can have this accessory buildings with an art studio, a greenhouse, a pool house, a garden shed, you know, and the guest house with the, without the stove. And so all we're doing here is adding that stove and with Commissioner Link's CDO, at this point, we're limiting it to the one bedroom, which I support. And I think down the road, we're probably going to want to tweak that for, to deal with situations where people live more acreage or out in rural areas. And, but right now, I'm supporting this. This is one thing to increase our housing stock. We need more housing, both for low-income residents and middle-class ones. And so I'll just keep it short and say that I will be supporting Commissioner Link's CDO.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Now I've spoken with Commissioner Link and I thank you for this CDO. I still just have just that one little issue with just the one bedroom because just from listening to my constituents, not just from my inner group of friends and, you know, Facebook people, but just from normal taxpayer residents, they have a sense that we already have an issue in East Athens with SDR, short-term rentals, and that just having that one bedroom is going to incentivize it. We're allowing this one text amendment and just allowing this one bedroom. I do like the parking versus the first one because a lot of people in my area don't want on-street parking. But, I'm just a little concerned about the unintended consequences of like, we keep saying affordable housing. If I'm a single father with three kids and I got one bedroom, where are my kids going to sleep at? Or, you know, but, but I'm open up for discussion, you know, to hear feedback from my colleagues and just from the people who live in these traditional Cedar Creek, Meadow Creek, way out there in the country. They're just concerned that this small text amendment is going to open the door for short-term rental. When I first came on, it was the first issue that me and the lady Smith tackled was with short-term rental. So just, I look forward to hearing feedback from my colleagues.
Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I share Commissioner Davenport's concern here. I mean, to be honest, I'd prefer that we move forward with just the agenda item as is. I appreciate the work on the CDO, but I feel like the strongest version of this is the one that was brought forward with unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission that staff spent a lot of time on. But I am willing to move forward with the CDO version if that's how we're able to move forward with something. I would like to ask the motioners if they'd be willing to perhaps compromise and change the limit from one bedroom to two bedrooms and the rationale there being, you know, not only does that open it up for, you know, families to potentially live there, but if you're parents with kids or a parent with a kid, it's nice for the kid to have a separate bedroom. If you're an elderly person living in a granny suite and you have a caretaker, it's nice for the caretaker to have a bedroom. I think there's a lot of instances where two bedrooms make a lot of sense and I don't see how that makes much of a difference in the concerns that are being brought forth around students and things like that. So I'd ask if there's a willingness to amend. You know, I'd hate to have to go through a whole substitute motion on this, but I'd like to see that one adjusted.
Commissioner Link, it's motion.
I just, it would be a betrayal of my constituents in the Hancock neighborhood where, you know, we've got lots that are .12 acres and 45 feet wide and no parking, you know. It would really be a betrayal of them to essentially double the density of their blocks and double the amount of cars on the street because that neighborhood is so desirable as student housing as it is. And I do believe that, you know, and in the agenda documents that we got from planning, they stated that we will be taking a deeper dive into this ADU ordinance in the land use planning process next year. And I believe there's plenty of places where we can open this up to two and even three bedrooms. But right now, across the board, I think allowing one bedroom will do the least amount of harm in these very, very vulnerable neighborhoods where I have elderly African-American folks who've lived in these houses for generations who are getting pushed out.
Brad, just to clarify, would multifamily districts still be governed by the total number of bedrooms allowed per acreage?
This would, this would allow an exception.
On top of that.
On top of that. And it is up to 800. It's not an assurance, you know, if you've got a house that's 750 square feet, for example, on a property already, don't get a building at 800. It still has to be subordinate under 915 to the principal structure, but it gives everybody the right up to 800.
And there's the lot coverage.
Still has to, still has to meet lot coverage. The Link CDO just exempts it from that total square footage of accessory structure uses.
All right, all right, so, does that answer your question, Commissioner Hool?
It does. I'd be interested, I'll make a substitute motion to approve Commissioner Link's CDO with the modification replacing the language of one bedroom to two bedrooms.
All right, there's a substitute motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
All right, so, second from Commissioner Davenport?
But that goes back to the original motion, I just add some.
So it just modifies the, modifies the commission-defined option, allowing for two bedrooms rather than one.
So that retains the elements around parking, everything else that's in the commission-defined option.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And while I, I could say that whenever the, I was working on the committee and when we came to, we discussed the bedroom limitation. That was one of the things that we did bring up and we discussed it for a while. And actually, I think exactly to what Commissioner Davenport brought up is why we decided not to go to one-bedroom limitation because we thought this would actually be a really good thing for possibly, you know, yeah, like maybe a single parent and a kid, that kind of situation, that, a two-bedroom. And so what, instead of going to the bedroom limitation, what we did is we put in place that square-footage limitation, saying that these things cannot be any larger, up to 800 square feet. As Director Griffin said, like, and it has to be subordinate to the building. So if you have a small house, it has to be smaller than that house in every kind of direction. And that we saw that at the 800-square-feet kind of thing, I mean, honestly, for the most part, you're probably almost maxed out at doing two bedrooms, really couldn't go much more than that without, yeah. So, but we thought two-bedroom was kind of, and we kind of had a more complicated idea and we decided like, no, we don't want to go that complicated route again, this will be revisibility error on. So that's why we ended up there. And so I do think that the more important thing there to do is the spacers, that this can't be used as some kind of big party house. It's going to be an 800-square-foot house, but it does have the possibility of having, say, two small bedrooms involved in it, so.
Any other input? All right, so we've got a substitute. All right, so we've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Hul with a second from Commissioner Davenport. Go ahead and do a roll call.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Rice?
Nope.
Denson?
Yes.
Five yes, four no.
All right, five yes, four no. All right, giving this an ordinance, requires six votes. All right, this, you know, essentially is on ice pending future action.
Now we got.
We go back to the original and see if that gets six votes. We can begin with Commissioner Link's motion.
Yes.
White?
Nope.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Five yes or no?
All right, we've got another five yes, four no. All right, so again, the no tenth vote from which a mayor could break a tie, we're going to have to put this on the back burner for the time being. I don't know.
So we have, that's just one of, there's four more other ordinances that basically depended on this. You follow what I'm saying? And they were all intertwined.
I was anticipating that this was a vote for the cluster. The Planning Commission used one vote.
Huh?
The Planning Commission just had one vote.
I mean, the only other option I would know, could you go back to the original Planning Commission recommendation? That's not been voted on yet.
That was the, I just voted on.
No, we just voted on Commissioner Link's CDO.
Link's CDO.
I want a motion to approve the initial.
I don't think we can have any more motions.
We did that, we did that already. Are we able, because I think that we're close to somewhere, so I'm wondering if I can make a motion for us to hold this to next Tuesday's meeting, in which then we could be voting on it at the same time as the short-term vacation rental.
So just, I need to get a little guidance from the attorney. I apologize, everyone. Attorney Drake, this doesn't happen that often, but, you know, is this simply now a dead matter?
Well, yeah, if you voted on it, didn't take action, it says you got to wait.
Well, no, it's a little different with.
No, it's different. There's a section for zoning actions.
The ordinance, yes, the zoning ordinance says for purposes of adopting a text amendment, you have two choices. You can either vote to approve it or deny it. It doesn't even give you the option to hold it or table it. I guess the question I would have is if you have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then a CDO comes in and it's substituted by another one, so you've exercised both of those, there's still a recommendation from the Planning Commission that you've not voted on yet.
That's true.
It may not make any difference, but it's.
The first one we voted on was, I'm trying to remember now, Link had a CDO that said one bedroom.
Uh-huh.
And then there was a change to two bedrooms. We voted on the two bedrooms, and that did not go through.
Hul amended, no.
No, he substituted.
Link moved for her CDO. Hul moved to amend her CDO. That motion passed. Then we voted on the amended CDO, and that failed. Five-four.
Mayor, let me just point out, let me just point out too, it did not pass, it did not pass. If it was a five-to-four vote, I mean, somebody could have very well, the 10th person could have very well abstained, and it would have still been five-to-four. So basically, what you're saying is it either needs to go back to Planning Commission for them to come back to us at a second point in time with either the same recommendation or a different recommendation. But as far as what we've done here tonight, the motion has passed, but it didn't get the needed six votes for the ordinance. And I just want to affirm that there's no other action necessary from this body.
Well, we only voted on this one ordinance.
Yeah, we didn't vote on the recommendation.
We haven't voted on the rest of, and I think we still do. We have to take, I don't know how the Planning Commission did that, but these are separate ordinances, you know.
Judge, I disagree. There were separate ordinances with the previous things that we voted on, and the Planning Commission.
I mean, I made y'all vote them separately.
No, the Planning Commission passed this as a package. I think they voted on modifications to Chapter 9, and those modifications included five things. And so it was my understanding in these votes that we were similarly voting on modifications to Chapter 9 that included five pieces of language.
Well, either way, I mean, the other ones don't work without passing.
Correct, correct. All right, so.
But, Mr. Mayor, I mean, parliamentary inquiry, I mean, we've voted on a CDO. We have not voted to accept or deny the Planning Commission recommendation.
I thought Patrick made that motion to do that, that did not pass.
So I, I, I will move that we accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
All right, so there's a motion from Commissioner Edwards to approve the Planning Commission recommendation.
And I want to clarify something. I noticed a clerical error. We noticed some clerical errors, so we tried to fix that and put them at your seat. But the Planning Commission one, subsection B should read as follows, under Section 1, I'll just read the whole thing. Section 1, Section 9-512, entitled accessory buildings and structures of the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, is hereby amended by the leading subsection B in its entirety, replacing it. So it now reads as follows. Subsection B, a guest house or accessory dwelling unit may be maintained accessory to a single-family dwelling. No more than one accessory dwelling unit and/or guest house shall be permitted per lot as an accessory structure and shall not exceed 800 square feet in size, period.
All right.
Is that all?
And then G.
Yeah, and then G. Also, it also, Section 2 reads as follows. Section 9-512, entitled accessory buildings and structures of the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, is hereby amended by the leading subsection G in its entirety, replacing it. So it now reads as follows. G, signs, fences, park, excuse me, signs, fences, parking, driveways, and temporary structures are not subject to provisions of this section. That's what came from the Planning Commission.
So it does not include the parking that the Link CDO did, and it does not include the additional 800 square feet of accessory structure that was in the CDO.
Okay.
So to make that clear, if you have a shed on your property of, say, 400 square feet, you can only build an ADU of 400 square feet.
If your property is less than half an acre.
Because that's part of your lot coverage.
Yeah, so you, or you would have to demolish that shed.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. So.
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, there is not a motion on the floor because we've already voted on this twice, and it failed twice, five-to-four. So when an ordinance is not adopted with six votes, you can't just keep making motions on the floor in order to get those.
I think we voted on first, we first voted on.
CDO.
We voted on an amended.
CDO.
Then we voted on the Link CDO. We haven't considered the main question yet.
Well, Judge, you can't just keep adding motions onto the floor. You could be here all night doing that if it doesn't get, if it doesn't. So what I'm saying is. Well, if we vote on what the Planning Commission provided to us in its unamended language, then that would be the final action we would take on item 33. Okay, then somebody else can make another motion, and it passes five-to-four.
We don't even have.
As chair, I'm telling you, this is the last thing we're doing.
So there's a motion on the floor to accept.
I think the main, I want to make, I mean, I think the main, here's how the rules work. The rules say that the rules are procedure, that I can only make a recommendation, the mayor makes the final decision, and y'all can overturn him by two-thirds votes.
Right.
But I'm just saying, no, I don't want to be wrong. But I think we haven't voted on the main question yet. We only voted on Link's proposed CDO. No, we only first voted on Patrick's, on the amendment.
No, no, first, we had a commission-free option motion first. He made a substitute motion. Both failed. So we've already done two motions. I thought we had limits on motions.
That's not true. She made a motion, he amended the motion.
No, he did a substitute.
He did a substitute motion.
It wasn't a friendly amendment.
Yeah, that's it. We get two motions.
He did a substitute motion.
Because I did not accept the amendment.
I'm going to go as chair and rule that we are going to accept that there's a motion from Commissioner Edwards, and I'm going to be willing to accept a second, should there be a second. Is there a second to Commissioner Edwards' motion to approve the commission, Planning Commission recommendation?
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, a second from Commissioner Hul. All right.
Well, Mr. I was going to say, if there was a substitute motion, I'm concerned if it was final, I think, I like him to make a recommendation of, you get to make the final decision, the commission will rule you by two-thirds votes, what the rule said.
Yeah, he's already made his ruling, Judge.
So I've made a determination that I'm going to provide an opportunity for the commission to take a final stab at item 33, which is the Planning Commission recommendation in its totality. And so I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Hul. I'm going to ask Clerk Sprattlin to call and roll.
Can I just clarify what it is, just so that we're all clear?
This is the Planning Commission's.
I'm saying what's in it.
This is the Planning Commission's full, unamended recommendation.
All of it. I move to table this till next Tuesday.
We can't table.
Okay.
It's a, it's a text.
Third motion.
Clerk Sprattlin, beginning with Commissioner Edwards.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
No.
Rice?
Nope.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
I think I missed any votes.
That's it. All right, so we'll be returning for a future discussion with Planning Commission. All right, no action on this side.
No action.
No action. All right, moving on. It's four-four.
It's four-four, so you vote now.
It's four-four.
Yeah, you vote.
I'm going to vote yes.
All right.
It's still just five.
That's correct. That's correct. It is, it is just five.
Would you like to vote, Judge?
But, so, no, no action. No action lacking a six vote. There we are. All right, moving on. Now is the time for public input from members of the public on any item not on our agenda tonight. And I do see that we have two members of the public in the chamber. Would any member of the public like to speak to us on any item not on the agenda tonight? Well, this is public input, so your one opportunity is to speak for three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are all well and looking forward to a safe and happy holiday season with friends and family. My name is Sam Raffel, 230 Spalding Circle, Athens, Georgia, WheneverYouSecond counts.org. As you know, I've been advocating this area of public safety for several years now, and I feel like we are making progress. For that, I can honestly say that I appreciate each and every one of you. We said for years that there were serious problems with our 911 communications as it related to EMS. The Athens-Clark County Police Department agreed with us, and now we are on the verge of substantive improvements in how we help people experiencing time-sensitive, life-threatening emergencies in our community. For reasons I pray are obvious, we would like to see this happen sooner rather than later. We were the first to highlight that our Athens-Clark County Fire and Emergency Services personnel were not equipped to perform to their level of training, their level of medical training. That process, too, has begun, and for reasons I pray are obvious, we hope these improvements happen soon. Most ACC/EPS calls are medical. Additionally, we've been saying for years that the EMS Overlook Committee was operating in such a way that it violated the State of Georgia Open Meetings laws. Our county attorney agreed, as did the Oconee County attorney, when the Overlook Committee was advised of this obvious violation of the law, they simply stopped meeting for three years. Now, thanks to our county attorney, we may be on the verge of more meaningful oversight. Thank you. We strongly believe that counties should be the ones to control their own state-issued EMS zone licenses. Overwhelmingly, in the state of Georgia, this is the case, but not here in Athens-Clark County. Now, we are learning that the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia advocate that counties have control of their EMS zone licenses for obvious reasons, and we could not possibly agree more. So again, I want to thank you for what you are doing. I hope we can continue to make accelerating progress in this critical area of public safety. Lastly, I would be remiss, in our current state of affairs, regarding threats to our local Democratic Party and to the community in general, not to say the following, and that is, I hope we can progress to the point where, heaven forbid, we ever have a mass shooting, that the friends and family of the victims and the victims themselves are not wondering why in the heck our firefighter EMTs are not starting IVs, or where in the hell our ambulances are, and why in the heck when they finally do get there, they're not staffed with paramedics. An ambulance without a paramedic is like an emergency room doctor, emergency room without a doctor. Thank you for your time and efforts in this regard. We can do this. I'll stay in touch. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any other input on any item that was not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to provide a more substantive report next week at our last meeting of the year, the last meeting with this iteration of the body, just highlighting some of our accomplishments over the course of the year. But I do have one formal action that I do need to receive your assistance in tonight, and that's appointment of Personnel Hearing Officer. Former county attorney Bill Berryman has agreed to serve in that role, and I do need a motion for acceptance of.
So move.
Bill Berryman as Personnel Hearing Officer.
I move for Bill.
Motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Hamby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all for that. I appreciate it. Manager Williams, anything tonight?
No, Mayor, since we do have another meeting, I'll say the farewells, and like you, I want to join in celebrating some of the accomplishments of this year next week.
Attorney Drake, anything tonight? All right, I'll begin with Commissioner Hamby, and we'll roll around to Commissioner Davenport.
It's my understanding that I'm not going to have time for little comments at our next meeting. Is that correct?
It was, I'd certainly be glad to give some time if you'd like to say something summative next week.
Okay, well, then let's wait till next week then to say that. Oh, but how about this week? I want to say congratulations to Commissioner Hul and welcome to the world, Baby River.
Thank you, everybody. It's my last regular voting meeting of this term, and it's been quite an engaging adventure with each and every one of you in this room, and a tremendously fulfilling job of above and beyond my day job of selling purses, you know, over here selling policy, and it's been a great time, a lot of fun with everybody around here. So staff, Attorney Drake, Manager Williams, Edwards, it's Mr. Jones. It's, yeah, it's been a real honor and a lot of fun. So, thanks, y'all.
I'd like to announce the arrival of a new Athenian in the West Corner. He's weighing in at eight pounds, 12 ounces, and measuring 21 inches in length. River Quinn Hul joined us earthside on December 1st, 2022, at 8:59 a.m. And his mother, Megan Westbrook, is a superhero. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner, and that welcome to River.
If we're going to have some time next week, I guess I'll request that and save my sad goodbyes. And so I'll just actually go and go and plug now that I will be having my last and 22nd town hall on December 19th at Normal Bar. Title of this one is going to be, it's the end of District 5 as we know it, because it is, it is changing. And we will be going over some of the accomplishments that I think we have, but also I'm going to be inviting Commissioner Hul, Commissioner Thornton, the vacant seat that's over there, and then Commissioner-elect Fisher to be there so that all of my fantastic constituents can meet their new commissioner, whoever they're being passed on to. And then, yeah, like I said, I'll save my goodbyes till next time. And so the last thing I'll say is I am very much looking forward to this community and this government being able to work for a full six-year term with Senator Reverend Raphael Warnock, and he has been a fantastic, I think, champion for this community, bringing $25 million from North Avenue, many other things. So I'm very happy to see that happening.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Link?
I will save the bulk of my comments for our final voting meeting, I think. Yeah.
Make them good.
Yes, I have a long speech too for Edwards, Link, and Denson, but I'll save that for next, next week, because I've been dreading this day. But I'll thank y'all, for y'all. But I do want to give a, to thank everybody who participated in the last, last week's holiday parade. It was really awesome. Welcome River Quinn Hul. That's going to be a journey. So, graduation. He came a day after me. I told you, you had to call him on November 30th, but they came on the first. So, graduation to you and Megan. And for next year, I don't want to use the trolley again. Let's, here we go back to the fire truck. I do want to give a shout out to Jeff Montgomery. I do want to give a shout out to Jeff Montgomery, PIO. I know everybody think that Santa was the sharpest man last week. It's actually Jeff Montgomery. His stylish outfit was, was pretty, pretty swanky. So just want to give a shout out to that. But a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, got a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See you in a week, everyone.